All right. Hi, guys. You guys are a quiet crowd today. Stand up for the pledge of allegiance, please.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. And you know how morning traffic can be coming from Arcata, so there's Supervisor Madron has been caught up in the traffic jam coming in, so he is on his way. All right. There might have been an accident. Anything else?
No.
Okay. Modifications to the agenda, miss?
Good morning. I have no modifications to the agenda this morning.
Seriously?
I have a motion to approve the consent agenda this morning.
I'll second that.
I have a... Do we have any public comment?
Kent Swachowski, it was definitely proved on the bridge that a small little car can not drive underneath a red pickup truck from the behind. Didn't appear to be any injuries that I could see. That's the good news, but that's why we were all very slow getting into town today. And I enjoyed my trip before that, coming back from Susie Q. You leave just when the sun's coming up, and not a single car in my lane did I see behind me or come upon, all the way until I hit the roundabout in Blue Lake. That's karma, right? When you don't have any traffic out there, so... Your consent items. I wish to... You have a letter of appreciation for Laura Conzenary for her service on the Housing Authority Commission. I wanted to thank her for that and also her many years of service with the county, serving on all kinds of other things like measure Z, and my thoughts are with her at this time. I did wish to make a little comment on item four, your approval of your action summary meeting of August 20, 2019. Sometimes there's no staff report on actions that you take, such as when you're in closed session. To elaborate a little bit upon what came out of closed session, and it was reflected, kind of interestingly, in your action summary, it said that a Todd Simonson was hired, and it didn't say that Sacks, Ricketson, Case were hired, but an individual, I guess, an attorney for a firm to represent you in an issue that you have going on. This is an interesting one. So I vetted the individual to see what you did, and I'm going to also do a public records request to see how much he's getting paid, what his contract is, if that's something I can get. I wish to see that. So we know how the money's being spent here, and this is always important, especially when you're hiring outside firms to deal with litigation or potential litigation. And so just to elaborate a little bit on this, the individual Todd, he worked for this company of Sacks, Ricketson, Case. It'd be nice if some of that stuff was in there. Fifteen years of practice. His specialty is dealing with what I would call, I refer to as hostile work environment issues possibly. All we can do is make assumptions on that. And his main thing is to try and make the county bulletproof should somebody be terminated, and so they cannot sue for illegal termination. He does have an extremely high uphill battle, and it'll be hard to come before a judge, because the first thing the judge is going to say, according to your testimony, we basically have the fact that, when were you notified of a complaint? Do you even know about the complaint? We're six months down. I don't even know if he's been notified of what it is. Nobody can fix a problem if they're causing a hostile work environment, and all of you have been involved in it. I mean, it's something that happens quite commonly here. People don't feel comfortable for one reason or another. And anyway, thank you for my opportunity to speak. I'll elaborate on that during my three minutes later.
Good. Thank you very much. I think I have the Nurse Family Partnership crew coming up. I'll go ahead and read this resolution, and then you guys can elaborate. This is a resolution of the Board of Supervisors, whereas the Nurse Family Partnership, NFP, is a program in 41 states, including California, which with proven outcomes in helping first-time, income-qualifying mothers improve pregnancy and birth outcomes, child development and welfare, and family economic self-sufficiency. And whereas in Humboldt County, NFP is run by the Humboldt County Department of Health and Human Services, Public Health, and has been working with local families since 2009. Whereas through this program, specially educated registered nurses visit women regularly in their homes during their first pregnancy and continuing till the child's second birthday to influence the baby's critical first 1,000 days of life development. And whereas, NFP is the most regularly-tested program of its kind, with randomized controlled trials conducted for more than 40 years, demonstrating multigenerational outcomes for families in their communities. Whereas, NFP is consistent evidence that mothers and children who have participated in the program consistently demonstrate significantly improved prenatal health, fewer subsequent pregnancies, increased maternity employment, improved child... Improved child school readiness, reduced involvement in crime, and less child abuse and neglect, and fewer injuries. Whereas, leadership of NFP chose to offer the program after they had evidence from at least two randomized controlled trials of enduring program impact and cost savings, and confidence that the essential elements of the program could be reliably reproduced. Whereas, data from the 15-year follow-up study to the NFP trial in Elmira, New York, showed positive results for nurse-visited families more than 12 years after the visits ended, including a 48 percent reduction in child abuse and neglect, a 59 percent reduction in arrests among children, and 72 percent fewer convictions of mothers. Whereas, through DHHS, the NFP program has been serving some of the most vulnerable families in Humboldt County for the past 10 years, driven by the mission of future where all children are healthy, families thrive, communities prosper, and the cycle of poverty is broken. Now, therefore, it be resolved that the Humboldt County Board of Supervisors hereby recognizes the 10th anniversary of Nurse Family Partnership in Humboldt County, and appreciate the positive impact it has had on the local community.[431.87][431.87][applause]
Thank you. Hi, my name's Catherine O'Malley, and I'm supervising public health nurses for Nurse Family Partnership, and I've been supervising the program for the entire 10 years. So 10 years ago, DHHS, I was very interested in providing more evidence-based practices, and at that time, we were trying to figure out a way to use public health nurses to improve the life trajectories of families in our community. And from that time, we started out with two public health nurses, and since then, we've expanded to seven public health nurses, providing this program throughout Humboldt County. We are currently serving 104 families. It changes every day in our community, and we have touched the lives of over 832 families in Humboldt County. Most recently, we had a graduation, and we had... We saw 13 families graduate, and to date, 229 families have completed the two-and-a-half-year program with us. Our breastfeeding rates are exceptional. We have the highest rate in the county, I mean, in the state of California for breastfeeding. 95 percent of our mothers have breastfeed, initiate breastfeeding. Fifty-seven of those... Fifty-seven percent are breastfeeding at six months, and 39 are still breastfeeding at 12 months, which is actually phenomenal compared to the rest of the state of California. I do want to just read a couple of sentiments that some of our graduates gave us, and this was just this last August. So this is from two of our different clients. "My nurse has been nothing short of wonderful to my little family. We were so blessed by this program and your support. I never would have made it to the point I am now without my nurse. I started this program close to homelessness, and ravaged by my mental illness and stress, I felt alone and desperate. Now I feel proud, successful, and brave. I have come 100 times farther than I ever thought I could. You have changed my life, and I could never thank you enough. My nurse and this program was a blessing." The second one. "No amount of words can sum up the way I feel about my nurse. Thank you for leading me from behind and sharing your gift with us. I am frazzled, thinking of all the times you have been there for us. We've had transitions, sickness, and grief. I remember coming... I remember you coming through the doorway with your bag and your bright smile. I don't have a mother to be able to answer questions I have. I prayed for a woman like you to help guide me. I am so grateful for this program. It has supported me in the beginning of this motherhood journey. A lot of my confidence comes from you. Thank you so much." And I just passed out buttons that say "Force for Good," and I'm glad you're wearing them, and together, we're all better, and together, we are a force for good. Thank you.[646.04][646.04][applause]
Supervisor Bass?
Thank you, Mr. Terr. Well, I wasn't necessarily going to comment, but since you looked at me, I just want to say how wonderful it is to have the service, because going back, my kids are like 35 and young, 32. They're old, you know? Yeah, so am I, but not as old as you. But, you know, that being beside the point, those services weren't available, you know, and I was one of those people who it didn't work for, you know? But so now, I've got a grandbaby due in two weeks, and, you know, I know they're really excited about this, and there's so much more emphasis, and the help is there, and I think it's great. So thanks for all you do.
Thank you.
And yes, we're fast on putting pins on.
Yeah, wear them all day.
Supervisor, hello?
Also, I want... I would very much like to say how important your work is, and it's beautiful to see you here and to hear those letters of appreciation from people that you've helped. And I reflect also on you being a force for good in those young lives as they move forward, making it possible for them to go on, and that is a beautiful thing. Thank you very much.
It's a job we love doing, actually, so thank you.
Yeah, it's gotta be fun.
Makes it a little bit easier, huh?
Loves babies.
And I just want to say thanks, you guys. And I think this is so important that we do these every once in a while, because it lets us aware... I don't think people realize how many lives we touch through the Office of DHHS. I mean, it's not just all visible. It's, you know, I know you work with First Five. I know you work with so many different variations and everything else, but I want to thank DHHS for all their different programs, because I can guarantee you, 95 percent of the people don't even know you're out there. But the mothers that you are impacting and the children, they know you're there, and they really appreciate it, and the results speak for themselves. So thanks, you guys, a lot. Thanks for being here. You bet.[767.22][767.22][applause] Where are we going now? We do need to vote. Okay. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor of the consent calendar?
Aye.
Opposed, none. All right. Now, we go to special presentations. Yeah, that's you, Leslie. You're special. Come on... Come on down. You can bring her with you. I know she might be a little bit tired from the fair, but... You'll recognize Leslie's daughter. If you wanted to buy a T-shirt at the fair, she was the one to go to. Anyway, these, as we always say, same line, it's always bittersweet, but it's great to see them get to this point. This is a resolution of the Board of Supervisors, County of Humboldt. Whereas in 1986...
Wow.
Leslie Borges was hired as Humboldt County Sheriff's Office Records Clerk. During her time as Records Clerk, she worked in records with the Marijuana Eradication Team and the Detective Bureau. In 1989, following in the footsteps of her father, Deputy Frank Burkhart, Leslie Borges was hired as a full-time deputy sheriff. In 19... Deputy Sheriff won in 1989, and she attended college at Redwoods Police Academy. Due to layoff threats and hiring freeze, Leslie left the Humboldt County Sheriff's Office but remained Reserve Deputy and a mounted posse member, which she is still a member, right? Still a member of the mounted posse. In 1996, Leslie was hired as the first female deputy marshal in Humboldt County. Whereas in 1999, the Humboldt County Marshal's Office was absorbed by the Humboldt County Sheriff's Office, and Leslie Borges was once again hired as a deputy sheriff and worked in the Court Protection Unit for 14 years. Whereas in 2010, Leslie Borges transferred to the Operations Division. Whereas in 2013, Leslie Borges promoted to corporal and assisted with the training of at least 17 new patrol deputies. Whereas in 2018, Leslie Borges returned to working as a patrol deputy, where she served with distinction until her retirement this month. Whereas Leslie Borges has always approached her career in law enforcement with passion, enthusiasm, a great sense of humor, and most of all compassion for those she served and those she served with. Now, therefore, it be resolved that the Humboldt County Board of Supervisors, Sheriff William F. Hansel, and the staff of the Humboldt County Sheriff's Office hereby commends and thanks Deputy Leslie Borges for her dedicated 32 years of selfless service to the citizens of Humboldt County and the Humboldt County Sheriff's Office. We all wish her well in retirement. I move the resolution.
Second?
All those in favor? It's unanimous. Get that.[960.94][960.94][applause]
Thank you.
You get to speak.
I do?
Just seven minutes.
No, I can't do seven minutes. I don't speak publicly very well. It's been an honor to serve the community of the County of Humboldt and work with all the fine people that I've gotten to work with over the years. They're really family to me, and they have been since my dad was in the department when I was very young. So it's always been family, and it always will be, and I'll continue to serve as an extra help deputy and with the sheriff's posse as long as they'll have me. Thank you.[1039.94][1039.94][applause]
Leslie served, I mean, if you count all the time that she's actually been with the department, which is like 50-some-odd years, essentially. She looks pretty good, you know? Really good. But she essentially grew up in the department, and she, you know, started as an LOA, has gone through the department, and then being in the Court Protection Unit for close to 14 years, and then she decided to go out on patrol. That says a lot about her character. She was never, ever steered away from a challenge. And also, being a trainer. One of the most important jobs in our department is being a field training officer and a corporal here, and Leslie did it, and she did it with distinction. I love that word, because she really did. And no matter how much stress or what was going on, she still has the same look, and she is in calm and in control, and the people that she served, and she spent a lot of time in Southern Humboldt, too, really, really got used to having that kind of service. And so when she left, they're like, when's Leslie coming back? And so we really appreciate all the years of service you've dedicated. She roped her husband and her daughter into the mounted posse, so, you know, we're a part of... That's a part of our family now, too, and so they're there at all the parades and doing our search and rescues, and so I really appreciate the real service that Leslie did. And also want to say that I served on the HDSO board with Leslie, and you're never going to find a more dedicated person that spent hours volunteering for that organization to making sure that our deputy sheriffs were taken care of and that they were... Had a good light shine upon them. Hours and hours of unpaid time just to volunteer for this community. So I really, really appreciate all those times, all the effort and all the extras. And we're sad to see you retire, but I'm happy that you're still here with us, and we look forward to having you work with us for many years, because I think you've got a lot more left. Yeah, and she's still doing HCSO, too, so, perfect. I know Sheriff Mike Downey is here, so I know that he would probably want to say a couple things.
Well, it's been a while since I've been here.
Could you state your name?
Oh, yeah. Mike Downey. Mike Downey, retired sheriff, Humboldt County. Anyway, I want to thank the board for this proclamation. It means a lot to all the men and women that represent the sheriff's office, and the sheriff put it very eloquently. You know, 1986 is the same year that I started with the office, and I remember this young woman, very young woman, coming to work there in the records division. In fact, if you look at her daughter, they probably look very similar at the time. I worked with her dad, Sergeant Frank Burkhart, great man. In fact, I learned a lot from him, many good things. But Leslie has always been very special to me. We worked together a long time. I was her sergeant for a while. We worked the different assignments together. I've seen her grow throughout the agency, and, you know, I still keep in touch with her past sheriffs, Dave Renner, Dennis Lewis, Gary Phelps. I've talked to them probably a couple times a year, and I'm sure that they would agree that she was an outstanding employee. I never had to worry about Leslie. She was... Always had that positive attitude, and I have gotten to know her even better throughout the years. She has a wonderful family, and I wish the best for her. And again, I want to thank the board. This means a lot to have a proclamation from the Board of Supervisors to recognize the amount of time that someone has put into this profession. And I have to tell you, if you look around the room, there's many here in uniform. You are blessed to have a sheriff's department that you do, and I am blessed to know that I left it in good hands, and it is growing, and it's thriving, and we have people like this that can move on, but still be here, I guess. So anyway, thank you again. Appreciate it.[1304.75][1304.75][applause]
Thanks, Chef. Anybody else? I'll bring it back to the board. Supervisor Bass?
Well, I've... I'm really going to miss you, Leslie, because you've been very inspiring to me, just seeing you out there in your uniform. You're so brave. You're so strong. Put yourself in harm's way to protect our community. You're also very compassionate and inspire people to trust you, and so I really, really appreciate the work you've done and look forward to you helping us still in the future. Obviously, it's a great sign that everybody's here standing with you, and so enjoy your semi-retirement, and I'm sure I'll see you around.
Supervisor Bass?
Thank you, Mr. Terr. I... This is always an amazing moment when you realize things about people you never knew about them, that you're one of the Burkharts, because I knew your parents, and I was like, oh, I never got that connection. So it's... And it goes to show also, you know, hearing the story of how you are where you are today, that you really, you know, had that support in your family, which is just so important, and I can see with your daughter here today, she's got... You is an amazing support network, and, you know, I was really sad to see this on the agenda, because I would never see you in the basement anymore. It's usually when I see you. And I actually enjoy running into you, and so I was really happy to hear that you're not totally gone. And I hope I never have to see you on the mounted posse, because that would be... I'm in big trouble. So I don't think you'll have to worry about that, but we will miss you, but at least we'll still see you, so we'll get through it, I'm sure, while you're having fun, we hope.
Supervisor Wilson?
I don't know you. Or your parents. But I do want to thank you for a long term of service that will continue. I mean, this... It's really people like yourself, and even the nurses that came before, that, you know, it's that dedication to community and really the social fabric that holds it all together. And without that, that's what we hear. We often celebrate that here in the beginnings of our meetings, you know, before we tear it all apart later. Just kidding. But I'm just saying, you know, this is... I'm just appreciative. I just really thank you, and thank you for continuing in this, and setting a great example for... I'm sure it's not just for your kid. I'm sure you're setting an example for other kids, too, and that's great. I don't... I can't say thank you enough.
My turn. No. We go back a long ways, and I think it... I think the dedication, I mean, she's coming back as extra help, and I think it's well-known that we're short on deputies. We're hiring. But I think, and I can't remember the exact quote that J.D. said at a speech yesterday, but he's, at the end of the day, the one thing we want to leave someone with when we arrest them is their integrity still, is I think something to that effect. And I mean, I think you, as Estelle said and everything else, what you've done on the job, you can tell a lot about it. She's physically responsible, because she wouldn't let her husband be here today, because he's working. But I talked to them on Sunday, and, I mean, the support that she's given to the sheriff's office, the community, with the posse, with the HDSO, I mean, come Christmas time, you can get five phone calls from her going, are you coming? Are you coming to the Christmas party? She's adamant about that, and I think it shows with her daughter. Her daughter worked this whole weekend as a volunteer, whatever, at the fair, and I think the place you've made in our community, I'm so pleased that when these deputies do retire, their time comes, they come back and make the step to be extra deputies, because as we're short until we fill in, that's a huge step you're making. We see a lot of that, and that's a big part of keeping our community safe, and I can't say enough. I'm happy for your retirement. I think I'm happier that you're a friend of mine, so congratulations. Yeah. Remember, if you caught speed, and she's still giving you a ticket, so... Here we go again. And now... I'll wait till everybody gets out. We'll give them a couple seconds to run. We're gonna... Now, we're gonna have a public comment on non-agenda items? Public comment on non-agenda items? And seeing Thomas Mulder? Okay.
Yeah, I didn't... I didn't sign in.
You're fine. It's fine.
Okay, cool, thanks. I didn't know I was coming in till...
We're pretty easygoing.
A little bit ago. How long do I have? Three minutes. My name's Alexandra Profon. I am the director of the Tahoe Foundation, which started out as an educational charity in architecture, conservation, and preservation planning. It's inspired by the Great Bay State Lake, and started out as an acronym toward architecture, heritage outreach, and education, and has evolved into tangible archives to historicize our education. I'm here because I actually made a Freedom of Information request to the Board of Supervisors and clerk, rather, in March of 2018, again in September of 2018, on behalf of requesting the handbooks for the assessor's office per the BOE office, because I did not have time to get to the state. And in addition, I wanted to see what this county is using as its starting point to reference the Tax and Revenue Code as relates to property title transfers. Now, you may not understand this, but under U.S. Code Title 16, which is a federal code, there are rights that citizens have in order to do preservation planning activities to protect something called the building arts. Within the scope of that, it includes the use of native plants as informs the building arts. It informs protections and preservation related to timber products, which, as you know, thanks to John Dolbear, this place actually probably corners the market on the history of timber production in our country. So there's a lot to be celebrated here, and when I didn't get these handbooks and instead got a reference from the clerk sent October 4, 2018, the response was, "The treasure tax collector manual can be accessed at the following link. The county recorder handbooks are as follows." They give me links. The county clerk handbooks are as follows. They give me links. The assessor handbooks are all available online. They give me links. Part of the issues that we're having in the preservation of our history right now in our country is something called patent ambiguities caused due to confused information. I asked in this letter to the clerk for certified copies that also had... I asked in this letter to the clerk for certified copies that also had, and I quote, "embossing on each page provided by each office to increase efficiency derived directly from the office affiliated with it, for us to be confident when such provision of information may best serve us as the most efficient means to inform accountability, continuity, and efficiency in any type of verification process." Under Section 106 of the Title 16 Code, citizen planners have a right to have historic resources surveys done. It includes documents that are hosted by municipal governments. So, I would request, with all great respect, that the provision of the information I requested is provided to me for the sake of its citizens, so that I, as an Education Director of the Tahoe Foundation, can make this very important information available to other people in the county. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thomas?
Good morning, Board of Supervisors. Thomas Mulder, CEO, Humboldt Redwood Healing. I've got two points I'm going to try to cover in my three minutes non-agenda. With SB 97 now law since July 1st, 2019, it allows for provisional licensing and renewals of those provisional licensing, even without previously holding a state license or temp state license, cannabis cultivation. So, I'm going to ask you the same thing I've been asking for about a year now. Let's amend Ordinance 2.0 to allow applicants to be issued an interim permit to operate at only a 2,000-square-foot level until processed the decision to operate at their full capacity. This will allow operators the chance to still earn revenue to help get through the permitting process, which will help stabilize our local economy, and also will allow operators to make the necessary funds to help improve the environment. Something I've been asking for, something I hope, you know, with the 2,000 square feet, it'll get you through the waterboard a lot quicker. I think there's an exemption for 2,000 square feet, so just something to think about. It'd be simple, you wouldn't have to go through the EIR, just issue interim permits. It's out there, because the provisional relicensing goes into effect until January 1st, 2022. So, that's how long other counties are going to be working on this interim process. Last 90 seconds, Public Works. Another thing I talk to you a lot about, let's stop just asking for more money. I'm hearing a lot of times that our director is shut down, Public Works Director, because come to you and say, hey, more money. I'm involved in the schools. If I come and say to you, hey, I want more money, but I don't tell you what I'm going to do with that money, you're probably not going to give me that money. So, let's have a true action plan, what that money will achieve. It's time to look into purchasing equipment to improve road maintenance and repairs. There's pothole grinders out there, and cutter attachments, you can put on excavators, so we can cut these potholes out in nice square, uniformed things. We have low manpower, but equipment, that's good. You can, you spend $60,000 on equipment, that's good for five, 10 years. You know, you spend $40,000 on an employee every single year. So, just something to think about. Skid steers with articulating buckets, tilt buckets to clean ditches quicker and more efficiently. Just something that needs to happen. At this point in time, I demand, I think you guys should demand, a detailed action plan from the Director of Public Works. It's time to send the Director to training. If the overall maintenance and health of the roads cannot be improved, it's time to start looking at getting a new Director. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Steve, morning. You're at Driscoll Arcata. Couple of quick things. Oh, a couple of months ago, you offered a letter of support for the Railrunner project, and your main concern was that it may cost taxpayers extra money. Well, good news is, is we found a product that would work in its, in the place of what was proposed originally, that would save taxpayers money and allow for expanded use of the rail corridor. The problem is, is Public Works has not been very willing to just come to a table and sit down and talk about that. So, we need to get that resolved. Rex, I thank you for, I need extra little nudge to those guys to get that worked out. Secondly, you may not be aware, but the city of Arcata installed an illegal encroachment onto Fickle Hill Road, to County Road, just up above our house. It's for the Ridge Trail, a project I've supported publicly many, many times, donated a lot of money, public, or fundraising, et cetera. The problem is, without an approved permit, there is no signage, there's no notice for drivers that they are going to encounter pedestrians, bicycles, horses, on the section of trail, or the section of road, rather. This road is very narrow, very steep in places, and it needs, it needs a permit. It needs to go through that process so that there's not a wreck. The Public Works Department does, is aware of this, and what I do not understand is why this trail is active right now. I think, as much as I want to see it active, there needs to be some liability issues addressed, because without signage, without this, the county is extremely liable if there were to be an accident or worse. So, let's get that done. Mike, you've been to some of these meetings, you know what's going on, but you haven't done anything. And if you're just too busy, maybe Mr. Madrone would like to step in, you're familiar with trails, and working some of that stuff out. But we need a solution here before someone gets hurt, because not only could we lose a life, the county would lose a ton of money, and this trail would inevitably just be shut down. So, let's get a solution going soon, and we need some, someone who's going to step up to the plate. Thank you.
Next.
Thank you.
Ken Swawinski. I have a little packet here. It's one ounce of silver. It's casting silver. I paid $3.15 for it back when I was in high school to make silver items. There's, I can say there's 30 pieces of silver in here, and I retained one of the sharpest attorneys in Humboldt County, and gave that person a packet just like this one, said if you ever wish to have me not be my attorney, then just give it back to me. I use it for bear traps. To me, the silver represents greed and lust for power. You put a little piece of silver in a bear trap, and this is a political thing, and if somebody takes that, and they run with that piece of silver, that's indicative to me that they have the human flaw of lust for power and greed. So, these are symbols that I have in my mind, and my mind works a little different, we've talked about that. So, I'm trying to help you guys understand a little bit about where you are with your county council situation. I'm going to be the judge, okay? I'm a judge, and you have a wrongful termination suit coming before you. And the judge says, well, according, county council blank, or interim county council, whatever his status is at the time. When were you informed what the complaint was against you? According to your testimony, at the end of six months, you hadn't even heard what the complaint was. Yes, Your Honor. If you were given the information of what that complaint was, and could fix that complaint by a change of action or something, would have you done so? As I've testified, yes, Your Honor. I mean, this can go on forever, but you, we all have a process, and we all are entitled to hear what a complaint is. How can, how can you fix a complaint? I mean, you've heard a couple today. How can you address them if you haven't heard what they are? I don't think the judge would weigh, will very favorably upon somebody not being, getting the opportunity. That's the whole thing about employees. If you have a problem, let's say a drug-related problem, you're supposed to get a counselor. Now, this person, who I refer to as a employment sicario, his thing is to go out and gather information regarding enough to protect you from unlawful termination accusations, without this person being notified. And of course, here's another question. County council, or interim council blank, if you had been allowed to talk and come into the room at the time when this were brought forward to you, would you have found it necessary to file lawsuits? As I've testified, Your Honor, no, I would not have. Here we are, litigation, something wrong happened, Amy Nielsen's watch, Amy Nielsen's involved in this, and so here's the bear trap, Amy. When somebody takes and ruins somebody's life and does these kind of things, karma comes back and gets them. And I've been given full authority by Mother Nature, I can only bully bullies. You're a bully. Thank you for my opportunity to speak today.
Anybody else? All right. Thank you. Oh, it's Vernon. Are you coming up, Vernon? I'm sorry, Vernon, I thought you were.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen of the council, Madam C.A.O., County Clerk, ladies and gentlemen of Humboldt County. Mr. Sharp, if I may. I apologize for getting this to you at much delinquency. There was a major backup northbound are coming in from Arcata, so I do apologize.
Were you riding with Steve?
I was probably maybe eight cars ahead of Steve, so. What you have here, and I believe I may have sent that out via email, is called "You and Me." This is written by a national-renowned advocate, activist, and peer, Mrs., by Lisa St. George. And I'm just going to ask you to read this with your heart, keep your mind out of it, and read this with your heart, and hope for a better outcome of our community of peers. If you, now, this isn't just about me, this is her experience as a peer before she became a legislator. If you are overly excited, you are happy. If I am overly excited, I'm manic. If you are, if you imagine the phone ringing, you're stressed out. If I imagine the phone ringing, I'm psychotic. If you are crying and sleeping all day, you're sad and need time out. If I'm crying and sleeping all day, I'm depressed and need to get up. If I'm afraid to leave the house at night, or if you're afraid to leave the house at night, you're cautious. If I'm afraid to leave my house at night, I'm paranoid. And I'm going to move down to the end of this. For all of the above, you're not told to take a pill or hospitalized, but I am. I ask you to open your heart to that. And how do we treat people with lived experience, regardless whether of homelessness, mental illness, addiction, or just life's problems? I'm asking you to read this from your heart, that we can all improve the quality of life, build a stronger community, and a more vibrant county that we live. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Next.
Hi, my name's Barbara Russell. I live in Glendale, and I love what he just said. And in that spirit, I want us to embrace mixed use. And this isn't about the amendment, this is about something that's coming up in Glendale, where we've been meeting and trying to figure out what we want. We've got a lot of our local boys doing some cannabis things that are working with the community to, you know, it's all kind of inclusive. And then we, and we have this one mixed-use parcel, which I love the mixed use, because that's the way, back in the olden days, a family could have a building, they could have their business downstairs, and they could live upstairs, and they could make it. And so, we've got this one mixed-use lot, which we're really looking forward to what can happen there, and hoping it can be, you know, some old-fashioned, like woodworking, and bakeries, and just cool stuff. And also, you know, people living upstairs without the requirement of having a car, it's, you know, so expenses can be down, people don't have, you know, because they don't have all the expenses of a car, and there's the bus that could take them to work, or school, for seniors and students, so. But what's happening is, and so, one week before the Planning Commission meeting, the owner, Michael Brosgaard, from Chief Oper, he's a Chief Operating Officer of Advanced Vape Development, is going, he's putting in for four special permits, industrial permits, to do a big thing on this, you know, where we really need our mixed use, for lots of different reasons, so people can have homes in Humboldt County and businesses. So, anyway, just protect our mixed use, coming up, just coming up. See you in a week with that, all that's going into the Planning Commission. So, anyway, thank you very much for your time.
Great, thank you. All right. Seeing no one, I will close, public comment, and I will move this on to formation of a Humboldt County Climate Advisory Committee. And I know people are going, you brought this forward, Rex? And I can tell you why I brought it forward. And you're right, it's probably not in my wheelhouse, but in my wheelhouse for the last probably seven years, but for the last three or four years, someone who I respect, two people who I respect very much, who walk the walk, talk the talk, and have done everything, Dave and, Dave and Jane Simpson's from Mountain Petroleum, they've been to the Paris Accord, that they, they are true educators for me in this. And what they did is they've been following, we've been talking about this for a while, and we're fortunate today to have Walter Smith here from Mendocino. Mendocino just formed this same committee. So, we're kind of going after them, and if we are going to attack this on a global, it doesn't do any good if Humboldt puts all these things together and nobody else does, because what that does is that puts us in economic advantage. And I don't know if we can make that big a difference. We can make a little bit of a difference, but we can't make that big a difference unless we get everybody else in the state. So, teaming up with Walter, and then our clerk, and then talking with our building and planning, and we have a climate advisory committee, or climate advisory group that's been working, and I'm, hopefully, this new committee, as we get it formed, can slide right in and give them advice. I don't want to start back at square one, because they've already done a lot of work, so that we don't want to go backwards. So, with that, I was going to invite Walter Smith up at the bequest of Dave Simpson, and Dave, if he wants to come up, and explain a little bit what Mendocino did, and what we can look forward to doing. I know people are still amazed that I did this. Either way, that's fine. Either way, if you want to sit, that's fine, too.
I'm going to take advantage of the moment to expound briefly.
You want to drop the mic a little bit, David? Just to hear.
My voice is slightly impaired. This is a momentous deal. We're dealing with something that's, that's going to affect all our lives. So, I'm going to make a brief statement here. In every year but one of the last 10 years, my wife, Jane Lepina, and I have managed to wheedle from the world the wherewithal to travel to the annual U.N. Framework Convention on Climate Change, the U.N. Climate Conference. One fascinating aspect of this trip was that we would find ourselves in large crowds of people, few of whom who had the slightest doubt of the reality of the phenomenon of climate change. Back home, this was not always the case. Misinformation and outright denial, denial if you relied on the press, and even many of our friends and neighbors, was a source of great frustration, were the norm, and a source of great frustration for us, because we knew that the climate catastrophe had already made significant headway against planetary stability civilization rests upon. We met and had come to know numbers of people who had already suffered grave losses of loved ones, homes, well-being, who felt desperation as life started to disintegrate around them. They knew firsthand what we seemed had yet to learn. It is interesting to surmise what brought about the change here, and when. It's clear, though, that there has been a major change. Finally, Humboldt County, like much of the rest of the world, has come to believe, and even questioned, and even begun to take steps to respond to, in positive, life-affirming ways. One question still abounds, about whether these steps are sufficient to keep, question still abound about whether these steps are sufficient to keep us on target. We must promptly set, the targets we must promptly set for ourselves. And there are many still dangerous backwaters and eddies of denial that lurk out of sight. There are still, pardon me, there are still many who have not fully accepted the laws of physics. Maybe they're the lucky ones, still able to sleep, perhaps undisturbed by intimations of danger. The combination, though, of undeniable change, catastrophic fire, water, drought, flood, heat spells, and food shortages, will force themselves on our complacency, and make crusaders of even the most cynical of us. Maybe what we are facing is actually best understood as a crusade, a search for the grail of survival, and maybe toward the restoration of abundance. We can promote renewal of the health and productivity of our forests and rangelands. This and the restoring of our rivers holds the best hope of achieving a healthy carbon balance. We have already started on the trail back. Over the past 30 to 40 years, Humboldt natural scientists and restoration workers have initiated widespread efforts to renew the health of wildlands, and make us, that make up 90% of the base of the county. We have also developed and assigned a number of highly competent administrators, and engaged many agencies, city, county-wide, regional, and state. We have begun to create the mechanisms and managerial skillsets necessary to deal with the threats as they begin to emerge. Perhaps the most important, we have begun to replace the dirty energy sources of the past with the truly renewable, and hopefully, we are doing this on past with a truly renewable, and hopefully, we are doing this on a level that does not bribe us into the hands of profit seekers from outside our community. And now, we will have a committee organized and directed by a cross-section of Humboldt citizens. It will allow us to engage and apply the genius of the people themselves as advisors to government. It is in us, our many, it is in us and our many competencies and capacities that the hope of a livable future most likely resides. We look toward a collaboration with local and regional government and engagement of citizen-run initiatives that hold out what may be the greatest promise of successful readaptation to our place on the planet. Wish us luck. Now, I'd like to introduce my old friend, Walter Smith. Walter is revered in Mendocino County, I have to say. He's been a major instrument of sustainable forestry. He started out as a member of a logging family and became a foremost proponent of sustainable forestry in Mendocino and is respected on many fronts there. He's missing, actually, a meeting of the Board of Supervisors of Mendocino today where he was on the consent calendar, because he has been the first assignment to the new climate committee. Walter?
Well, welcome, Walter, and we're glad you upgraded Humboldt County Supervisors over Mendocino, so.
Yeah, thanks. Well, I actually know a couple of you, Estelle from Southern Humboldt. We've interacted, and actually, I didn't know that Mr. Madron's first given name by his parents is Steve. So, I'm learning something new today. And to give you a little more background of my, I guess, my Humboldt County street creds, my, I lived in Holmes as a child between eight and 16. My dad worked for Willets Redwood Products as a timberfowler, and they leased land from Hammond Lumber Company that used to be out here on Samoa. My mother worked for Palco at one of their plywood plants. And we lost our home in the 64 flood, and not only our home, but all of our possessions as well. So, I have a very much of a connection to Humboldt County besides my home in Mendocino and Willets. We've been working on bringing forward a resolution to the Board of Supervisors in Mendocino County. We really started formulating an idea back in October 2018. And during that time, it was just a little spark between three or four people at a meeting, and that spark turned into, no pun intended, a wildfire within Mendocino County. And people from all walks of life, not just the enviros, but people that, you know, worked in local government, people that, you know, truck drivers, whatever, people got interested in this whole process of doing something. Citizens are hearing about climate change. They hear about it every day, and particularly in the last year or so, certainly, we've been hearing about temperatures over 90 degrees in the Arctic Circle. These things are scaring people and bringing people to the realization that they want to do something, except individuals like me and you want to know, "How can we do something? How can I be involved?" Well, we do recycling, we do these other kinds of things. We try to live a low-carbon life, but how can we really make an impact that's going to help the globe as well as the local communities make a change? And again, this was also an issue that came forward, because in Mendocino County, if you remember, we've had major wildfires in 2017 and in 2018 that was, that were pretty scary. Of course, the largest fire in the history of California started about a mile from my daughter's house, and fortunately for her and unfortunately for everyone else that was in its path, it blew the other direction. So, this is, again, it's come to light, there's lots of different groups that are working on climate change. And so, the question is, and maybe you have the same question, why would you do something as a county, form a new committee, when all these different people are already working on climate change? Well, the issue is that you are the representatives, our supervisors, representatives, all the people, and you bring all those issues together under one umbrella so that everyone knows what's going on, and that can funnel into the supervisors through the citizens for making decisions on, that can help the impacts of climate change. So, Mendocino County has created, has made this commitment. And on March 19th, 2019, they voted five to zero to approve an action plan, a committee and an action plan to implement recommendations that come to them that can help reduce greenhouse gases and improve carbon storage, as well as work on the preparation for our citizens for natural disasters that might come from climate change. So, it's, you know, it's the ultimate think globally and act locally. We know what's going on on the globe. What can we do to participate in that and help things get better? So, I don't have to tell you about all the specific things. We are going to follow, one of the goals is to look at the Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change and their science recommendations on how to, you know, reduce greenhouse gases and try to participate in bringing, making sure that global temperatures don't go beyond 1.5 degrees. And we'll be continually continuing to review that science information over time. But it's not, if there's also a worry that it's just another committee that's not going to do anything, this committee has actually developed specific tasks to be done that they'll work on, and, you know, this voluntary committee. And let me just inform you of a few of the action plan items. One, the specific task is to establish current greenhouse gas emissions and carbon storage in the county. So, to start with a baseline, we need a baseline of information to know. So, that's a positive, specific project that we will be working with. And I can tell you that I've already personally, because I know a lot of the forest landowners, the largest forest landowners, all four of the largest forest landowners besides the state forest or the national forest, have already committed to helping measure carbon storage or carbon sequestration in Mendocino County. Two of them are already doing it, and the other two are going to help participate in doing that. In terms of greenhouse gas emissions, there's, if you look on the internet, any of the large companies that operate in Mendocino County, whether they be transnational companies or local companies, they all have environmental and social commitments that they've made, and most of them have made commitments to the climate. So, it's not like you're going to scare business about this. Business already knows they need to change, and they're already, many of them are already making those commitments. Now, they're making them on a global scale, but they can help, they will help work with you on the local scale as well. So, other projects, and then establish priority projects. So, once we know where's the greenhouse gases coming from, where can we actually make the biggest impact? So, we'll try to prioritize those projects that we could do and bring that, or storage, where could we increase storage, bring those to the county board of supervisors and have them review it. We would also help them with looking for funding, looking for talent that we need to make that happen. There's a lot of organizations already in our county that, and I'm sure it's the same in Humboldt County, that will work on these things, you know, that are already work on. You also have an extra benefit is that you have the university here in your county. So, develop and implement monitoring protocols, so after we know what's going on, and after we decide on a project, then figure out how to monitor it to make sure that we're getting the impact that we want. The committee will also have what's called, we call focus groups. So, we've divided out between three different sections. One is greenhouse gas emissions, second is greenhouse gas storage, and the third is community preparedness for climate changes. So, we're realizing that climate's going to change. It's gonna be a while before we, the globe can reverse it, if that's even possible. So, we'll need to be, but we, a lot of communities have worked on climate change, but mostly it's how do we prepare for climate change, not how do we help reverse climate change? So, our focal point is sort of on how do we help from, how do we help reverse climate change? We also, we already have, you know, the Office of Emergency Services, the Fire Safe Council, and places like that that are already working on preparedness for these kinds of disasters. So, we're looking at energy, transportation, land use, development, solid waste. These would be green, big categories of greenhouse gas emitters, and those could be broken down even more specifically, and we'll let the focus groups do that. So, that's how we're going to engage the larger community as well. So, you have appointed committee members, and then you have these focus groups that will invite expertise, you know, people maybe that don't want to be on the committee because of the time constraints, but maybe volunteer to be on a specific focus area. Carbon storage, ag land, forest, rangelands, ocean. And then, in terms of preparedness, climate hazard reduction, disaster recovery preparation, coordinate with, of course, with the agencies and develop climate hazard preparedness. So, and our board of supervisors have also, you know, committed themselves to create, to prioritize climate change issues and to incorporate it in the broader picture of how development, how the county operates as well. So, the final, a couple of final things is that how did we, how did we create the committee, right? So, the idea, and this was passed by a four-to-one vote, was how the committee would actually be structured. So, the committee, the appointed committee is 15 people, three from each district, and then there's a mandate to look at diversity, right? So, you, it's a bit complicated. We'll see how Mendocino County does, but you're looking for diversity of people, you know, that would include, you know, Native Americans and other people of color, as well as, you know, different expertise and that would belong to the committee. So, three, so each of the supervisors, five supervisors, pick three people from their district, and then that would form the committee. And the committee members themselves would head one of the focus groups, so that they would bring back the information or the recommendations or the data that's collected from the focus groups would be then brought back to the committee. Committee would review that, combine it if it's necessary with other things that, from the other focus groups, and then bring recommendations back to the county. And then, the county would have meetings in which there would be a report, just like any of your other departments here, every quarter, I think it is, at a minimum. So, that's kind of the picture. I take questions, if you like, at this point.
Senator Bass.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Actually, I was just, as I'm listening and you're talking about Mendocino County, and we do a lot of work with Mendocino County. We work with them on multiple committees. Would you see in the future a situation where you've got the counties which join each other who are taking similar actions? Would you see those groups getting together, since we're talking about, you know, the bigger effort? And how would that look? Or is that just something that really hasn't been contemplated?
Yeah, it's contemplated.
Like a regional kind of thing?
Yeah. One of the reasons I'm here, and actually, one of the things that we, that we pointed out, is that we want to, you know, provide leadership from Mendocino and leadership from all supervisors, try to expand this to our surrounding counties. And one of the things that we really do understand, and if you, the state of California has a list of counties that have done things on climate change, right? The state of California has a mandate that counties do things on climate change. And the counties that have done the most are the quote "rich" counties. They're all the urban counties. And all the rural counties, which don't have a lot of money, right? They're trying to figure out how they're going to meet some of these mandates themselves. So, if we collectively could do some of these things, I think that would be, that would be great. And as each county sort of figures out what an issue is for them, then can we pass that on? Can that be something that we can pass to the next? And you also have to realize that there are rural counties in the United States that are already doing this. And there's, I happen to be, when I retired, I was the global manager for assurance, for assurance services for the Rainforest Alliance in New York City. So, I traveled all over the world, and I've been working with small communities with no money, doing a lot for climate change, just through their own volunteer efforts. But there's lots of information. There are lots of information out there. There's lots of methodologies for measuring these things. These are, it's not, you know, this is not all secret now. It's pretty much, you know, something that can be picked up and utilized.
Supervisor Wilson?
You say that you started your, this at the same time as approving your CAP, your climate action plan? Is that true? Is that what you just said, that Mendocino has a climate action plan?
Yeah, I'm just, I just read some parts of it. It's basically, it's not a climate action plan, and I think in the sense that you're talking about. It's a, when we brought a proposal forward for this climate action, we call it the Mendocino County Climate Action Advisory Council. Along with that, we also brought along, what would this council, what would this committee do, and how would it interact both with the public and how would it interact with the county itself?
I guess my question is, does Mendocino County have a climate action plan?
No.
No. Okay. Are you guys in the process of creating climate action plan as per the state?
Yeah, yeah. I don't know. You'd have to ask them. I'm not a supervisor, so I'm not, I'm not familiar with how, what they've been doing. And of course, they do have a few preliminary things that they've been working on. Of course, just like you, we have Noyal Harbor, so they've been working on the, you know, what they're gonna do for sea level rise and, you know, things like that, yeah.
Okay. I don't have any more questions, but I would like to hear from our staff with regards to where we're at with our climate action plan and sort of start from that framework, because we are in the process of putting together a climate action plan. And one of, typically in these climate action plans, one of the recommendations that usually come out of that is the creation of a committee. And so, I want to make sure that if I have, if we have staff working towards that, that we're not jumping in front of the process that they're already engaged in.
Just a note, we did take stock of what's going on in Humboldt County and found that there's quite a bit, of course. And the climate action, there is a climate action plan being developed. There's also the, I need my notes. I'm not real great with jargon. I have a dysfunction with jargon.
We're in a, I mean, I don't know where we are in a process of discussing this.
Well, what I brought this forward is because of David, and because of what Mendocino does and kind of what Supervisor Bass said. So, we're working in conjunction with surrounding counties. But, you know, with that being read, if you read this, I want it to be worked, for them to step up, as you said, our Humboldt Climate Action Plan does make forward. This is maybe where, this is our nexus into this committee. But it also says, with the help of Sabell Emmett, and she actually added some words on this, but this is not limited, and, you know, it's already-- And, you know, it's already on our federal platform.
Is Connor, is Connor McGugan here? I'm sorry. Connor, perhaps you could address?
Sure. I'm just, I'm just, I'm, I'm... Sure. I'm now an extra help planner at the county, and I'll just, yeah. I'll just kind of touch base about where we're at with the Climate Action Plan. We have an internal goal of finishing up a draft by the end of this year. We have a really comprehensive greenhouse gas inventory that shows where emissions come from in Humboldt County. We have a subset of that, looking at county operations specifically. And we have a really broad overview of carbon stocks in the year 2010. So we have all the data at this point, and right now, we're working on policies, and that's been part of a public process. We've gone throughout the county, hosted workshops, and we're at the stage where we're kind of really developing specific policies and working with the public to do that. So this, I feel, and I'm sure my supervisors feel, could slot in really well with where we're at in the Climate Action Plan.
When would you expect the Climate Action Plan to come to our board? And would that be a good time to then put together, I mean, in the opinion, or initiate the committee to then implement the Climate Action Plan? Does that seem reasonable? Is that, is that the expectation of staff at this time?
Yeah. We would say that when it is brought forward around the first of the year, or slightly after the first of the year, that it would be appropriate to appoint a committee to implement the Climate Action Plan. And that could be a very broad-based view of, of all the items that are identified within the, the purpose for this committee. There is an opportunity, there is a Stakeholder Advisory Group that the work program that the Board approved calls for. And it could be that, you know, this could be something that fills that role also, appointing this group to work with as the Stakeholder Advisory Group.
Could we add to the task of that Stakeholder Advisory Group to create the foundation of what would come after? You know, the Advisory Group is to, for the creation of this, of the CAP, correct? So then they would also, could advise on what the construction of this, of a Climate Action Committee might be. I mean, what I don't want to get in the way of is the momentum of the Climate Action Plan as it currently is, is moving forward. And it is really important. We do need people that are working on this. I think that, of course, there's, you know, some people were, you're right, Rex, some people are like, why is Rex bringing this forward? Because, you know, the, the obvious politics of that.
I live here.
I know, but, but I mean, but in understanding, I mean, we are appointing, we have appointed climate change deniers to our planning commission. We appoint climate change deniers, you know, in other pla, you know, we take actions in those ways. And so we have to make sure that, you know, this is ubiquitous, if we're, our commitment is real. And I want to make sure that, you know, this, that, that the committee, we want, you're right, we want action, right? And I think some people sort of fear, like, you know, you want ideas to die, put it in a big committee. Because then it, maybe it'll never get to the Board and be accountable. And so we have to make sure that if the committee, and when actually, a committee is put together, or some organization, that it actually is action-oriented, that it actually will bring things to this Board that are actionable in timely manner, and not lost in a, in a swirl of, of unending discussion. And so that's my concern, is that it's not going to...
Swirl of, swirl of non-ending discussion is...
Yeah, and I just don't want...
Danger.
Yeah, and then that, so, you know, we see that happen often. And so how do we create something that's as actionable as possible? And we're going to be discussing today land use issues that have to do with, you know, and land use has a big impact on, on our carbon footprint, and we're going to be talking about that today. And are we going to talk about the climate implications of what we're talking about? We'll find out, you know? But it would, it really would be great if we had a climate...
We're not there yet, though.
Well, I know we're not there yet, but I mean, it would, it would be great if we had a Climate Action Committee that could advise us on our land use policy that we're doing, and on actionable items even within the county government itself. We're the, you know, one of the biggest employers in this county. We have employees that travel to and from work. How can we make, you know, these things more effective and efficient for that? The efficiency of, of our buildings and our infrastructure, all that stuff, we need, we do need that help and advice, but it's got to come fast, and, and, and can't, we can't, we can't...
That's why we're here.
...lollydagen, logging, yeah, excuse me, you know, delaying if the committees are too big, or too bulky, and, and, and aren't actionable enough. And we have to internalize this change at every level, you know? So I appreciate you guys being here on this, and I, for me, this just is, makes me want to move forward and faster to get done with our CAP, with our Climate Action Plan, and have an implementation committee to drive those policies forward as...
I would see this not just as an implementation committee, it would have to be part of the planning loop. This, this is a way of cutting in citizens.
Yeah, we, but we, but we already have as part of that, the, what is going to be, it's, what are you calling it, John? Sorry, I just needed, because I didn't write it down.
The Stakeholder Advisory Group.
Stakeholder Advisory Group. So that, I see that as a transition into like, getting this committee going, but...
Pretty soon, we're going to need a roadmap of what, what goes where, because there's a lot of, less than perfectly integrated initiatives going on here. And I think we can do this, and I think this new committee could potentially be...
Supervisor Bass?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. With all due respect, I find it absolutely fascinating that there's so much defensiveness and overreacting, I think, coming from that end of the dais. But I understand, you know, you have a different philosophy, and I think it's strong when you call people climate deniers. I mean, there are people who, I go around and around with some that live in my house, that have a very different opinion about how it gets there. But I don't know, I don't know of many, except there are a few that leave me messages every once in a while, that absolutely deny it's happening. It's just, how is it happening? I also think it was a little, kind of a dig when it was talked about the political reasons for bringing it forward. I think Supervisor Bone has made it pretty clear. He already knows these gentlemen. He knows the folks in Mendocino County. And I think it's reasonable to have the discussion now. And however, if our, if our, if our department, you know, if our director feels it's not the right time, that's fine. But I actually think there is some value, I mean, large groups make me nervous, but I think there's some value to have people who don't all share the same voice. Maybe the ideas bring some of the folks who don't necessarily understand or really claim on board, to bring a different perspective to it. So, you know, and I'm probably sounding defensive myself, but I, I was sitting there going, wow, I thought we were just having a conversation of something Mendocino County's doing. I appreciate a hearing about it. And I don't want to put these gentlemen where they feel like that somehow they have said something wrong, because I think they brought something of value to us today. And maybe I'm just misunderstanding some of your comments coming forward, and I apologize if that's the case. But I'd like to have us try to, you know, just see what is, what is the good that could come of this? And maybe it's not appropriate now, but I just wanted to kind of leave it a little more open than, than what I was feeling it was going.
Thank you. Supervisor Fennel?
Oh, okay. Thank you. First of all, I want to thank David and Jane and Walter for all of your work throughout the years. I've listened to you many, many times for your reports from the various meetings throughout the world regarding climate change. You've been at the forefront. I do not want in any way to reject your offer. I think that the idea of this big tent approach, a sounding board, if you will, a place for all of the various entities that are interested in this, can be recognized, et cetera, is very, very valuable, because there are a lot of efforts happening, and I think that it's important to kind of bring it all together. My question for Walter is, is this a Brown Act committee? I mean, this is an established committee that operates by the Brown Act?
Say that again, I'm sorry.
Is it a Brown Act committee?
Yes, Brown Act, yeah.
One of the, the things that I think are really important is that as we move forward, there have been visionaries, people who imagined and knew this much longer than others. But as you pointed out, many people are more and more on board. And a lot of the fields that you talked about in the staff report, transportation, agriculture, green building, forest management, and health, you mentioned rainstand. I'd like to see also energy, as well as fisheries. We're seeing huge changes in the fisheries, and that's right on our front door. And I think that, that is probably one of the more quantifiable measurements of, of how drastic that things are changing. So I really appreciate the idea of creating a committee like this, and I think we should look, look to how we would do that, whether, you know, it would be an overarching committee, that Climate Action Plan would be also looked at. But I also like the idea that it should be diverse. We want to hear all voices, and, and address all concerns. So I really appreciate you coming forward today.
Supervisor Joe?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I too want to thank you for bringing this forward in cooperation with David and Walter. So thank you for that. I also want to commend David and Jane for all of their dedication and work in this arena. And as some may or may not know, they are to be honored soon with the 250th birthday celebration of Alexander von Humboldt, who was a naturalist, who was somebody who really cared about the natural world, and brought a lot of education and science to that arena that carries on to this day. So congratulations on your recognition for your hard work. I also want to recognize Walter for his work. Without his work in Smartwood and ISF, Institute for Sustainable Forestry, which came out of Southern Humboldt, many people may also not know this, that today, the organic wood label, the, the label that we've provided for forestry operations, that says, these forestry practices are sustainable, and they're dealing with carbon, they're dealing with climate change, all these other things, ultimately ended up creating the Forest Stewardship Council, and the FSC Certification Program, which both of our large corporate landowners have become certified. And I can attest, as a person that's been involved in forestry operations for a long time, that that has had a remarkable positive effect in helping to change our forestry practices in Humboldt County to a much more sustainable and better approach. So thank you, Walter, and ISF, and Smartwood, and all those early innovators who have brought us these incentivized, value-added approaches to how we do things in our forests. So just wanted to thank you all for that. I, as many may know, am very focused on incentive-based approaches. And I know that in this Climate Action Plan, we will be sure, to make sure that we focus a lot on incentives, not just hammers coming in and saying, thou shalt do this, thou will not do that, but saying, if you do this, you're going to be rewarded financially for having done the right thing, and preventing damages and sequestering carbon in the first place. So action-oriented, I absolutely want to associate myself with many of the comments that Supervisor Wilson made. I think the younger generations realize, we can't really just kind of play around with this. We need to take action, probably a long time ago. But today, tomorrow is better than not doing it at all. And so I too want to make sure that we're extremely action-oriented. I have a question for the Planning Director, and that is, what is the process, and how are you intending to set up the Stakeholders Advisory Group? How's that going to work? Because that sort of interfaces with what we're talking about here.
Yes. One of the things that we wanted to do, and first, as Connor mentioned, we have done a lot of outreach to the public, and we anticipate that that will continue to be the case. And so obviously, we want to continue to dialogue with industry, with agriculture, with the institutional elements of the county, and, and the residents of the county, to make sure that all voices are being heard as the policies are being refined, and to get feedback on that, particularly since we want to make this actionable, and it's only actionable if people can see themselves carrying it out.
Okay. So that's something your department is directing and, and working with Connor, as the staff person who's helping to pull all this together. So you feel that that is going to be a robust process, and get you the information you need from stakeholders to have a good plan?
I believe it will be a robust process. I also believe that, as Connor mentioned, there's no reason why an appointment of a committee can't intersect with that. The thing that, and I, I think the Chair had mentioned this earlier, that we don't want to do is, is try to go back and start over, and rebuild what we've already done. We, we would like to, if, if I could give any input, it would be that we have the creation of the committee and the work that we're doing intersect at a certain point, merge, and be able to continue on in kind of a seamless fashion, and, and not to, to go back and try to restart.
Okay. That, that sounds great. You know, the, I, I agree that we need to be careful with some of the words we use to not disenfranchise people. This is a hot-button topic. There are many that don't believe in climate change. I respect that. I think, as Supervisor Bass said, there are even more that believe it's happening, but aren't quite sure why or what we do about it. And I also want to respect those opinions as well. But perhaps the worst thing we could possibly do would be to set up a committee that is equally divided between those that believe it's happening and those that don't, and we get nothing done, or we waylay the action. And I think that's what the concern here that was expressed was, you know, put out there. I agree with that. I don't think we have the time to really mess around with this. I think we should have been at this a long time ago. We continue to see some actions happen that aren't, you know, really dealing with this directly, whether it's diesel grows in the hills, or continuing to encourage more parking, more cars, more fossil fuel use, et cetera. So I too feel the urgency to get something done, and would hope that whatever committee we set up would be action-oriented, it would be people that agree, there is climate change, there are impacts, we may not know exactly why, unless you read the science, it's pretty clear. But that takes time for people to get on board with. So at any rate, I wanted to pass out the, a little handout to the Board, and I have extras for the Planning Director and some of the public, there's maybe 15 copies there, of a possible suggested Climate Advisory Committee membership. Just looking at, you know, what, what sort of sectors we might want to include in this, including community organizations that are focused on conservation issues pertaining to forestry and wildlands, also pertaining to transportation and land use, organizations focused on climate or other conservation issues, businesses, business organizations in the transportation sector, businesses and organizations in the real estate and development sector, those in the residential or commercial building, energy efficiency and renewable energy sector, as well as those in the manufacturing and agricultural sector, of course, tribes and community organizations focused on environmental justice, local educational and research institutions, the Redwood Coast Energy Authority, and other government agencies and jurisdictions. So I only offer this as a possible consideration as we move forward to develop this, this committee, and further figure out how we can interface this with the Stakeholder Advisory Group, to not delay the process. And so I'm assuming that we're, what we're going to do here today is perhaps direct staff to maybe come back to us with some recommendations on how we might move forward with fast action, and how this committee might be able to interface with this process. Does that seem like a reasonable approach to...
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just, I just have to say, the reason this was brought forward, as Walter said, this was back in 2018, and then in March, they voted on it. And just in July, just recently, they voted in Mendocino to form this committee. So their committee's not even formed after seven, eight, nine months, and you, we keep talking about this. So I was hoping we could start working on the committee in conjunction with planning and building. So we are working in concentration, not competing. That's why we wrote all of that stuff in the, in the staff report. All of that is what you've said, it's... All of that is what you've said, it's been very eloquent. On the diversity, it can't all be one way. It has to. It's amazing, sometimes we've got to have, I hear that we have to have diversity, we have to have diversity, and I believe in that 100%, except you don't want diversity if it's something you don't believe in or something you believe in. I just want everybody on my side. So, and I think it's, we're not going to get anywhere and we're not going to get the public's buy-in unless everybody has a seat at the table. And that's, I think that has a little bit to do with the size and what Mendocino did. I'm not trying to reinvent the wheel, and I'm not trying to do anything. Mendocino and Dave and Jane with all their work, and like I said, we've been talking about this for years, and then when 2018, Dave says, we're getting closer. When July hit, this is the time we could bring it forward. And I appreciate that. And I hope whatever we bring forward can be in conjunction with the Planning and Building Department, even though I threw this on their lap, sorry, John. But it's something that has to be addressed. As far as it being political, I mean, yeah, there's an election coming up, and I got to say this because I've been getting this for, every time I do anything. It's for political reasons. I'm not changing a damn thing I do, you guys. I'm going to keep moving forward, I'm going to be a bull in a china shop, I'm probably going to say the wrong things, I'm going to do a lot of the right things, I'm going to do some wrong things. If you don't think I'm doing the job, don't vote for me, that's fine. But anything I bring forward, this isn't political, because this was long before I even thought about running again. So I, that's preposterous and, but anyway, I just had to say.
Really respect and appreciate your openness.
No, I, David, I, you respect some people in life because they actually, they don't talk, they do. And Jane and Dave, before I was elected, I know there were doers out there and met them out there. So that's why I brought it forward, more out of respect for those two than any of your guys' feelings. But I still think it's something we have to do. You know, I just, and as we move forward, and like I said, it has to come forward now because seven months later, Mendocino doesn't even have their committee yet, they're working forward. But as you guys know, the wheels of government turn very slowly. So this is why I brought, in conjunction, to bring it out. It's already on our legislative platforms. You know, as you said, we've got a climate, we've got a cap working on, we've got Sabell Emmett working on a lot of those things. As Connor said, we've got a lot of the stuff already done. But I want it to be able to be, I don't want to be, have this, us to come up with a plan that economically stifles Humboldt County and says, we've done it and we haven't made a change at all because we're such a small, I mean, we have to work with our surrounding counties and the rest of the state. I mean, I had a picture of LA County three days ago where you couldn't, at 2,000 elevation. If we don't fix those people, it's something we don't do, is not going to make a difference. So anyway, that's why it was brought forward. Thanks, Dave, Jane, Walter, thanks for making the trip. Supervisor Fennel.
I absolutely love the passion. And I will vouch for David and Jane and Walter, these are people of action, in fact, refreshingly so. And it's nice to have that kind of energy working with us. And so I really do think we need to move forward with your suggestions. I like the idea that Mendocino came up with, with the three different representatives appointed by each supervisor. I never for once, until it was mentioned by somebody else, thought of climate change deniers or anything else. I thought of a community working together to address an issue that we all know is looming. And I know, I've worked with a colleague on the RCEA who is a lot younger than me and said, we young people want this to happen. And there were a few of us older people saying, well, we want it too. And that's what I see, is that there are a lot of people out there who want this to be addressed ASAP. And I think it's great to have people of action engaging with the county. So I would really like us to move forward. We could either task staff with coming forward with the recommendation for the forming of this committee, or we can create an adult committee to do it. Either way, I think there's enough information here that it would not be a difficult thing to do.
And my vision, in all honesty, was not to overtask staff. I mean, staff, but the cake's already baked, you guys, unless you want to change the variety. Mendocino's already got it out there, and we can fine-tune it to Humboldt County. But I don't see any reason spending a lot of staff time reinventing the wheel when it's already, you know, somewhat in place. I know there's going to be changes. And like I said, unless we're working in tandem with surrounding counties, what we do is one, we can do a lot more as many. And that's the whole thing. We have to get, we have to make it accessible and easy for buy-in from the other counties. I mean, you know, and I do have to, if you want to, calling people deniers and stuff, and I'm sorry, Mike, but I'm just saying, find out where they're coming from, because that's, we have a volunteer planning commission that works an immense amount of hours, and if they make decisions you don't like, calling them names, I think, is not the appropriate way to challenge it. I think maybe sitting down and talking with them would be the best way. And that's just me, so. Supervisor Bass.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you for that last comment, because that's what I was, I got a little bit hot and bothered because it said, you know, it sounded like names and labels. And I think we've all talked about how that doesn't really help when we put labels, and we're all guilty of it at times as well. I did want to thank Supervisor Madron for bringing in the history of, additional history of these gentlemen who are speaking and what they've done through the years. That really was very illuminating and makes me feel even more comfortable with what you guys brought to us today, because you certainly have been in the middle of these things for a very long time. And I did appreciate the suggested list of, you know, it may not be all-inclusive or perfect, but that was on my list of, well, if we do move forward, how do we decide who's on there? And then also hearing that Mendocino still is not actually in that phase yet, I think we have the ability, if anything, even as simple as just asking our CIO to connect with their CIO Carmel on the experience that she went through, because Carmel is a very meticulous CIO. I mean, she's been, she's been recognized by state associations for being a very.
Kind of like ours.
Yeah, well, exactly. Just different names. But I think there is value in that, and perhaps maybe that is even, an even earlier preliminary step we could do. But that would be part of tasking staff. So I'm interested to hear, there's, what the public comment says. But I think there's opportunity to bring a lot of people on board who think they are, think they don't agree, and they'll probably find out, as in Supervisor Fennel's story, that when it gets right down to, most do, to some level, understand that we got to do something. So, but thank you.
Supervisor Wilson.
Well, I stepped into that one, didn't I? So that's okay. I, you know, I want to say that I have, for years, listened to David and Jane on K-Mud and their trips to the Paris and the climate action. And I have to say, you guys were on the, were on the forefront, and you still are, but there's a lot of people catching up to you now. Thank goodness, right? And, and, and you were, you were, you know, in your own way pounding your fist about the climate emergency that we, that many places are now proclaiming worldwide, and states and cities and counties and universities and other institutions, and now even some of the largest corporations in the world are now acknowledging, this is climate emergency time. So I apologize if my passion with regards to that and the anxiety that we're now feeling and when we're getting reports of the Amazon burning, you know, to clear fields so that, you know, for the export of, you know, of products from the Amazon that we consume, and when we're seeing, well, you know, there's just the list, it's climate emergency, that what I'm expressing is some anxiety about the speed at which these things are moving or not moving forward. And I know you guys share that, and I appreciate that. And when I say that, you know, use the term, and I'll say it again, climate change deniers, I do think that there, that, you know, the preponderance of science and the preponderance of everything that we see, you know, 95% or 99% of the people who study this thing are saying, this is human-caused. We're, we're, we're not helping ourselves if we're not being very open about that, about that. And we have to acknowledge that it is in all levels of how we're addressing these things, and it's in our land use pant planning, which we'll be talking about today, it's in our personal habits, which we are all trying to be accountable to, and none of us are perfect on, and there's anxiety in ourselves about that, you know? It's like we're driving around and still driving around in these vehicles, and we still have inefficient food systems and all those things. So we're working on it. I appreciate you guys being here a bunch. I want to hear from the public on this. But my suggestion on how we can move this forward is, and I think I want to thank Mr. Bone with the idea of this parallel, moving it forward, is that, is that we have a plan to have the formation of that committee on the same day as we have the approval of our, or the cap is brought to our, so we're in tandem and we get to that.
I think, I think we can get it pretty close. I'm not going to say the same day.
I think that's the goal.
But I think as long as the committee knows what they're stepping into and how far we've gone, so we're not reinventing the wheel, creating extra staff time, working on the good work that Mendocino has, I really appreciate Supervisor Bass's idea for our CAOs to have a shortcut. They talk, because we border Mendocino, we're a lot alike, so they talk on a regular basis. They actually get along real well, so it works out well for us. So with that, I'm going to open it up to public comment. Walter, David, thank you guys. Jane, you're sitting back there in the shadows, but I know you're the one that does a lot of this, so, and David, it's a tandem, it's a team.
We are a team.
Thanks, David.
I think there's a lot of unanimity here today.
You bet. Thank you.
Nobody wants to fall behind on this particular issue.
I think we need to move forward, that's why, with the time constraints we're having, seeing what Mendocino has not got there yet, we're not really getting that far out there.
Thank you, Rex, for bringing it forward.
Thank you, Jane, for forcing me to do it. No. She brought me jam the other day. No, thank you, guys. All right, public comment.
Ken Swawski, I do have a request of them before they leave.
They're not leaving.
They're not leaving, good, they're sitting down.
Right there.
I didn't know, a lot of times people get up and they're at it, and they got plain connections to make, and they got to get up. Good to see somebody moseying through life in this chamber. I want to thank them for all the years that they've done this. I do have a specific request. I'm not proposing that we go ahead and reverse the water flow from down south for 60 years up into the Eel River to fix what's broken. I am proposing that the people who do talk to the Mendo people there understand the angst we have. And I hope they will listen to, and I was very disheartened to be reading on Lost Coast Outpost where our tribal members got up and left the meeting. I was also not happy that we don't have equal representation. They want a two-basin system. Our basin should be equally represented, and I would like to see all of those tribal members put on there, not sharing a chair. They're the caretakers. I wanted to send this message to Mendocino, they are the caretakers. If they're fine with some of that water going down there, I'm fine with it. But those are the people that need to be listened to and to have, you know, this representative that Jared Huffman's staff was causing problems with these people, maybe they don't get to understand the same passion that Mike Wilson has regarding this. The tribal people have that passion about the water, and they're our caretakers. So please make that important down there. I'm not going to support a two-basin system. As far as I'm concerned, I don't think your water should be exported somewhere else to keep mankind surviving, nor do I think. I think the water should remain in the basin in which Mother Nature put it. And that's the biggest thing I want to bring forward on climate change. She has a bouncing, our population's even around here, right? We're not growing, maybe we can sustain our population, maybe we can't. Those people down south got touched by what I call the blackening. And eventually, it will go ahead and go through the whole thing. I mean, you've, you've put all these combustibles places where they weren't, they're going to burn. Down in Mexico, I'm luckier down there because it's 115, wind's blowing, and they start a fire alongside the road, well, as soon as the wind stops, it goes out. There's nothing to burn down there, it's just nothing but mesquite and a little bit of brush. We are not that way here. We're going to burn, and I want the people down south to understand, we want our water back, all of it. We don't want any of yours. Put it back in the basins it was, please. Otherwise, Mother Nature works in mysterious ways, bats last. We are the only invasive species on this planet. I'll hang with that one. And of course, our biggest flaws are greed and lust for power. Thank you for my opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Next.
Good morning, Supervisors. My name is Colin Fisk with the Coalition for Responsible Transportation Priorities. I want to thank Supervisor Bone for suggesting this committee. The climate crisis is something that demands our attention and our action, and I think this is one step to moving it closer to the center of the county's agenda. I would suggest that the success of the committee will hinge on two things. First, its stated purpose and goals, and second, its membership. So regarding the committee's purpose, I think there's really no need for a committee to identify climate action goals, because those have been identified for us by science and by state law that have dictated certain things to us. And the county, as we've talked about, is already addressing, is already working on a climate action plan, which I think ideally will, will sort of meet those mandates. So I would suggest that the purpose of the committee be this, to make recommendations to the Board in order to ensure that the county is meeting the state-mandated climate goals and to ensure implementation of the climate action plan once it is adopted by the Board. Regarding the committee's membership, I think it should include stakeholders from the major affected industries, as well as, really importantly, subject matter experts and public interest organizations that work on these things full-time. And I had more to say about that, but I really think that Supervisor Madron's list is a good one, so I would recommend that you go with that. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, well, Tom Wheeler, Executive Director of Epic. I'll say ditto to everything that Colin just said, I think that he presented this issue very well. I'd also like to second Supervisor Madron's approach to developing this Climate Advisory Committee. I think that the groups, or the list of types of groups that would be part of the committee is a strong one. Separately, I think that's something else that we need to think about, and this goes back to our draft climate action plan from 2012, is the necessity to have a full-time staff member who's solely focused on climate planning. This was something that was recommended in the 2012 draft plan, and I think such a person at the planning department would be really great, it could help get more grant money to get these sorts of projects completed. So that is my friendly addendum. Again, I support the idea of a climate advisory committee. I was a bit surprised to see Rex supporting it or bringing it forward, but hearing your explanation, I, my concerns are fully resolved. I too share a great love for David and Jane, so you have a good taste, Rex.
Barbara Russell, Raw Team, we're all on the same end, but plant enthusiast, I'm here as a plant enthusiast. And I just want to tell you something really cool, because I see that this and the solution, part of it is this sequestering carbon, which happens through plants. And it does so many good things. I recently learned about this when I looked up on YouTube, Gabe Brown, who's a rancher in the Dakotas, and what they did, they didn't have a lot of money and blah, blah, blah. So whatever, they, so just as there's carbon up in the atmosphere that gets sequestered through legumes, carbon gets sequestered through plants. And he shows where the living root in the ground is what, so, is what, is what can solve this. So the living root in the ground, it takes the carbon, and the liquid carbon goes into the ground, it shows this, and it feeds the bacteria and the biota, biota, and the very bottom of the food chain, and the mycelium and all that, which creates the aggregates, which allows water to percolate down and recharge our water tables. So really, the value of plants cannot be underestimated as part, a very important component to this, and I'm very excited about it. So thank you for bringing this forward.
Thank you. Next.
Good morning, my name is Pat Quarr, live in Arcata. Just want to say, the reality of climate change is becoming so palpably evident to people now, with large majorities of voters wanting to see action being taken by public officials. And I know that our leaders, Humboldt County leaders, have shown that they understand that this is a crisis. Supervisor Fennel and her colleagues on the Redwood Coast Energy Authority Board voted unanimously earlier this year to move to all renewable electricity by 2025. That was a really bold and important move. So I support the creation of the Climate Advisory Committee, and I hope that it will be staffed by people, much as I think Supervisor Madron recommended, but also by people who are local subject matter experts in this field, in following up on the information and policy ideas that are gathered through the county's climate action plan. and policy ideas that are gathered through the county's climate action plan. I also know the transportation accounts for about 40% of our local greenhouse gas emissions, that information was in the draft information of the climate action plan. So, transportation's our biggest single source of emissions, and obviously, it's hugely challenging for us to reduce that. So, I also support through the planning process, the enacting of low, of lower parking densities and discouraging large parking lots, and generally doing anything that you can to encourage people to get around by any means other than driving alone in their fossil-fueled cars and trucks. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Ms. Max Brotman. There are so many prongs to climate change, and I know that this is going to be addressed by the committee, but I'd like to emphasize that there's, there's so many diverse things we need to be looking at, such as like, single-use plastics. I'm very concerned about the new In-N-Out Burger, because I've like seen how much trash those places can create and how much traffic, and there's going to be a lot of unpopular things that we need to do to address this issue. So, I would like to add that maybe Humboldt Air Quality District could be added to that list for the committee. We need a lot more prescribed fire in our landscape in order to effectively store carbon. Without prescribed fire, our forests are going to burn, even here in the fog belt, we are really just waiting for a wildfire. Prescribed fire helps the soil and the forests build carbon. Well, initially, yes, we release a lot of fire. In the long run, managing the forest with fire is the best way to achieve ecological diversity and carbon storage. We also need to be looking at expanding the salt marshes in our coastal areas. We need to be looking at our kelp forests, both the salt marsh and the kelp forests in the ocean store tremendous amount of carbon, and they are struggling. These kinds of restoration need to be priorities, because we need to draw down as much carbon as we can, and we have tremendous opportunity to do it in this region where we have so much abundant water. Water is what creates carbon storage, like, that's what life needs to get this stuff done. I think I'll end there. Thank you.
Thank you, and I like your comment on prescribed burns, because we have a nationally-recognized prescribed burn, and Supervisor Wilson and I both serve on the North Coast Air Quality, and we've been working with the Prescribed Burn Association to assist them in most anyways.
I'm a professor.
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate it.
Thomas Mulder again. I guess I misgauged that agenda item, I thought it'd go by fairly quickly, but...
Yeah, so did I.
A couple of things I'd like to bring up is I think moving forward with it sooner than later, because yes, the wheels of government are very, very slow setting up the community, the committee, the idea of it bringing, the committee bringing recommendations to the board for approval, I think it's great. I think diversity is super, super important. I actually attended a meeting hosted by the Planning Department, and Tom was there, and I actually, from, I'd never met the guy before previous board meetings, I was like, I polar opposites, but actually hearing, respectfully hearing the opposite person's opinion and taking all the politics out of it, it's amazing the consensus you can have. So, please, when going forward with setting up this committee, make sure the politics, throw the politics out of the side and just, you know, talk about your differences and find common ground and get there. And another quick, easy thing we could push on for climate change and all that stuff, metric tags. All the plastic zip ties and all the waste when it could just be one tag for, per greenhouse or something like that, keep that in mind. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Did you get that, John? All right, I'll bring it back to the board. So, and I'm just going to take this, I think staff has enough information to bring this and bring it forward back to us. I think we've beat it to death, I just, I got another thank you out of Tom from Epic, so my day's complete. It's got to be hard for you. But, well, I'm just saying before we do the motion, I just wanted to make sure staff has got enough information, and again, I appreciate Thomas's line on diversity. I think diversity is important, because as, as you just said, we might have more in common than you actually, you know, I'm, I'm, more so than most anybody up here, I'm putting a pretty big silo, and, and I'm okay with that, but you probably should look at what I do overall, so. With that, Supervisor Fennell?
Yeah, I, I would like to move that we move forward with the formation of Humboldt County Climate Advisory Committee, and task staff to come back with recommendations on how to do that.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Supervisor Madron?
Yeah, I'm fully supportive of the motion, and I really appreciate, again, you bringing this forward and the supporters of this, and, you know, the old adage of you can get a horse to a trough a lot easier than a carrot than you can with a whip, really applies. I think there's a tremendous opportunity to incentivize all kinds of behaviors, and two of them are, you know, right now, for carbon sequestration, if you're a forest landowner, if you don't have 10,000 acres or more, the program doesn't work for you. And I really want to see it down to the point where if you've got just one acre of trees, you can incentivize that carbon sequestration and have a process for being able to do that. The other one, which is something Supervisor Wilson has brought up before, is that free bus rides, you know, what is it, a million and a half or something like that?
Million and two.
1.2 million would get us to the point where we could literally provide free bus service to the entire county. And when you think about what that might do in terms of transportation, it's huge. So, just a couple of pieces that I'm hoping might come out of all this down the road. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
And, and with that, I think we've done free bus service, we did a three, we're doing a three-month pilot right now with free bus service to see and what the reaction...
I think that's Arcata.
Yeah. But, but just see what the increased ridership is, because sometimes people just, it's tough to get them on the bus, and we do that with Jack's passes, we do it with CR, we do it with, so, we've helped out Southern Humboldt on this, so, and Supervisor Fennell served on transfer, I've been on the committee for seven years now, but she has also served on it, so...
Yeah, I, I definitely, bus service, and I'm very happy that it is actually working out well in the Southern Humboldt area. I want to remind people too, how far along electric vehicles are. I've always thought that, you know, we're living in this hilly terrain, so that doesn't work. I just was talking with somebody at the Whitethorne Annual Barbecue this weekend who owns Tesla, lucky guy, I wouldn't mind to be that guy myself, and he's, he's able to go all the way up to Crescent City and back. I mean, it, the, the technology is really advancing, and whether the auto industry likes it or not, and I think they're, they've woken up completely, that is the future, and so one of the other things we're going to be doing is charging stations throughout the county. So, that not only will have vehicles that last longer, because the batteries are simpler, but it'll also obviously have no greenhouse gases. So, anyway, just want to say, there are some old solutions, but there are some new solutions that sometimes are hard for people to understand. I think our future is actually pretty bright if we just work on it.
All I can say is, when I see a charging station with 10 hookups and Leightonville electric vehicles, they're moving along pretty good.
That's right.
When I see the county have 10 charging stations for our employees, then I'll think we're moving along.
That's part of it.
We'll start with one to see if they use it. There we go. It's been moved and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none. There you go. Thank you. Dave and Jane, thank you guys again very much. Thanks for the jam. There you go.
Must have been good jam.
She's good, she brought me the jam after we put it on there, so. All right, with that, we'll go to Public Works, and we're going to talk about the notice of intention to purchase real property at 1017, 4th Street, 1023, 1025, 1031, 1035, 1039, 4th Street. Thank you.
He's just taking a quick bathroom break. Going with Virginia.
Can we take a, excuse me?
Open the public.
I'm going to open, I'm going to open the public hearing with, by taking a five-minute break, because I see both my bookends have left to, you know what.
Okay, five-minute break, I'll go too.
And the rest will go now.
So, Tom, me and Deputy Director of Management of Public Works, table by Tom, the senior representative. So, I've got a, probably about a 10 to 15-inch supply, so I'm trying to keep it pretty short, but it's a little bit of a topic, and the courses associated to the public property position, which is a lot, which is a great hearing room.
So, I'm just going to jump right in. This is an outline of the presentation overall. I'm going to start with a quick property overview, then we're going to look at a little bit of the history of action on this item in the past, then we're going to talk about the process moving forward, what would be the next steps to complete the purchase, then we're going to look at the development options, of which there are five to look at, and then finally, I'm going to touch on the facility master plan summary before public input. So, starting with the property overview, this is an aerial view, of course. You can see 4th Street, the 1,000 block and bounded by K and L Streets. So, on the left side of that view, bound by a green dash line, which is a little bit hard to see, that's the existing Public Defender Building with the white roof, and then three properties to the right of that, bounded by a yellow dashed line, those are the properties that we're considering for purchase. So, this is a street-level view of those three parcels. You can see these are one-to-two-story wood structures, these are primarily residential structures. At this point in time, that yellow building at the far right is currently in use as a restaurant. So, there's a little bit more specific information on those parcels. Again, yellow box highlights parcel numbers two, three, and four on this table. This is actually taken from our SEQA document, our initial study prepared by Laco. So, you can see here, we have assessed parcel numbers, parcel addresses, existing uses, approximate lot size for each parcel, as well as approximate building size on the lot. So, let's talk about history, I'll just kind of go through these one by one at this point. So, back in January of 2016, the board approved a finance package for the development of campus facilities concept, and then just about a year later, at the end of 2016, the board authorized negotiation of purchase of the subject properties that we're looking at today. Early 2017, the property owner creates a listing agreement for purchase at a price of $900,000. Then, June of 2017, the county obtained appraisals that value the property slightly higher at August of 2017, the county submits an offer to purchase at the price of $900,000, contingent upon staff returning to the board with SEQA report for approval. And then more recent history here, just about a month ago, the board approved the notice of intention to purchase real property with an updated price based on that updated appraisal value, with the details of the purchase process as negotiated between county staff and the owner's representative. And then, 8/27/19, that is today, we're here for our public hearing on this notice of intention to purchase real property. So, steps moving forward, these are the steps that we would need to go through to complete the purchase. Of course, we'll hear public input and board discussion on this today. Number two, we're going to continue our outreach and discussion with City of Eureka, receive the city's general plan conformance letter. This is a review that is a part of the process, we expect to get that by the end of next month. Number three, we're going to finalize our initial study, that's our, our SEQA document, our environmental report, and circulate that for a 30-day public review. Number four, we're going to return to the board for adoption of that SEQA report and finalize the authorization of purchase. And then finally, after all those steps are in place, we can close escrow, final payments, transfer of ownership, subject to the terms of the purchase agreement. And there is an additional step here that I didn't reflect on this slide, and that would be the public reveal of the facility master plan that we're currently working on. It's not really directly related to purchasing these properties, but it is something happening in parallel, which I think will inform the decision. So, now we'll get into the development options. I'll just say at the top that these sort of go from least cost and least amount of commitment to more as we go through the five different options, and then I'll also say, you can see a footnote there that these exhibits are conceptual and subject to change, that's very much the case, these are very preliminary, depending on, on which route we take, you know, to get to a constructible level, these will need to be developed substantially, so just keep that in mind. So, option one here is simply removing the existing buildings on the three subject parcels and constructing a small parking lot with landscaping on the surface. So, that would generate 35 new parking stalls, and there would be seven existing stalls remaining at the Public Defender Building. So, that's development option number one. Moving to number two, that would remove all the structures on the whole block, that includes the Public Defender Building, constructing surface, parking, and landscaping for the entire block, so that would yield 58 new parking stalls with seven stalls to be removed. That's number two. So, moving on to number three, this also removes the Public Defender Building in addition to the existing smaller structures and construction, new modular buildings, so three buildings are proposed there, they add up to just a little over 5,300 square feet, and that creates 38 new parking stalls, seven existing stalls again to be removed. Moving on to number four, this is a pretty poor exhibit to convey the design intent of this one, but this is definitely the biggest level of commitment and cost. This would be a roughly 110,000-square-foot administrative complex, that's five to six levels above grade, basically a mid-rise tower, and what you're seeing there in the exhibit would actually be a subterranean level of parking, so there's 55 stalls shown there. Very conceptual, very subject to change, I would say, more than any, but, yeah, a major, a major development project, for sure. And then finally, development option number five, this really is a phased approach. So, this combines two of the options that we've already looked at, number one being the smallest parking lot with the existing Public Defender Building, and that would be the near-term option. So, you can see there, a little bit of a graphic, there's over phase one, but the justification for that, and this is, incidentally, it's preferred option by staff as of, as of today. Justification for this phased approach, for the first phase, this offsets a parking loss that will happen when the Community Corrections Resource Center project breaks ground, and that's scheduled to break ground next summer, and that will impact the gravel lot that is adjacent to this building, used for parking by both public and staff, as I understand it. The cost estimate, preliminary cost estimate for that near-term phase one would be about $400,000 to $600,000. Now, phase two for this option would be something akin to development option number four, more of a major development, a major campus civic facility. Justification for that being that this utilizes a key for-sale property to support the facility master plan campus concept, and you can see that has a very high preliminary cost estimate, 60 to 80 million dollars. Again, it is really just conceptual in nature at this time, so it's, it's tough to put a real number to that, but just based on the square footage and the type of development, I think it's pretty reasonable as a, as a preliminary cost estimate. So, and that justification for phase two, the facility master plan, what is that? I know that, I don't think that this has been discussed at length before the board. So, my last slide here, just going to talk a little bit about where we're at with this. So, we've been working with our consultant, KPA, on the development of this facility master plan to establish our facility improvement goals over the next 10 to 30 years. Most of the detail and the direction in the facility master plan is focused on the next 10 years, but it, it does look a little bit further forward in addition. And then the primary objectives for this plan, number one, first and foremost, is to enhance county facilities for public use. There are myriad of ways that we can increase our level of service for the public, so that's number one. And then there are another, you know, pretty obvious but, but critical objectives to this, assessing our existing... assessing our existing facility conditions. I don't think it would be a surprise to anyone to know that our existing facilities are in generally poor condition. Reviewing and documenting deferred maintenance needs, identifying potential future project goals and locations, and that bullet point, that really ties back into 4th Street and what we would do in the future. If we go back to the, the future steps moving forward and bring the master plan to the public, to the board in the next two to three months, I think it will allow you to make a little bit more informed decision as we flesh out some of those options for 4th Street. And then continuing with objectives on the master plan, so establishing conceptual cost estimates on a per-project and an annual expenditure basis, that will allow us to forecast the costs contained in the plan. And so, just to wrap up there, the, the master plans and the final stages of review, that will go before the board in the coming months, I would put it at two to three months currently. And again, just to reiterate the options that shown on the previous slides, these are options only at this point, and they will be addressed further in the facility master plan and by future board actions. So, that does it for, for my presentation. Tom, did you have anything you wanted to add?
Well, the only thing I've gotta ask is, we're at this point, because if I remember right, and what I saw and I think, is we were requested by the City of Eureka when we went out to do our jail expansion, to find something else for parking, and I'm, I'm gonna throw out, I don't see Jim Wibbs' representative here, and I may be wrong, am I?
Well, I'd like to ask, or answer that question a little bit more, because your board directed the purchase of these properties in 2016 as a result of wanting to create campus facilities where, like, services would be co-located, so that was the direction. In addition, the City of Eureka, with their prior general plan, definitely expressed concern over the parking with the loss of the gravel lot, that parking will, will go away. I should add that public work staff has been communicating with the City of Eureka for their current general plan conformance, and then also, the City of Eureka has been involved in facilities master plan meetings, some of your board have been at some of those planning meetings, and so they have been involved. We have gone over some general ops, or some generalizations of what facilities master planning would look like in the City of Eureka. In addition, later this week, I'll be meeting with city council members to go over this specific project to help the city understand that with the loss of the gravel lot parking, that could potentially impact parking in the surrounding areas. In addition, I also wanna add that in January of 2018 and September of 2017, as we were working through the lot split on the gravel lot, the Judicial Council of California pointed out to us that they felt we were in violation of our joint occupancy agreement with the Superior Court, because in the joint occupancy agreement, we have to provide shared parking for the courts, and so they informally noticed us in September of 2017, and then formally noticed us in January of 2018 that, that the county would be in violation of shared parking.
Okay. All right, I thank you for that. And in 2016, and I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, we talked about, I don't think this stays a parking lot forever.
Again, your board in 2016 directed us to look at campus-like facilities, and so one of the things that Sean pointed out to you is that temporarily, it would likely stay a parking lot, and as we move through the facilities master plan, and your board provides direction on that, this, these 4th Street properties could very well turn into a development project and, and house a number of services, they could house an administrative complex, which was one of the original ideas, they could house one-stop permitting, which is also a direction that's been provided by your board to staff to, to co-locate all permitting services. So, there's a variety of things that we can do at this location, as well as other locations that the county owns property in the City of Eureka.
And I wanna thank, 'cause we have made efforts to, there's a parking lot next door to us, the state of California has, that you guys will notice it's very, very empty at all times, and we would love to release some of those properties, and we're going to keep working forward on that, I've been taking pictures of the lot in the middle of the day, so.
May, yeah, may I also add that when the, the state noticed us that we would likely be in violation of the joint occupancy agreement, we reached out to the state to see if we could lease parking spaces, and we were told no, and we, that was quite the process to try to get ahold of the appropriate people at the state, but I do know that Supervisor Bone continues to, to try to work on that for us.
Well, I said it, now everybody knows, so, tell your local state official.
They're very protective of that empty space, too, they'll chase you out.
Add, add me to the list of agitators for freeing that up, if you'd like, because I think that's, it's ridiculous. You can see from the aerial photographs that we have in our packets, or that we've seen in our, in our thing, that there is parking available on street parking, you know, lots of that as well. I mean, we don't have, I don't believe, a parking problem, per se, in, around this facility, but the main thing, though, this is not, this is about whether or not we're gonna be purchasing property for future development related to, and the term we're using today is campus, but basically whether we're gonna be consolidating and, or aggregating, you know, our services to a single location, and it's not just about facilities for better customer service, it's also facilities for employee retention, because, you know, a lot of our employees work in, in buildings that are less than standard, and the next, and if we're gonna have retention and recruitment, we need facilities that are, have some, you know, modern things like windows and stuff, and so, 'cause some places don't, and, 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 you know, heating controls that are, that are efficient and those sorts of things. So, that's, that's really the main thing, then the, and I, and I do wanna ask about this, this 65 parking spaces that is being sort of mandated or requested from the courts, have we had any more discussions since, since that letter came from them, and are, you know, are they, and it is supposed to be shared, so when, what, can we define what that means? I mean, can we just say that we're gonna share the lot that we already have across the street, across, on 5th Street? Would that be sharing? And we're not even getting near that 65 in any of these, except for the total, you know, most of these options are 35 spots, and so, are we still gonna be in trouble, like, with them, or are they gonna still give us a hard time?
So, there have been conversations with the Judicial Council since we've received the letter, and that was the county communicating to the Judicial Council that we were doing our best to explore additional parking options, such as leasing space from the state over in their EDD lot. Shared parking is defined in the joint occupancy agreement, and the specific number of spaces are listed in the joint occupancy agreement, so it may be difficult for the county to remain in compliance with the joint occupancy agreement if we remove 65 spaces. The Judicial Council has made it pretty clear through their communication to us that they expect us to provide the spaces in the gravel lot, as well as the spaces across on 5th Street.
State parking lot, state courts? Just a thought.
We, we have, we have desperately tried that avenue, and we will continue to try that avenue, because yes, I understand your board's frustration, there are empty spaces over there, that is not a county lot, that is a state lot.
And I, I somewhat concur that a lot of times, it doesn't seem like there, there's never a problem for you to park, 'cause you have to go in the basement, but if there is, there is, I hear it all the time, that it's hard to get here and everything else, and it's really not that hard this time of year, but we have, we have a lot of attorneys and a lot of personnel that have to come here, title companies and everything else, that come repeated trips every day, and they do have issues with it, and on a day like this, they, you know, I'm just taking a guess, it's nice outside again, it's okay. In January, it's totally unbearable, and you can see by the mop of water we have when they're all coming through here, so anything we can do, as, as much as, you know, you know, the employee retention, it's also, we provide services, and it's the services we provide, and how well we provide those services, so parking's a big part of it. So, I'm gonna go ahead and open this up to public comment.
I wanna thank Mike Wilson for calling me up at Susie Q yesterday, we discussed this topic and another one. This one, I think we agreed to agree on, the other one probably not to agree on, appreciate the call back. I strongly support you localizing your thing, I mean, this is common sense, the price seems right, I think the acquisitions. My problem is, is that I sat through all these strategic plan meetings back when we had them here, and then one out there at Cherry Heights, I think that was a strategic plan meetings, where just a few of us in the room, and we were talking about what we were gonna do, and one direction we kept giving to our CEO was, we'd like a list of the property we have that's not being used, so we could liquidate. Well, I strongly support that, I strongly support doing it now, so you sell those properties off, I have no angst, it's in the public interest to get rid of those, put them back on the tax roll, and then you have a fund set up. So, right now, we're not wondering where money is coming from, we don't have to worry about that, and so set up that fund to establish that, so there's no net change as far as your assets go, and yet you're liquidating some of these assets, and there's lots out in Blue Lake, I know you gave the one to the fire department, greatly appreciated out there, that's a great thing, but there's other lots pinpointed all over here, and I had to list ones, I think Rex knew quite a few of them had it, so those should be on the block to be sold, prices are really high right now, sell those off, make your acquisitions, and I think that's what's in the public's best interest. So, let's talk about public interest here as far as not having those assets on your books that we're not using, and I, I'm assuming that the Public Defenders has already been brought up to ADA compliance, or we wouldn't even be talking about leaving that there, so we do have a cost in that, and a little head shaking, so I assume we're good on that one. Otherwise, otherwise, if there's a big cost in it, then it doesn't pay to leave it there if it doesn't come up to ADA compliance, and then you might look at a little bit different project.
When you leave, look at the parking lot, there's three pieces of equipment digging it up right now, so it's in...
I wondered, I wondered why those pieces of equipment were digging it up right now.
It's in the process, thank you.
Okay, so that's all being brought up to specs, that was a concern and a reason why not to level the building itself, as long as it can be made compliant. Thank you for my opportunity to speak, and thank you for, for having something that I can agree with Mike Wilson on today.
You're ruining my reputation.
Hi, so my only problem with parking today was that it was two-hour parking, there was plenty of parking, but it was two-hour, and I knew that I'd be here longer than two hour, and, and then, it's funny, 'cause this whole parking lot thing goes completely, it's the opposite of the whole thing we did this morning, the climate stuff, so with these, if you do this parking lot thing, it seems like, it's really expensive, you should talk to my neighbors, they could probably do it for you cheaper, out in Glendale, but, so if you could have a permeable surface, and it's not blacktop, and some trees, then the wa, then it's not creating runoff, and I'm sure your engineer guys can figure all that out, but opt for permeable and plants, 'cause then it goes along with our global cooling that we wanna do, and the other thing, I guess it's being displaced, because the kids' jail's gonna go over there, and it, and you guys, well, it's not, it's not the, the kids', the juvenile hall that's being, the jail expansion? Oh, well, 'cause I wish we could go in a different, see, and you guys are, maybe aren't in charge of that, the judicial stuff, I don't know if you are or not, but it'd be nice if we can go in a different direction by a farm, and put people out there, and kinda help them figure stuff out and heal their, their ways through hard work and fresh food, maybe we can find a farm.
We, we have a farm, and it supplies about 40% of the food to the jail now, to the corrections.
And they get to go out there and work?
They do get to go out there and work.
Cool, well, if we need to expand our jails, maybe we can expand our farms, we could teach them cannabis.
There you go.
Alrighty, thanks. See ya.
Good morning again, Supervisors, Colin Fisk, Coalition for Responsible Transportation Priorities. The Lost Coast Outpost published an op-ed I wrote on this subject, and I hope you got a chance to read it, but the short version is, both Eureka and the county are supposed to be working to increase the availability of affordable housing, to support local businesses, and to reduce dependence on cars to help fight climate change. Eureka has taken some really strong steps in that direction lately, and the county is moving in that direction as well, I hope. And I think tearing down affordable housing downtown to put in what would be a pretty expensive, mostly parking lot, would kinda be a slap in the face to the city's efforts and counterproductive to the county's own efforts. And since the last item was about climate, I wanna point out again that the largest source of greenhouse gas emissions in Humboldt by far is transportation, driving, and the California Air Resources Board has studied this issue and has concluded that, I'll quote, "Per capita vehicle miles traveled reductions from land use and transportation projects are necessary to achieve the statewide greenhouse gas emission reduction goals." Furthermore, research by academics has conclusively demonstrated that building more parking results in more people driving, and so, in short, future development, like this one, needs to have less parking, require less driving, and support other modes of transportation, and I would just say, please don't let yourself be bullied by the Judicial Council or whoever's demanding parking, let's take a stand on this, and I think your, your staff have given you options for development of the site, and I would urge you to either go with the option that puts a useful building on that site, or ask your staff to come back with other options, and either way, if you're gonna take down affordable housing on this site, because there is affordable housing there now, I would ask you to make a commitment that it be replaced with more affordable housing units than were destroyed, and that the county assists existing residents of those units to find adequate new housing and not leave them on their own. Thank you.
Tom Wheeler, I'm not here on behalf of Epic, but as a Eureka City resident, Rex, we get to agree with each other twice in one day. I also take pictures of empty parking lots as a passion, as part of a parking reform advocate. So, I, I think that your approach, Rex, is honestly the right one, let's examine what other parking availability is, is here, near, near this building, and let's try to enter into agreements to purchase a right for individuals to park at those lots, that seems a far more sensible use of limited county resources. And on limited county resources, as Colin mentioned, parking is extremely expensive, so we're gonna spend $900,000 for a building, and that doesn't include parking costs. So, it was brought up that the estimates for 35 lot, or 35 parking space lot would be $400,000 to $600,000. I'm not terribly sure where that name came from, because a 2012 study that looked at the cost to produce parking across the United States found an average cost of $24,000 per parking space, so that's an average across the country. The lowest reported cost was $17,000 per space. So, at $17,000 per space, that's about $600,000, at $24,000 per space, that's $840,000. As Supervisor Madron brought up earlier in today's meeting, at $1.5 million, we could provide fully subsidized, zero-cost mass transit, that is a much saner mitigation measure for potential loss of parking than to build a big parking lot. I'd also like to raise the need to mitigate loss of market rate housing, as Colin said, there are 10 market rate houses, or housing units available on this lot, so to the degree that we need to mitigate loss of parking, we also need to mitigate the loss of affordable housing. The law, the lack of affordable housing is the number-one local driver of homelessness, and homelessness is particularly an issue in Eureka. This is, this kind of dominates local political conversation here, so anything that we do that would further push the loss of affordable housing is, is unworkable as a local city resident. So, again, I would like to say that Rex has the right perspective here, and let, let it be known that I'm saying that, that we should investigate the, take the photo.
Take the video.
Yeah, yeah, take a video, yeah, it's archived, so you can pull that back up, you can put on campaign posters in the future. What we should do is, we should look at where there is availability, and we should try to enter into contracts to purchase the right, to have county employees, have county visitors use those existing parking spaces. If you walk around, there is plenty of parking locally, we just need to have the legal right to use it. Thank you.
Hello, almost good afternoon, hopefully I'll make it till the, what I'm actually here to comment on the next item, but I, couple of thoughts, I typed in my phone, just going over this stuff, especially as the environmental aspect beforehand, but a couple questions I have, is the county going to ease? couple of questions I have. Is the county going to ease building restrictions to have a zero net loss plus 10% for the housing that's going to be lost? That's something I think about. If this was a big developer going in there, you would have to figure out how to have a zero net loss because the housing, all that kind of stuff. I don't follow the, the affordable housing as much as I probably should, but I know that's something to factor in. So this was during, with the toxic climate change, et cetera, I think relooking at the overpriced cost of underground parking should be something, the big, the big idea. Maybe managers could carpool or something like that? I don't know. Maybe a, a county parking lot with a shuttle service from somewhere else, you know, get rid of that underground parking. We got it here. So just something to think about. And as far as the actual, the idea of purchasing it for the future plan, I support that idea. Putting in a half a million dollar paved parking lot, I don't support. As a licensed contractor, I think if you're losing a gravel parking lot, to replace it with a gravel parking lot, if that's, if that's a temporary plan, you know, $50,000, $100,000, maybe a little bit more with demo, you could get that gravel parking lot over there across the street. But putting asphalt down to tear it up and redo it, that's just, it's not logical thinking. It's not smart thinking, and it's not a good use of half a million dollars of taxpayer dollars. So keep that in mind. Thank you.
And since I was here in 2016, there are a couple of comments I want to say. This property is for sale. So whoever else is going to buy it, the ROI on it, as the rental incomes you talk about are pretty slim because they're older, great-looking buildings, but they're older, not historical, but they're older. It's not going to stay a parking lot forever. And Thomas, permeable asphalt is what we have to use in most of our building now. As far as a gravel parking lot, I can give you about three agencies that won't let us have a gravel parking lot with stormwater runoff in downtown Eureka. So we are going to follow up with the state. And I, I suggest you guys take pictures of when you walk by and it's empty. Send them to Mr. Woods, send them to Mr. McGuire and say, hey, we could use this parking for your judges or for the courts. I mean, this is something we are trying to do. But, you know, as this moves forward, for the responsible transportation people, you're exactly right. There are a lot of avenues, and telling us that we need to do this so nobody will drive, you need to be down here telling these people, you don't need to drive. There is busing available. Mike and I work, we are on the Humboldt Transit. Some of our bus routes are 10% and 12%, 14%. They're not, we just added, we're adding a new route on Old Arcata Road for that reason. We just took another route away because people weren't using it. If you don't think we're trying, and you don't see those, but we're running buses Saturdays and Sundays. I could give you, we just put electric bus on with more to come. So there are things going that way. But as you guys, you know, as you try to do this, you can tell us, but you better get everybody else to want to use the things we bring forward. Because if we bring it forward and they don't use it, we can't be responsible for other people. We can just try to give them as, I think, I heard carrot whip in the same line earlier, but we can take them to the trough. They don't have to drink. So Supervisor Bess?
Thank you. Excuse me. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Years ago, I was on the facilities, whatever, group, ad hoc committee. And so I don't get to know all this stuff now. So this was actually a really good presentation and seeing what's been going on. Obviously, I think most of the heartburn has come regarding, well, whether it's the parking or the, the loss of the housing stock, you know. And now that's the part that bothers me the most, I think, because, you know, I'm not sure if we're going to get, if it's realistic to get rid of all parking that we're going to, you know, we're going to lose in that gravel lot. So I, and to not be, you know, don't let the, you know, state bully us. It's like with the judicial council. That's easy to say, but considering we have a lot of different things, we're, we're being, you know, gone beyond bullying, costing us a lot of money in other ways because we haven't necessarily done some of what we're supposed to do. It's, it's not an avenue I really like to consider. But I am curious, yeah, because the housing stock is a problem. I mean, the city of Eureka, if I recall, shoot, I think there's been 68 housing units that have been put out of use there between the Blue Heron, California Street, and on H Street. And obviously, they weren't really good units. We'll be very clear about that. And then the budget, which is not really counted as housing stock, but that was 44 places that people had to live to. You know, I have to realize it's not just the county that has to make some of these decisions. The city, you know, that was over 100, you know. So we are a part of, we don't really want to add to that. But I'm curious what the options are and how quickly we think we'd even move towards a parking lot. Because I would like to see us find a way to at least replace the housing stock. I feel responsible that, of trying to find ways to, to work around that in the future. And I don't know if there's, you know, maybe that's just part of the examine all the possibilities, you know, in the future. I don't know. I'm looking at the CIO and she's looking really confused.
Are you asking about, I think there were two questions there. One about housing stock and two about timeline. So I think if you want to hear the timeline...
That's exactly what I meant.
Okay. Then I would ask Sean to talk about timeline a little bit, and then I can talk about housing stock.
Yeah, and specifically the timeline for, if we're talking about the development option number five, which is a phased approach with the smaller parking lot happening first. The goal of that would be to bring that online as the SB 863 project would start construction. So it would offset immediately that parking loss. So that would be next summer. But we would really need to commit to that path immediately to put the wheels in motion to make that happen.
Okay. So as for housing stock, your board adopted a housing element the other week. And one of the things that was included in that was secondary dwellings. And so there are going to be opportunities for increased housing throughout the county. In addition, Health and Human Services has, you know, the potential to help increase housing stock through all of the state monies that are coming down for homeless. And so Director Beck is definitely exploring some of those options and, and how she can provide assistance to the community that way. In addition, Director Beck is also going to reach out to the folks that are in those Forestry Properties and see what level of assistance that Health and Human Services is able to provide.
And I know Director Beck has been very nimble on some other facilities she's been looking at with the team. It's amazing how slow the monies come forward. So it's hard to react when something comes up. But Supervisor Wilson?
So I did, those 11 units, is that how many units is there? How many units?
Twelve tenants.
Twelve. Twelve tenants, 11 units, housing units. One is a restaurant, I guess. No, I guess. I've been there. It's real. I did reach out to Betty Chin yesterday about this because I was in meeting with her and looking at some of her units down on the south side of Eureka there. She had mentioned that she was looking for transitional rental space for people for one-year leases so they could get rental history. It was pretty important to her, and they've been looking desperately for that. And so I want, I would like that in the mix of options. Although, I mean, I want to acknowledge the part about that that makes it extremely difficult, which is that we are on under ADA consent decree. And so these units are, you know, probably substandard. Not probably, I'm, well, I'm going to say probably because I've been in them, but I'm pretty sure they're substandard relative to that. And so I'm not clear if we can, you know, avoid that through, you know, through a secondary partner such as, as Betty Chin. But I would want to have that at least explored in this process to some degree. And that, that temporary nature of what she's in need of means that, you know, if and when there is larger, more development there, there's a, there's a timeframe at which there's some transition that could occur for folks to, to get out of there. Again, what we're being asked for today is really purchase of this property. There is ongoing discussions about what is going to really happen in terms of direction. Unless you're asking for us to give a specific direction today, or are you going to leave that to the subcommittee that's going to be looking at this?
Well, your board today is, part of the process is for your board to receive public comment, which is why this is a public hearing. This is going to come back before your board, where you're going to look at the environmental documents. And at that point in time, if your board so chooses, you can decline the purchase of these properties. Staff does not recommend that as, again, this is something that helps with that creation of the campus-like facilities. It does, in the short term, address the issues with the judicial council, which are significant issues. As you know, providing services to the state can be somewhat difficult. I can give you another example where we provide court security services to the courts, and there's a cost to the general fund, even though this is a service we provide to the state. So the relationship between the state and the county, specifically the courts in the county, isn't always a fair and equal partnership. And unfortunately, that's just the way it is. So I hope that answers your question.
And as part of that planning process, if we decide to move forward, you know, my advocacy will be if there are parking spots, the maximum amount of them to be electric vehicle parking spaces would be something I would be pushing for. And then also our, you know, taking care of, making sure that we have our handicap, or whatever we call the disabled. I don't even know what the word is right now, but whatever it is, that, those spots are part of that, you know, requirement and make sure that that's in there. So, but I, I am really going to be advocating strongly for finding our parking spots elsewhere if we can and making sure that we do what we can for housing. And I didn't, and I, and I did hear Colin mention, you know, the, in terms of our efforts, you know, to provide housing, it's, it's not, I know we did a housing plan, but that housing plan is for the county. And in general, in the county is the most inefficient when we're talking about providing housing that's connectivity, connected to where people work and the transportation. So that in, you know, from the, from a climate action perspective, that's for the most part the least effective. Whereas in town, right here, where we're about, where we're talking about, across the street, I mean, this is where, you know, where we're going to have the most bang for our buck from the perspective of climate as well. So I'll just be advocating for that very strongly in this process. And we do have this committee right now, and I would like to make sure that there's, I'd like to ask there's, we have more interaction on this. So with the, with the committee members, which are myself and Estelle, I believe, right now. I'm going to ask myself.
I mean, we get put on a lot of committees, I know, and we get stretched really thin. But, you know, any of those committees you want to show up to and report back, we're more than welcome to. I know as chair, I would more than accept any reports you do on that, on that committee. And so Supervisor Madron?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, I applaud the efforts of the county in terms of consolidating county services and in particular on county-owned property. I really appreciate this move that's happening with this facilities, master planning effort, other things. I know our leasing corporation is really part of what's allowed us to start doing these kinds of things for a number of reasons. So I applaud that. But I too have concerns about parking as well as low-income housing. You know, my, my preference would probably be to, you know, we're going to lose this gravel lot starting next summer. And I agree with your comment, Supervisor Bone, that in the winter, it's quite a ways out to get outside of two-hour restrictions. You've got to go about four or five blocks out to, to find those places. And so it, it does create a hardship. And, you know, this lot is filled by the time 8:30 in the morning comes with jurors and others that happen to get in early. So I think there's a problem, but I certainly don't want to continue to encourage our use of the single, one person per car approach to how we do business. So I guess my preference would be the combined approach to this other parcel where the four and five. But I would probably make the parking lot a gravel lot to save money. And I would surround the edges of that lot with grassy swales and landscaping, which would collect any stormwater runoff and infiltrate it so that we wouldn't have any problem with stormwater management. But we would save significant money. And I, I suggest that because I really support the combination of one and five, which ultimately would take that parcel and create a multi-storied structure for consolidated services, but with parking underneath. So rather than spend the money on paving, that just seemed like a big waste of money. So I would, I would combine those things, but stay with a gravel lot with grassy swales and landscaping. But I would also immediately like to encourage my colleagues to support free bus rides starting next year when this lot is going to be eliminated. Let's go ahead and do that. Let's try that for a while. That's an immediate mitigation measure that gives jurors and others options to get into town without the problem with that displaced parking. I also would not like to see any of that low-income housing eliminated until we have replaced it in some way. And so having just passed the housing element last week, we're lucky as a county in that in there, it incentivizes the county staff to be proactive in working to create affordable, low-income housing. And that's where surplus property actually comes in. There are many parcels that are underutilized, both state parcels here in Eureka as well as county around the, the community. So I would like to see us be very proactive on trying to come up with replacement housing before we demo that and replace it. And again, that ties back into the free bus rides as an interim measure to mitigate all of this and maybe even a wonderful long-term measure. So those, those are the things that I'm thinking about.
Okay. Supervisor Bess?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And it's interesting in the conversation on the gravel lot, things could have changed in the last eight years, nine years I've been over here. But I do know when I was at the city, in fact, I looked at that lot for like most of my time there. The city didn't really like the idea of the gravel lot either. And of course, that could be different now. I don't think, I haven't been involved in any conversations since then. But so I'd, while it makes sense on the one hand, I think there's also, you know, some things that have to be looked at. I think the free bus rides sounds great. I'm not ready to make that decision until I get an idea of the cost, right? Something else that came up that I thought was interesting, and I don't know if it's realistic, is off-site parking with shuttles that come in. You know, I mean, maybe there are some other options we haven't really, maybe haven't had the time to look at yet. But, so those are just the comments I wanted to make on that. I think, I think Supervisor Wilson's thought, you know, speaking to Betty Chin, and perhaps we can do that with others to find that housing so it can be used as long as possible is a good idea. But I think what the staff is asking us for, you know, now is just to decide to go ahead with the purchase, and then we'll make those other decisions down the line. But I think I'll be very interested to hear actually more regular reports back from, from the committee that exists because it's, this is a time where there's a lot of moving pieces, and it'd be great for us to be, be able to be a little more in the know when we're not on the committee. So.
And if I read this right, this is what we're voting on today to move forward to see if this is environmentally even plausible with asbestos, lead paint, everything, if we can move forward on the process. And then it's going to come back to us. Is that, am I reading that right?
Well, the, the process, the next step, I mean, is the, the city's general plan conformance review letter, which I think will play potentially a part in what we show in the master plan. But the master plan, I think, really is the, is the key next step for, for your board to review because we will be able to develop, I think, our options for this based on some of this feedback and based on the city's conformance letter. So that's, you know, two to three months out before we can come back.
I, I also feel the need to make your board aware that on July 30th, you entered into a purchase agreement with the owners of the property. And one of those agreements was that their current property manager would submit 60-day eviction notices to those tenants and that the properties would be free and clear at the close of escrow, and escrow would be extended if the properties still had tenants. So were, some of your direction is conflicting with previous board direction.
I think Supervisor Wilson, no, Betty's already working with a couple of them. I think she probably mentioned to you. So I think what's coming here, and as far as the gravel parking lot, I'm, it... the gravel parking lot, I'm, it doesn't matter, we can do permeable asphalt and everything else, but if it's going to be a gravel parking lot, it can only be for a short term. I, I don't know if you guys realize, the maintenance costs of trying to keep this one, without being somewhat accessible for the people, and the problem is, that's also a court, trap parking lot used by the jail at night, and some of those holes, before we graded it the last time, were eight inches deep, so, they're ankle grabbers. So, I mean, gravel sounds really wonderful, but it's, it's high maintenance. So that's the only thing I'd worry about. I'm not wanting to asphalt the world, though. So, with that...
Anybody want to jump on a motion here?
So, I guess what I get from this is that, the best thing is for us to go forward with the purchase, or the, the process of the purchase, and in the meantime, address some of the issues that came up as part of this public hearing, in terms of following through with the suggestion of, you know, known as loss plus 10%. We did pass the new housing element, but we're dealing with city property. There are a lot of here and there about it. We've discussed parking. I know that, once they get working on that gravel lot out there, not only are we gonna not have that parking, but we're gonna have a whole bunch of people there, and machines and everything, quite a bit of disruption, as part of this move forward to create a consolidated campus. So with that move forward, there's gonna be a little pain in the meantime. So, I think the, the bottom line, for me anyhow, is to just give the, the department to go ahead to move forward with the purchase, and that would be my motion, is to make, to give the department ahead the direction to move forward with the purchase, and to come back with reports, addressing some of the concerns brought forward in the hearing.
Let's see, Honison.
So, you're, you're already in the process to purchase this property? And so this is one of the steps in the purchase process, and still, staff automatically will be returning with the environmental documents for your board to review, and it's at that point in time, you can either direct the purchase, or undirect the purchase of these properties. And so, the, I think the direction that would be helpful today, is you would like to see staff explore alternative parking options, to address the judicial council's concerns, and that you would also like to see us address the loss of the low-income housing. And so, I believe that staff can address those, when we bring back the environmental documents.
Yeah, I mean, that's exactly what...
That's exactly what you said.
No, 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 not so concisely, but, you know, in general, by saying these issues, they've been brought forward, plus moving forward with the purchase.
I'll second that.
Ryan, read it back real quick, and then, that way, we're not, can, I'm sorry.
So they're directing staff to look at alternate parking options, to address the judicial council's concerns, and address the loss of the low-income housing, directing staff to do that.
I love this kid.
It's been moved and seconded.
I have a question. When you talk about the parking part, so I have a frog in my throat. Excuse me. So, all right, can, can we add, or assume that we're also gonna be talking about transportation? When you're talking about parking, you're not talking about just a specific number of parking spots, but actually, the service of getting people access to the courts, and to this, and to our facilities here? Is that, and is that an understanding, that, so, when we're talking about, it's not just single-use vehicles, it's also alternative transportation options, in terms of that analysis?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
And I think, and I think, Mike, you were at the meeting, we've talked about giving passes to employees. I know we've talked to, to county employees, if they'd use the bus and stuff like that, maybe that's the conversation we need to keep going forward, as an added incentive, retention, and everything else. And like it says, if you ride the bus, you can save over $2,000 a year. All right, it's been moved and seconded.
I have one.
Whoa, sorry.
You have to close the public hearing.
What's that?
Close the public hearing.
Oh, before the vote?
Yes.
Okay.
Just a clarifying question, if I may, Mr. Chair.
Please.
The December 31st, close of escrow, theoretically, that, we've already entered that, that's the date that's already in the system?
Yes.
Okay. Because I see that if we don't meet that date, then we have another 50 grand, although those things go towards the ultimate purchase price, if we follow through.
That...
The deposits.
That is in addition to the purchase price, and the, an additional 45,000 happens if the county has to extend escrow.
Right, and so, SEQA is a complicated process. Are we really gonna be able to pull this off, in terms of the letter from Eureka, and the SEQA report and review? We must be already moving along on that, I suspect.
We are moving the ball, but, to your point, yeah, the, the process with the city is not complete, so that needs to be completed, before we can really get comfortable with the, where we are.
So all hands on deck, to get this done timely, so we don't spend another 45 grand?
Got four months. Good job.
Thanks.
I will close the public hearing. It's been moved and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? None opposed? Thank you. Okay, now we are going to move on to our Planning and Building Department. I'm not gonna take a break, we're going through. These people have been waiting too long. I mean...
Do we need to take a break, so anybody can move their cars? No, I'm sorry. Yeah.
Good afternoon. Director Ford. Members of the Board of Supervisors, John Ford with Planning and Building Department, and joining me is Michael Richardson and John Miller. We also have Joel Ellandwood, with County Council's Office. This item is a consideration of the zoning text amendments, continued from the board meeting of July 9th, 2019. It is part of the ongoing general plan implementation, in terms of developing the zoning text amendments to accomplish that. At the meeting of July 9th, ordinance was presented to the board, based upon board direction from June 18th, to take the Planning Commission recommendation, add timberland exclusive as a zoning district, address a reduction in parking associated with mixed-use urban, and to provide several other alternatives, to address some of the comments that were raised at the June 18th meeting. At the July 9th meeting, there was a great amount of public concern expressed about those alternatives, and there was significant discussion with whether or not, what was being proposed actually implemented the general plan, and was consistent with the general plan. A motion was formulated by the board, to adopt the Planning Commission recommendation, with the addition of the timberland exclusive zone, and the parking reductions for the proposed mixed-use urban zone. That motion was not voted upon, the item was continued, to allow staff to prepare a final ordinance, and to address the concerns and questions that were raised during the hearing. So what we are bringing before you this afternoon, is an ordinance that addresses that motion that was made, but never acted upon. That reflects the Planning Commission recommendation, with the addition of the timberland exclusive zone, and also a reduction in the mixed-use urban parking requirements. The other alternative items are being addressed separately, and are not part of that ordinance. We have also modified the findings, within the resolution, to address the appropriate use of the environmental impact report that was prepared for the general plan amendment in 2017, and to also identify the consistency between the zoning text amendments, and the general plan policies that are being implemented. One of the questions that was raised, is what is consistency between the general plan and zoning text amendments, and as identified in the staff report, there is a great amount of latitude, that is available to the board, to adopt zoning and implementing the general plan. The, the fundamental concern would be, that it does not inhibit the implementation of the general plan. So, we believe that we have presented to you the ordinance that was previously discussed. We believe that we have created the logic connections between the general plan policies that are calling for these amendments, and the amendments themselves. We believe we've addressed the SEQA findings, and what we would really like to do, to, this morning or afternoon, is spend some time and walk through each of the general plan policies being implemented, in relationship to the zoning text amendments that are proposed. So with your indulgence, we're gonna be very specific, and, and walk through these. We've got a presentation to show that each and every single one of the zoning ordinance amendments that are proposed, have their basis, or are direct cut-and-paste elements of the general plan, that are just being incorporated into the zoning ordinance.
Um, that'll be fine, the only, well, wait till we get, I'm just wondering, what has changed in the TE zone, that the Planning Commission did not approve, that you've put in here now? I mean, what, what element that wasn't approved, and it was not even in our package in June 14th, and now, we've got it, Planning Commission didn't voted against it. Has the wording changed, that what the TE zone's gonna be, from what the, before we...
Sure. So they, the Planning Commission expressed some concerns, and as near as we can tell, it was twofold. They never actually voted to give a recommendation to the board, why they didn't want it included, but the conversation seemed to center around two things. Some of the commissioners thought that it would actually encourage development in timberland, because of the 20-acre parcel size. Other commissioners thought that it may be encouraging conversion of timberland to TPZ zones. And so, there were a variety of different concerns expressed by the commission, there was no single one issue that, that resulted in it not being approved, but they did not recommend approval of the TE zone. On June 18th, when we brought that forward, we brought the recommendation of the Planning Commission forward to the board, without the TE zone contained within it. It was at that June 18th meeting, that it was raised as an issue, that people would like to see that revisited. And so, part of the concern was that the TE zone, as envisioned, included a 20-acre minimum parcel size. And so that was part of the concern, that may be encouraging development within the timberlands. So one of the things that was done, is in order to make the TE consistent with the AE, was that it was given a 60-acre minimum parcel size, in order to minimize the parcel, parcelization, fragmentation of timberland.
What we have, is a PowerPoint presentation, that tracks the detailed analysis of the general plan policies, and the proposed amendments to the zones, and the proposed new zones, demonstrating consistency between the, the, the proposed zoning amendments, and the general plan. And we start with the agricultural exclusive zone, and the, the proposed new uses, both the principally permitted and conditionally permitted uses, are directly taken from Table 4G, which is in land use element, and Table 4G is, lists the allowable uses in the resource land use designations, including the agricultural exclusive land use designation. There's one proposed deletion, and that is, the deletion of the phrase, "used as farm dwellings in relation to manufactured homes." But the, all of the uses that are proposed to be added, are contained in Table 4G. The next is, relates to subdivision, and in agricultural exclusive zone, there's, there's a, a standard that says no subdivision, and it, it specifies that there's no subdivision allowed for, for residential purposes. What we're proposing to do, is to clarify that, indicating how, how subdivisions can be approved. And the general plan is clear, in standard AGS-1, subdivision of planned agricultural exclusive lands, that subdivision can occur, it can't create parcels less than 60 acres. So we're, we're clarifying that, and we're recommending additional phrases, to say that subdivision can be approved, for the man, for resource management purposes, not for residential purposes. The next relates to no net loss of agricultural lands, and there's, there's a, a detailed policy, AGP-6, which is agricultural land conservation hyphen no net loss. And what this policy does, is it sets up findings, that the Planning Commission can, would need to make, to approve the conversion of agriculture, of, of land planned for agricultural purposes, to something other than, than agriculture. And what we've done, is add a new section, in the agricultural exclusive zone, with, has the same title, agricultural land conversion, and includes the same findings. So it's one, one-for-one across the board.
John, are we gonna do that on agricultural lands, that are converted to public lands, when various state and federal agencies are taking over properties, and are using them, quote-unquote, not, they're not in agricultural use, they say they are, but they're not? I can think of three or four prime parcels, that are in that process right now. Are we gonna hold the other, our partner government agencies, up to that same threshold, as we do our residents?
I don't, I don't think that the federal agencies or state agencies are subject to our zoning regulations, to the extent we, we're referring to purchase, we would, we would recommend that the county comment, consistent with the general plan, which would be to maintain agricultural land in agricultural use. Then, the next section is, it's a, a recommended new section, which relates to a, a new policy, or a general plan policy, AGP-16, protect productive agricultural soils. And so we're adding, we're adding a new section, which is conversion of prime agricultural land, and specifying that development of AE land shall be designed to the maximum extent feasible, to minimize the placement of buildings and permeable surfaces on prime agricultural lands. And within this, we're recommending an exception, which is consistent with Note 4, in Table 4G, the resource land use designation. So Note 4 says that, and I may not have it here, but it's basically saying that primary and single-family residences, primary, single-family residents and second residences can, can be developed with the same building envelope, containing the existing prime, primary residence. This may be within, on prime agricultural soils, the general plan sets up the approval of a second residence within prime, on prime agricultural soils, in this instance. So we're recommending this exception. The next relates to minimum parcel size, and the, the agricultural exclusive zone now specifies that the minimum parcel is 20, parcel size is 20 acres. That is inconsistent with the general plan now, so we couldn't approve a subdivision to 20-acre parcel size. 60 acres is the minimum parcel size, per Standard 1, in the...
Even on your glassy egg, that's in there?
The general plan would not allow the subdivision of land planned agricultural exclusive, to anything other than 60 acres, except for the preservation of, of historic structures. exclusive to anything other than 60 acres, except for the preservation of historic structures. The Table 4G, which sets forth, sets forth the uses and it also identifies a minimum parcel size, which is 60 acres.
So, okay. So, glassy eggs are, okay, go ahead, supervisor.
Thank you. It's similar, but different. So, I'm hearing you say that the former general plan was 20. What we have now, what we adopted in 2017, moved it to 60. But there seems to be a belief that somehow that really didn't happen during the general plan, or there's questions on how did it get to all of a sudden be 60? And so, I, it's like, I see it in the general plan, but was there, what was the, do you remember the discussion at that time? And I mean, that's asking, I just, I'm trying to, you know, we all get these letters and I'm trying to go item by item by item, just to try and to get clarification.
I, I know there was discussion. I honestly can't remember it. I know that there was a lot of input. I think that there, that resource lands, interest groups were supporting larger parcel sizes. There was acknowledgement that small parcel sizes can support different types of crops. But this was something that was adopted as a standard and is contained in Table 4G.
So, it was not arbitrarily crossed out? I mean, it seems like there is a, I just wanna make sure, 'cause there's a lot of discussions. I can't tell you, I remember every single one of them. Like PTSD.
It's actually identified twice in the general plan. It's in Table 4G, but it's also in AGS-1, the standard that John referenced.
I think what she's asking for is maybe if we can find out where it was acted on, so we can dispel that it was just put in there. That's, I think, 'cause it's, it's gotta be memorialized somewhere. Am I right? Is that what you're?
Well, but that, yes, but it is memorialized in that. I mean, if every piece of conversation that went into the decisions was, you know, listed here today, it would be a massive, unable to comprehend. So, I just wanted to, I think there's concerns over past actions of maybe past times where there was that feeling. So, I, I believe it's in the general plan. I've seen it and I read it. I just was trying to help give someone, other people a reference, so that they-
We memorialized it when we approved the general plan and the SEQA document that went with it. If we start picking it apart in this, at this level, I don't know what policy we can-
Director Ford?
So, at the risk of creating a reason for a continuance, we can go back through the records and identify when the consensus vote was taken to include that in the general plan. We didn't think that that was necessary for this meeting today.
Neither did I, but-
Yeah, well, I don't think it is either. I was just wanting to see if there was a simple, you know, 'cause I've been asked it more than one time and I keep thinking, no, it's in there. I see it, I believe it.
Mr. Chair?
Just wanted to bring it up, that there's concern from some-
Supervisor John?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Having attended a lot of those meetings, my memory was that there was a lot of concern that the existing AE zoning does not allow any subdivision. And so, like all land use planning, there are compromises that are made. And so, the compromise in this case was made that, well, we'll go ahead and let subdivisions happen, but let's keep it at 60 acre minimum to protect ag lands. I mean, which is a stalwart of our community, ag production. And so, that's my memory of why this happened. And, I mean, if the 60 acre is not good, let's just go ahead and stay with the existing zoning, no subdivision. But I don't think that's what people wanted. You know, really, it was a compromise to allow those with 120 acre parcel or larger to be able to subdivide them, as long as there was gonna be a maintenance of agricultural activities on the property. So, I thought it was a pretty good compromise and it did get passed. It has been memorialized. So, now what we're doing is trying to implement.
Okay. And that, that's fine with me. I just was asked and I could not, you know, give a specific date.
Yeah.
But I think you're pretty accurate in your conversation.
Okay.
There, there is an exception to minimum parcel size and it relates to the preservation of historic structures. There's another agricultural resources standard, AGS-5, historic, historical preservation, which sets forth some findings that are required to allow subdivisions or otherwise to create lots less than 60 acres. Another change is the, the maximum ground coverage. I think that it's currently 35%. I could be wrong. But the, it, it is recommended to be changed to match the note in Table 4G relating to the two acre building envelope for the primary and secondary residence. So, that's, that's the source of two acres. Next is changes to the timber production zone. And like the AE zone, new uses are recommended to be added based on the uses enumerated in Table 4G. Same, same table relating to agriculture grazing, agriculture exclusive and timber, and timberland land use designations. So, we're copying and pasting those uses into the principally permitted, actually, the, the compatible uses and the conditionally permitted uses. Next, the next change relates to residential density. And the general plan update changed the density, which is the maximum dwelling units per acre of timberland from one dwelling unit to 20 acres to one dwelling unit to 40 acres. And so, we're making, that's in Table 4G. And we're making that change in the, in the development standards of the TPZ zone. We're also changing the language relating to secondary residential, residential units on parcels less than 40 acres. And we're specifying that that should be within community planning areas, which is consistent with policy FRP-8, secondary residential construction on TPZ zoned lands. So, the, there, it's, the changes to TPZ are limited to uses density and to basically uses and density. The next change is, relates to the B1 special building site combining zone. And this is one that there's not, there's not a direct line between a general plan item and the, and this proposed change. This is one of clarity. And guiding principle nine, which is to provide a clear statement of land use values and policies, to provide clarity in the county's permit processing, processing system and simplify the review of projects. This is, what we're proposing to do is change the B1 special building site combining zone, which is an 8,000 acre square foot minimum, to 6,000 square foot minimum parcel size. We have hundreds, possibly over 1,000 parcels that have, that if the property owner were to look at the information about their parcel in our online GIS, they'd see R1 asterisk as the zoning. And what the asterisk does is it tells the planners to look at the official map for the Eureka Community Plan, to see that the zoning specifies that minimum parcel size is 6,000 square feet. This is something that property owners, realtors, other interested members of the community can't find with the information that's available on our webpage within the zoning regulations. So, if we were to substitute the B1, B1 for the asterisk, they'd have a pathway to figure out what the minimum parcel size is. And so, we're doing this for clarity purposes. The next changes relate to the proposed timberland exclusive zone. And the, the, this zone implements the timberland general plan land use designation. And it, it does it through a couple of goals that relate to the supply of productive forest lands and minimizing incompatible and conflicting uses within timberlands. So, we're proposing to add this zone to support those goals. There, the TE zone is not called out specifically in the general plan, but as you'll see as we go through the, the aspects of the zone, each of the aspects is consistent with the general plan. So, the, the, there's a standard in the conservation open space element, which is the identif, this is essentially the open space action program, which is required by law. The, the open space action program identifies the timberland land use designation as an important open space land use designation. It also identifies a series of zones that implement the, the open space action-
John, I'm sorry. Which part is, is required by law? That one gotten?
The, the open space action plan.
On TPZ or just overall?
As part of the, as part of the county's general plan. And what the open space action program does, the, the state law identifies a number of types of open space lands, includes, including open space lands for resource production like ag land and timberland. And so, the, the county is obligated to develop an open space action program, action plan to protect these open space lands. And part of our open space action program is to enumerate the components of the general plan that further the open space plan and the, the aspects of our zoning regulations that implement the open space action plan. And so, timberland is an open space land use designation. And the zones that would be available to, that are available to be applied, that are open space zones are TPZ and AE. TPZ is an, an owner initiated zone, so the county can't apply TPZ to somebody's land without the owner saying, "I wanna be TPZ." So, the only other zone that we have available is the agricultural exclusive zone. And the agricultural exclusive zone, the primary incompatible use is agricultural production. And timber, timber production is, is something that is being added to clarify that timber production is a primary, is a, is a principally permitted use. Currently, timber production is buried in the definition of general agriculture. So, it, within the zone, we're, we're elevating timber production to say that that is a, that's a principally permitted use. But there's a bunch of other agricultural exclusive uses that are, that are clearly appropriate on ag lands that may not be appropriate on timberlands. So, staff is recommending this zone as another available zone to be applied to timberlands to protect them and to assure the supply of productive forest lands. The principally and conditionally permitted uses that we're recommending within the TE zone are from Table 4G. They're also very similar to ones that are found in the, in the TPZ zone. The development standards, the development standards in the TPZ zone are a long narrative list. And the agricultural exclusive zone development standards appear to be a good fit. So, what we're recommending is that the development standards from the AE zone be applied to the TPZ, to the, the proposed TE zone.
Supervisor Phil?
So, something, some of the issues that have come up regarding the TE is what rights would be lost? In, in other words, what, what would, by changing the minimum lot size and also by restricting uses, what rights would be lost? Could you address that?
So, in, in terms of loss of, of rights, really what we're talking about here is a comparison between AE and TE. Because as John clearly identified, TPZ is owner initiated. So, we're not gonna go out and propose rezoning to TPZ. So, that, for sake of simplicity, gets removed from this discussion. So, really, we're comparing the AE to the TE. They both have similar parcel sizes. They both have the same parcel size as currently construed, 60 acre minimum parcel size. The, probably the, the biggest change would be that AE would allow cannabis cultivation, whereas currently, as it's configured, TE would not. It should be pointed out that in the cannabis, commercial cannabis land use ordinance, that conversion of timberland for purposes of cannabis cultivation is not allowed anyway. So, whether or not that's a loss or not, I, it'd be very difficult to say, because you, you can't remove timberland to plant cannabis. So, it really comes down to a matter of whether or not there are pieces of property that have a mixture of, say, agricultural uses and timber uses. And I think that's where the process of applying these zones to the map, when we get to that point, we're not at that point yet, will be really critical. Because we'll wanna look at what's the most appropriate zone to be applied in these situations. We're talking about, in this case, lands that have an underlying general plan land use designation of timberland and a zoning designation of unclassified. And, and so, the likely zones that they could go to would be AE or TE. And one of the things we wanted to talk about a little bit later in the presentation, but I'll just say it now, is that as part of that future process, you know, we certainly can notify property owners and have those dialogues with them before we bring anything forward for hearing, in the event the TE zone is, is adopted.
Supervisor Bass?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And that's exactly the question I was going to ask is, since this is, this is creating this use, but the mapping is down the road. And so, we are, you are confirming that we would reach out to all property owners that could potentially be affected? So, I just wanted to make sure I'm hearing that.
I'm speaking at this point specifically to the 312-
Right.
-properties that-
That we're identifying.
-land use designation of timberland and the zoning, current zoning designation of unclassified. There are many, many other pieces of property that would be affected by different zoning proposals.
But there is due process, so they will, they'll know to come in and speak if they're affected. Okay, thank you.
Supervisor Wilson?
I think the Director Ford kinda got to my point where, I mean, initially, we're talking about the unclassified timber designations, which is about 4,000 acres, which is a pretty small chunk of land in Humboldt County in the current context. But in the bigger context, this allows another option for landowners. It's not just, it's not just good planning to have those options, but it's also another option for landowners to, that have timberlands to, to avail of that, of that zoning. More options.
Agreed. That 4,000 acres doesn't seem like a lot unless some of them are your acres. Supervisor John?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, rights are important and I definitely support those. One of the other issues that comes up a lot when you have something like TE or TPZ, in particular TPZ or even ag land in the Williamson Act, is it reduces property taxes, which can reduce revenue to the county. But the reason that was developed was because the benefits to the county and to the state of California are far greater by encouraging the permanent protection of this forest land and being productive. Forest land for jobs, for fish and wildlife, for water, and all those other benefits. And so, while it reduces some property taxes, it provides a much greater amount of benefit to the county and the state to have these incentivized programs. So, that's why they were created. I fully support those. And clearly, a landowner that might be looking at TE also will have the option to move into TPZ if they choose to do so and get that tax benefit. So, it doesn't really put them in a corner, it gives them options. So, I like that.
So, it's only applied to lands that are growing trees?
That's the intent?
Yep.
Okay.
If I could add to that, the- If I could add to that, the, the, the areas, the 4,000 acres that we're discussing are lands that are planned timberlands. And looking at the, at the, um, land cover data available from CalFiR, almost all of those lands are, are timberlands. They're, they're lands that are capable of growing commercial timber. Also, they're, they're zoned unclassified, which means they're, that they're not precisely zoned. And the, the unclassified zone allows for, um, single family residences and general agriculture to be principally permitted. Everything else is conditionally permitted. So the, to, to zone the lands, timberland exclusive, which, where general agriculture is principally permitted, single family residences are principally permitted, there wouldn't be any change with the, with the unclassified zone. If you want to subdivide, the, the analysis is based on the land use designation. So it's, there's really not a change for people whose lands are zoned unclassified now.
And I'll come up with the same question that keeps going, pounding in the back of my head. If this is so perfect, why didn't the Planning Commission vote to bring this forward to us? What was the discuss, I mean, there had to be, we all have members on there and, and it sounded, I don't know what the vote was, but the vote was, wasn't it unanimous? Or was it unanimous not to bring it forward? And then we find it back here, back here. And I, and my concern and, and, and some others is how did, how did this get back in when they voted not to bring it forward? Do you want, can I get an answer, Supervisor Bass?
I don't have an answer, but I do have, what I just wanted, you asked, you didn't know what we heard. And I would just say, one of the planning commissioners I spoke to, it was not necessarily my quote, "planning commissioner," basically said when it came, he felt it really was not presented well, nothing against staff, but that really wasn't an understanding, quite frankly, is what I've heard. And yeah, it seems odd that it came back after it didn't come from them. But our task is, we asked them their opinion, it comes back, sometimes it's not the same. And, and so, so I think, I understand, um, a little more about that, that's how it came back. You know, I would have had a better comfort level, though, to have known more of what that conversation was like and if it was as, because I only talked to one, um, one person. But I just, I just wanted to point out that, um, sometimes they're, just like us, that they hear something one time and it's in front of them. And if they, if it doesn't come through correctly, you know, sometimes you just don't know really what to do with it, so.
And I appreciate that clarification, knowing, but it was a question, and I appreciate the clarification. Supervisor Wilson?
I talked to three of the planning commissioners who said that if it had been 60 acres that had been proposed, uh, they would have, and I've, those are the only ones I talked to, so I don't know what the, that they would have definitely pushed for approval of that and that, but they didn't really have an option, they felt like in the conversation to modify. And it was in the mix, just like with us, it was in the mix with a lot of other things. And it just kind of got, this, this wasn't an adequate conversation about that. And we had at least one of those commissioners come to one of our meetings here and express that same, uh, opinion, um, at the first meeting of this hearing process.
So through the chair, what was proposed if 50, 60 acres wasn't?
It was 20 acres, which they thought was not protective enough. So the, what the, they were hearing was that it was 20 acres. They said, "Well, that just seems like it's going to, um, uh, create more fragmentation and sprawl within timberlands, and it was not, uh, protective enough of timber values." So that was, that's, uh, that's my understanding.
So, so then this is a change from what was considered at the planning commission?
Yeah, this is, so what's, we're considering is 60 acres as opposed to the 20, which is what those commissioners were not in agreement with. But I, you know.
Director Ford?
I, I just wanted to provide a point of clarification. And I think I said 20 earlier also, um, but Mr. Miller corrected me and indicated that it was actually, the original proposal was for 40 acres. But, but the change to 60 has been made as part of the discussion here at the board level.
Supervisor John?
Um, thank you, Mr. Chair. And yeah, this was the first question asked in this presentation. And here we are back again getting clarification. But the question was asked, and as I heard the response, it had everything to do with the smaller parcel size and the concern over increased development in timberlands and the potential for cannabis cultivation, which, for whatever reasons, wasn't clear to a lot of the planning commissioners. That's what I've heard from a number of commissioners as to why they didn't move it forward. So I think going to 60 acres as well as clarifying that, uh, it's not included in the cannabis ordinance, so you can't grow cannabis in that zone. Those two clarifications significantly change. Anyway, appreciated that you answered that right out of the beginning of the hearing. So I, but we're getting clarification again, I guess, so.
And I want to, uh, reiterate or basically, um, second the, the intent of the comment from Supervisor Bass, which is, you know, our planning commission is, you know, if, if we have the ability to, to analyze what is given to us from them, I mean, if we're just taking from them exactly what it is and not having any sort of comment or change on that, then, then there's no purpose for us in this process. So I would say that, um, uh, that's what we're doing. We're, we're analyzing and evaluating what's being given to us.
Thank you.
So the next proposed zone is the mixed use urban zone, one of two mixed use zones that are recommended to be applied to lands that are planned mixed use on the general plan land use map. And the policy ULP 6, which is mixed use zoning, says to utilize mixed use zoning to help create town centers that are community focal points. And so the general plan is calling for the creation of a mixed use zone. And we're, we've, we've recommended to create two, one to apply in urban areas, one to apply in rural areas. General Plan Land Use Element, Table 4D, which is the, the allowable uses and some of the development criteria for, um, mixed use land use designations. We've, we've, um, copied and pasted many land use designations from, for the mixed use urban zone from the mixed use land use designation. And, um, we've also looked to some of the other zones that are present in the areas that are planned mixed use, in particular, the community commercial zone, to identify other appropriate principally permitted or, or conditionally permitted uses. The development standards proposed for the mixed use urban zone come from, largely from the community commercial zone, which is applied in the same areas. And so the setbacks, the building height is, is from the community commercial zone. The maximum ground coverage comes from Table 4D, which is the mixed, from the mixed use land use designations, mixed use zone, mixed use land use designation allows a floor to area ratio of three. Basically, you can build a building three times the parcel size. And, uh, from that, we're recommending that the maximum ground coverage is, is 100%. That development could cover the entire parcel. May not due to parking requirements, other, other needs within the site. But we're recommending that a maximum ground coverage is 100%.
John, where do you, where do you see these being used? Just out of curiosity, what are your, what are the thoughts?
There are, um, there are several areas in the county that are planned mixed use. And mixed use is the urban land use designation. It's applied to the town center in McKinleyville. It's applied to, uh, a number of parcels in downtown Glendale. It's applied in, in Willow Creek. Those are the areas that I can think up off the top of my head that have a, a, a number of parcels, clustered parcels that are planned mixed use. So those are the areas that we would likely recommend that the mixed use urban zone is, is applied.
Thank you.
Mixed use urban zone has landscaping standards. And those standards come from Urban Lands Standard 5, which is landscaping standards, saying that for, for projects that will, uh, require five or more parking places, that, um, landscaping must be implemented and, um, requires the submittal of a land, landscaping plan.
In a, in a dream world, is there any way we could put maintained landscape? Because these things look gorgeous when the building first opens up. And I have never, I mean, I can drive through this town and there're waist-high weeds and everything else. And if the build, I don't know, who, I'm, I'm just saying, I, I mean, it's not that hard to put maintained in there, but I'm, I'm just saying, so we have some teeth in it. There are so many structures that are built that until they are completely in disarray. And you can run up and down 4th, 5th, you can run through any of our places in our district. I'm not going to just pick on your echo. I don't care where you go. And we put in these great standards, and we put in these great native plants, and we put everything else. And then, I, I swear to God, the most native plant we have is a dandelion, because that's all they're filled with afterwards. So I, I don't know if that's, I'm in a dream world.
We, we could add that provision to this ordinance. We are also currently working on a property maintenance ordinance to bring back for the board's consideration that would apply countywide.
And a lot of it is just the, and I see it every day in neighborhoods and everything else. And it's, um, stolen from a TV show, but it's the broken window thing. Somebody fixes one, and then they, then they all of a sudden, they realize how bad their house looks, so they fix it up, and then it's a trickle-down effect. So I just, it seems silly, but it is blight in its own way.
Um, the, the next are design, uh, parking and lighting requirements. We're recommending that lighting standards be incorporated into the mixed use zone. In particular, this is going to be an area of concentrated development, and there will, there will likely be, um, exterior lighting. And there, the scenic resources section of the Conservation and Open Space Element has, has, uh, a standard relating to light and glare. And we're recommending that it be incorporated into the mixed use, mixed use zones. The, the next are standards relating to, to design and potentially, uh, reduced parking requirements. Those come from an Urban Lands Policy, P7, Neighborhood and Town Centers, which has, um, a, a nu, a series of criteria that, uh, speak to design and to, um, the placement of buildings, sort of the form. And it also, um, requires or specifies that the standards allow for ministerial approval. So we're trying to provide, um, articulated standards that would allow for ministerial approval rather than through a special permit.
I have a quick question on that, so.
Please.
Going back to the part, can you go back one, you were just that? It's, um, the parking design lighting requirements and performance standards. Oh, wait, where is it? The next, what's the next one I maybe went back to? Did you go back to, there? No, I'm lost. Anyways, the, um, it, it said, uh, reduce, um, re, um, was, uh, reduce parking, um, and that that was the only, and then to, what was the term? Because I don't have it in front of me.
Reduction in parking requirements to encourage multimodal access options, design criteria.
And so, and encourage, I would say, I would say parking, reduce parking requirements and other methods, because there are, you know, multimodal, uh, transportation can be encouraged by other means than, you know, reducing parking is probably one of the main things. But really, uh, you know, the encouragement of the building of, uh, you know, the, the bike facilities, the encouragement of making sure the design is pedestrian-friendly and all those other options. And even within the building site itself, in terms of like when they're, you know, getting permits for, you making sure that there's shower facilities within commercial, uh, buildings, so that employees that are trans, you know, that are using, um, alternative transportation, including bicycles, or, you know, to have the facilities that they feel comfortable. Those are, there are, there are a list of them besides reducing parking in terms of, in terms of promoting multimodal transportation. So I just want to make sure that that gets there somehow.
Those sound like good findings in approving reduced parking below, uh, 50%. The, some of the criteria that, that you identified. The next is the mixed use rural zone. And it mirrors a lot of the, the, the general plan connections that are found in the mixed use urban zone. That, um, there are two land use designations that are applied outside of urban areas, the village center and the rural community center. These are, I mean, those areas range from Hydesville to Honeydew. So there's, there's a, in fact, there is a rural community center, um, identified for New Harris. And you'd be hard-pressed to see that even driving by on the road. And so thi- this zone is intended to be a more flexible zone to reflect the, the visitor-serving related uses and the, you know, the, the expanded cottage industry-related uses that would occur within the, the more developed area of a, of a, of the, of our rural landscape. So the RU, the MU2 zone, the mixed use rural zone, is intended to be applied in, in areas that are planned village center, rural community center. The uses come out of the Table 4D relating to the VC and RCC land use designations. Rather than being, um, taking, uh, standards from the community commercial zone, we look to the industrial commercial zone. And so the modified standards, modified C3 standards reflect the urban setting. The maximum ground coverage is set to 50%, which is, which is still significantly greater than all of the current, current commercial zones. The floor to area ratio for, which is the, the, the amount of square feet that you can develop on a parcel is two. So you can develop twice the square feet of a parcel in building area in, in the VC and RCC land use designations. Landscaping standards are the same as recommended to be included in the mixed use urban zone. If more than five parking spaces are, are, uh, being proposed, then landscaping is required. And we will, um, you know, follow that through the submittal of a landscaping plan. The same light and glare standards, and these may even be more important in a rural area, are come from the scenic resources section of the Conservation and Open Space Element, SR4, light and glare.
John, can I ask, on the, and I'm going back, on the maximum ground coverage, on the village fit center and rural community center being two different things, on the 50%, so the, we're going back, the other 50% would be parking and landscaping? Is that what?
It would be open space areas. Michael, you might want to talk about what can occur within the open space areas.
Because we're putting this in an open space area already when we're talking rural, so.
I think the idea is that in these rural areas, you're unlikely to have a, a parcel that's developed 100% of the space allocated to a building. And so we're trying to triangulate what the appropriate development standards that would apply in these rural areas.
And I'm, and because I'm looking back on, because we've had some of these discussions about petroleum, the village center there, and some of the lot sizes are smaller than others, obviously. So trying to meet that 50% for the business. And then I worry about if, you know, to make that 50%, if we're making these multi-story. And then if they have to abide by any, if it's a business ADA standards and things like that, we're going to throw an elevator and patrol you, which would be new.
The question John's raising is, uh, do any of our zones right now allow 50%? In the rural zones, no. In the, uh, urban areas, yeah. The commercial zones allow more than 50%. And John's whispering in my ear that the septic system is also a concern. You know, you can't develop on top of a septic system.
Good, thank you.
Good, thank you. And you can say it out loud, John, you don't have to whisper in his ear. We actually gave you a title to do that.
He's just being efficient.
But he was blushing.
So, the performance standards in the mixed-use rural zone, they're set up similar to the urban zone and based on the same policy, which is urban lands P seven, neighborhood and town centers. And the purpose of these performance standards is to minimize conflict between the uses within the mixed-use area and the adjacent rural uses, as well as to provide a pathway for ministerial permitting of development. The next is...
Mr. President.
So, on the mixed-use rural, there is no special permit process for reduced parking? I didn't see it in there.
That is not proposed at this time.
And what's the logic behind that?
Um, I think it's just...
Seems in rural areas, there's much more space already.
Yeah.
So, why would you require the parking? I mean, I don't know.
Well, I, if I could, I'd just offer that one of the things that would differentiate the rural areas from the hopefully more urbanized areas, is there's a lack of proximity to other uses, a lack of proximity to residential uses, a lack of proximity to public transportation. And so, people really are going to be driving to and from these places.
Okay, but there's a lot of space.
But, if I could, but part of the issue is, is that when we see in these rural areas, you're requiring parking spots for each one of these uses, and then you're saying that the assumption that they may be driving to the town center, then, then the assumption is also then they're driving from one business to the next business to the next business to the next business, when you're requiring that amount of parking, and that is sort of the planning problem of this, is that it's not really assuming some shared parking, I think, and so, maybe you can address that.
Senator Fennel.
Well, as somebody who actually visits a little village center, rural center quite frequently, that's not what you do. Park one place, you walk from place to place. It's not like a shopping center in town or anything like that. It's, there you, none of them are very big, and that includes even Whitethorne, which is fairly big.
I would say, but like Garberville, it was all designed without and built without parking requirements. I mean, so, those places that you're talking about were built without parking requirements, and then once you put in parking requirements, you get places that then you have to walk from one place to the other because so much space is consumed by that parking. So, that's, if the goal is to really make what you're, you're, drive, I'm sorry, drive from the one to the other, so if the goal is to really make these smaller communities so that you are condensing to, to get those businesses to be co-located and adjacent, parking requirements works in an opposite direction for that. And so, that's, I think that's what is the concern.
I think that's something we're going to be discussing later.
Well, if it is the pleasure of the board, we could certainly add in the same kind of exemption or process available to the mixed-use urban to reduce the parking and to allow for further reduction based upon circumstances.
Senator Fennel.
Seems logical. Logic's our friend, right? Because there is still a special permit process, which is fairly onerous, that you've got to be able to provide evidence, substantial evidence, I believe the wording was, that it wouldn't create these impacts. So, it seems to me it's logical to provide the option. I would certainly support that. I hope my colleagues would, especially having just done the climate action stuff this morning. So, this is where the rubber hits the road. Oh, that's kind of a...
And even when we were having a discussion...
Senator Wilson.
Thank you. About the, the parking that we were seeking to share with the state, for instance, right? And so, we're looking to share parking with an adjacent landowner in order to reduce the requirement that is going to be a huge development and cost burden to us. And so, having that available in the process would be great.
Senator Fennel.
Well, well, I'm just looking at the, the staff recommendation at the, in this, and I think that's something we're going to be talking about later.
Okay.
The next is the proposed planned rural development combining zone. And this is, this is specifically called out in the general plan. AG, policy AGP one, planned rural development. This relates to lands planned agriculture grazing and forest resources section, policy FRP 15, planned rural development. And this relates to lands that are planned timberland. So, there's two mirroring sets of policies and standards in agricultural, the agricultural resources section and the, the forest resources section that call for the creation of this combining zone. And so, the combining zone carries out these policies and the standards, and it would include provisions for planned rural development on land planned agriculture grazing and timberland by specifying that lands most suitable for agricultural production are retained for permanent continued production, and that identified home sites are clustered to avoid increasing conflicts with the resource production. The clustering provisions are called out in two standards. One in the agricultural resources section, the other one in forest resources. Both of them are referred to as the planned rural development program, and they provide a density credit of up to 1.5% of existing entitlements, when 95% of the land is subject to a conservation easement or equivalent protection. And in, in exchange, you cluster the home sites likely near public roads and in the most suitable area for residential development, preserving the, the best areas for continued resource production. The, the, this proposed combining zone is organized in a similar manner to the existing planned development combining zone, which is applied for the most part within urbanized areas. And so, we use the, broadly use the categories that are present in that zone to create this new zone. And lastly, the water forbearance standards were added for the, for the new lots, consistent with water resources policy P eight, requirements for water storage in flow-impaired watersheds. The rural subdivision standards in the land use element also apply water use limitations in accordance with the water resources element. This forbearance is being broadly applied to a lot of development within the rural areas, and we felt, we felt it was appropriate in this circumstance as well. That's the end of the, the point-by-point description of the, the general plan items that relate to the proposed changes to the zoning regulations.
Senator Fennel.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have to say this, PRD is one of the most awesome zones you've created, and I really applaud the work. You know, the, the old general plan, I know in the Trinidad area had a comment, and it said, encourage PUDs, but it didn't encourage them because there was really no zoning that allowed that encouragement to occur. So, actually having it more memorialized in a zoning text is fantastic. This is one of those great situations where this incentivize, improve economic return for real estate interest for developers by increasing density, but it also benefits the community tremendously by protecting our resource lands through that clustering approach, and it has the additional benefit of creating neighborhoods rather than everybody spread out on a 20 or 40 acre parcel. So, there's just nothing but positives in this particular one. I really, really strongly support this PRD. It's a wonderful element.
Yeah, we had a pretty good discussion on that.
Senator Fennel.
Working on the general plan.
Yes.
Really good. Thank you for your kind words.
You're welcome.
Through the chair, I'm going to pick up the mic, and before I hand it back to John, I just wanted to quickly report on a workshop that we recently had. At the July ninth meeting, staff volunteered to hold a public workshop, and the purpose of the workshop was to try to explore areas of commonality between the participants at that, at that meeting. During the meeting, there was expressed a broad range of views, and there's very little consensus, and so, we were trying to just find areas that were kind of sweet spots in the public setting. There, we did find some areas, there was consensus that items need to be vetted first before the planning commission, before they are, before they come to your board for review, and those comments were directed at the zoning text amendments involving ridgeline protection and changes to the fire safe ordinance. There was also consensus around the idea of a building envelope getting better definition. The way that it was expressed in the, in that workshop was, you know, roads or driveways leading up to the building site shouldn't be included in that building envelope definition, but parking areas around the, the buildings themselves, the residential buildings themselves should be included. And, and both of these consensus views are, are, were brought into this staff report where we are recommending the board direct planning staff to initiate amendments, further amendments to the zoning ordinance that would be brought before the, the planning commission and, and would also be the subject of public workshops before we even get there. And then, one other thing I wanted to mention is, one of the concerns that was raised at the planning commission that we didn't really address well with regard to the TE zone was, how, how much of an area are we talking about? We instead just reported, well, there's about 800,000 acres of land that's planned or that's zoned unclassified, and some part of that is going to become TE. And, and I think that's kind of horrified the planning commission, and, and I just wanted to point to a couple of maps that John prepared. Here's a map showing the areas that logically could be zoned TE because they're right now zoned unclassified and they have a timberland plan designation. This is in the north third of the county, and if you flip to the next slide, this is the middle third, and the TE parcels here are shown in black, and, and it's hard to pick them up because they're very dispersed throughout this area. And then the last one is the southern Humboldt area, and, and so, I just wanted to give you a snapshot of the land that you, you'll be seeing this in the future with our zoning mapping exercise, but if, I, I just get the sense that if we had brought those forward to the planning commission, these maps forward to the planning commission, at the time, they, they wouldn't have been so alienated by this proposed TE zone.
Senator Fennel.
Well, that's very interesting, uh, looking at that map, most of the dots are in the, in the southern part. And so, my question for you is, looking at those, pick that, oh, let's see, just one of the smaller ones. How many acres does that translate to? Can you give me any idea, like the ones that we have a hard time seeing?
Yeah, the, the smallest dot is probably 160 acres, and so, the larger ones are, are groupings of those together.
Okay. So, so generally of those 312 parcels, the smallest parcel is 160?
I believe so.
Is that correct?
It can't be.
I think there's a bigger range in parcel size, and I'm going to see if I can find...
Yeah, that'd be good.
Summary, but I think they, there, there are some parcels, most of the parcels are greater than 10 acres, but there are a number of parcels that are smaller than 10 acres.
Some, yeah, okay.
Okay, I'm going to hand the mic back to John Ford.
So, just wanted to follow up. We received several letters, and I think the board has seen the letters also, and there was one letter in particular that took issue with some of the information that's been presented, and I wanted to quickly go through that. I, I just got a chance to look at it this morning, and it's a letter from the Harland Law Firm. First of all, it takes issue with the use of the EIR as an appropriate environmental document for these zoning actions. As the resolution outlines, the EIR was actually intended to be used for the implementation of the general plan for these zoning actions. There is an argument that's there that the actions that are proposed are not found in the general plan, and the specific examples of that reference the AE 20, that's AE with the 20 acre minimum lot size, the MU one, MU two, and the TE. I think as Mr. Miller, as John demonstrated, that certainly the AE changed to a 60 acre minimum was clearly contemplated by the general plan. The MU one is called for by the general plan. The MU two is not used by name, but it does implement the village center and rural community center policies of the general plan, that those are directly applicable. Where those are seen on the land use map is where the MU two will go. And so, it is clearly contemplated by the general plan and thus clearly analyzed by the EIR. The timberland land use, or the timberland exclusive basically implements the timberland land use designation. There's currently no traditional timberland zoning designation. As John mentioned, the closest designation other than TPZ is AE. So, really, the question that is before the Board of Supervisors this afternoon, is it more appropriate to implement timberland policies through an agricultural zone or through a zone designated for timberland exclusive purposes? So, as I mentioned, all these zones are either called for or envisioned by the general plan and by the programmatic EIR. There was also concern that expressed in this letter that there was changed circumstances and that there was a lot of, of testimony that was given in opposition, and they took offense to the finding that was made, that no evidence had been submitted showing that there was changed circumstances, that there was new information, or that the EIR was not adequately evaluated. The actuality is, is that on the record, there has been no evidence granted that the zoning amendments have any more of an environmental effect than what was evaluated in the EIR, and that's the findings that are made in the resolution. It was pointed out in the staff report that the alternatives that were proposed in the July ninth, 2019 resolution, including building envelopes, ridgeline protection, timberland sitbacks, and standards for development in areas subject to wildfire, had been removed from the ordinance. So, the resolution is not attempting to justify those actions. In fact, the action before the board in, in recommendation number five is to basically direct staff to go away and work on those as part of a separate process. So, the resolution is not trying to justify those actions at this time. There was also a comment made that by reducing or increasing the parcel size in AE from 20 to 60, and as John mentioned, that it's a bit of a misnomer because you can't subdivide AE into 20 acre parcels currently, that it adversely affects our ability to provide housing within Humboldt County. And what the finding says is that we did not use the resource protection zones to meet our rena requirements in terms of the housing element. So, really, that's a segmented idea that the resource zones aren't being used to achieve our housing goals, and so, the board has a lot of freedom there with respect to what you choose to do with respect to the resource zones. respect to the resource zones. It's important to note that this is, at this time, the rezoning of the actual property is not proposed. The thing that is before the board is how to modify the text or to create new zones. How those zones get applied is a future consideration by the board. As we presented and the board adopted the work program, the first step or first stage in the work program was to amend the text, to create the new zoning districts, and then to come back and apply those on the property. And that is still the process that we're going through. As mentioned earlier, one of the things to resolve some of these concerns can be to give more notice to potential property owners whose property may be or will be affected by this.
John, can we, and because we've had this problem before, where it says will be affected, is there any way we can make sure before the zoning is changed, that the property owner knows before it's changed? Because we had, we had a pretty good bailiwick on that. And we, I know there's absentee owners and everything else, and maybe if they're that absentee, it just holds as its own. But we've had problems in the past. I mean, shaded parcels come to mind, but.
So the short answer is absolutely can. The thing that we're trying to reconcile is the benefit versus the cost. There are thousands of parcels that are at play here. So generating notices, letters to every single one of those property owners, there's a cost to that. If that's what the board wants us to do, we can certainly do that. And-
I don't see how we can't.
Message-
I'm, I'm sorry, I just-
No, that's fine.
It doesn't seem like a lot to us, but for some of those property owners, that's all they have.
Okay.
Okay.
Some of the questions, other questions have been answered. There was an issue being taken with where would the MU 1 be located? That's in locations where town centers are identified, McKinleyville being the best example of that, the MU 2, the village center, the rural community centers. AE, the modifications does affect existing AE zone. It would affect the application of the AE zone to property that's currently designated AE in the land use element and has a U unclassified zoning designation. We've talked about the location of where the timberland zone would conceivably be placed. So the general plan guides the implementation of the zoning. And this is contemplated in, in the EIR, in the programmatic EIR. So we believe that the resolution does adequately draw the connection between the general plan and the proposed zoning amendments. We do believe that the resolution also draws the appropriate connection between the environmental impact report that was prepared for the general plan and the proposed zoning work. And so we believe that in spite of the comments that are being made, it is well within the board's ability to, based upon the facts that are in the record, and including the facts that were presented here today, that's really a very detailed discussion of the resolution, to find that this is implementing the zoning, that it is consistent with the zoning, it does further the cause of the general plan, it is consistent with the general plan, furthers the cause of the general plan. And the, the board does have the latitude to make whatever decisions it chooses relative to this proposal. All of that being said, one of the things the letter did do is point out that there's a typo in the resolution. And that typo is on page four of the resolution. It's within finding three, general plan consistency B subset II. And there is a reference there to the footnote in table 4G. It's not the footnote that specifies a 60 acre minimum lot size, it's the table itself. So this should read, minimum lot size is changed from 20 acres to 60 acres as specified in table 4G, resource production, land use designation, and policy age, or standard AGS 1 subdivision of planned agricultural exclusive lands. With that, we conclude our presentation. Be happy to answer any questions.
Can you, since we're addressing letters, the letter from the Humboldt County Resource Lands Working Group, because I know there's some big players in that, and then I also know there's a lot of small property owners that have been, and they've been our go-to for over 10 years now, a lot of it, a lot of input. And I was wondering, they have, they have some specific comments, if you could address those.
Yeah, so relative to these, the building envelope, obviously, we're, we're moving that down the road. We're not addressing that as part of this. They brought up the concern with the setbacks within TPZ. That also is taken out of this proposal. We're not, that's not within the ordinance that's being presented to you. The, regarding AE prime and non-prime agricultural land should be treated consistently and minimum parcel size should stay at 20 acres. That decision was made by the general plan. We're not proposing, we're proposing consistency with the general plan, not to change that. And regarding the new TE zone, if the board approves a TE zone, they suggest that every owner whose property is being zoned TE be given at the time of implementation of revised zoning amendments the chance to choose TPZ over TE. And we would agree with that request, that when we give notice to some of these property owners where they, there is maybe a good and better option that, such as TE and TPZ, if the board chooses to keep the TE zone, that we will give them the alternative to request the TPZ.
Supervisor Fennel.
So, a question to the director. You talked about notifying people and them having a chance to weigh in on the new zoning. Since AE is also an appropriate zone for those areas, is there, is that part of the, of what they could choose? Could they choose TE, TPZ, or AE? Or would it, would they be limited to TPZ and TE?
No, AE would be within the realm of consideration. Obviously, the TE was presented to the planning commission because we believe that it would be better to have a timber basically as zone that is for timberland. And that ultimately, that's going to be a choice of the planning commission and then Board of Supervisors to determine what the best zone is.
I mean, looking at the map, these are just, as we said, little dots. And if you look at the figures about land use in Humboldt County, I think 45% is timber. So if it's of significant value to that landowner to keep it in AE rather than TE or TPZ, seems like it would be fair to at least give them a chance.
Yes.
To make the case.
We will definitely have that dialogue and, and give them the opportunity to make the case.
I mean, and the biggest thing here is that if we make, if we make a particular move that will then require somebody to do an amendment, that's a cost to them and it shouldn't be, since we're making this change, in my view.
I think we're putting more on your plate, but I think what she's saying is when you have that dialogue, that dialogue is going to be taking place-
At the map.
-through, through mail and the, so I mean, they're gonna have to have their options spelled out for them because some of these people, you can throw all these acronym, you know, everything at them and they're not gonna know what the hell you're talking about. So. Supervisor John.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I was really glad to see most of the heads up here nodding on the direct contact to landowners when the zoning map changes come forward. I think that's really appropriate. It might cost us some money and time to do that, but it is so appropriate to let everybody know what's being contemplated and get that input. And this is the third time we've had staff come back to us on this particular item. And until tax amendments are completed, we can't start that zoning map process. And in addition, this has been delaying the community planning process as well, that many communities thought it was gonna happen this summer. Now it's looking like fall or winter or spring. And so in the interest of moving forward, and because these are just tax amendments, and we will have another bite at the apple in a big way, along with all the landowners coming in and giving us their input on zoning map changes, I would move staff recommendation number three to adopt the attached resolution, number four to adopt the attached ordinance, number five to direct the planning and building department to initiate the separate amendments and other processes with the planning commission as outlined in our staff report, including discussion of ridgeline and viewshed protection, and move to file a notice of determination. And I make this motion to try and help move this along. I certainly want to hear public comment on this, but like I said, third time back here in front of us, these are text amendments. It's a compromise, like all land use planning, where none of us really get everything we would like to see. There's some things I'd like to see in here, but I feel that it's a reasonable compromise. I hope my colleagues will support that. So I move those things.
For that same purpose, I guess I'll second it. I have a question, or first I want to say, I read these letters that we got in. I want to agree with Supervisor Bone, Chair, the board, that this, what we received from the Humboldt County Resource Lands Working Group was really very thoughtful comments. And they really were getting into it. And, and I think that their questions were all spot-on, reasonable questions, including this issue with the, with the TE zone at the end. I don't think it's gonna be much of a burden to, especially, well, in regards to the application of the TE zones to basically what's left over from the unclassified zoning, what we, which we, which we have right now. I mean, that's gonna change no matter what. I mean, that is gonna be a change. And so it's not gonna remain, we're getting rid of that zoning pretty much altogether in this process. So those, those landowners will be notified either way. I do have, you know, this is a quick question about the, we received two letters from the Harland Law Firm and the staff, I mean, it seems to come from an individual attorney. Is there a client represented in this that you, that you know about?
I'm not aware.
So there's, there's no organization or a group that's just, maybe it's just an individual then, the, the individual attorney? Or is there a group that we're aware of that's advocating and-
I'm not aware.
-that this person's advocating for? Okay, I just was clarifying or asking for clarification on that. Okay, I'm, I'm ready to hear some public comment on this stuff.
Any else?
Just a clarification, so we're adopting staff recommendations.
That's correct. We're contemplating. I, if we have to come back here, if you, three meetings may seem like a lot, but after so many general plan meetings and everything else, when we're getting down to rubber meeting the road, till we get this right, we're gonna keep meeting. So I just, with that, I'd like to open this up to public comment.
Scott Fraser, Blue Lake. I'm interested in supporting the 60 acre minimums for AE and TE. It's not clear to me, in all the discussions we just sat through, whether the text amendments address the principally permitted uses, which I believe are the sleeping dog, the big elephant in the room with this whole process. So my personal concern, and the biggest issue for me, is I live on a parcel that's unclassified and it's adjacent to lands that are agricultural lands, grazing lands that are unclassified. And I believe they will probably be promoted as AE based on studying the maps six months ago, eight months ago, 12 months ago. So I think it's important that when you contemplate the point in time where these text amendments are applied to maps, that you not allow substantial, or substandard parcels, those that are less than 60 acres in size, be given rights they don't currently have under the unclassified designation. For example, if under AE, there's a principally permitted use, the neighbors aren't necessarily notified, because it's a given that that's the kind of developments that's expected. The neighbors don't expect that. So I'll ask for your forgiveness if I'm one step ahead of the process here. But that is the big issue, is that many of us are in communities and neighborhoods that we like the way they are, and we don't want to see a rapid intensification of land uses based on text amendments that we've tried to follow, but we might not have comprehended quite honestly. And that the lack of a public notification process is gonna be a large problem after all this is adopted and applied to the maps. So again, the 60 acre minimum, which I think some people may not have understood, that's what already happened back in 2017, or when the GPU was, was approved, is a reasonable level. And I noticed that some of the opposition to those larger acreages are agriculture producers who have legitimate concern about being able to have multi-generational families on farms. The minimum parcel size is not the right tool to deal with that. A separate ordinance about farmsteads or clusped housing would be the best tool for that. So with that, thank you for taking my comments.
Thank you, Scott.
Hi, Barbara Russell in Glendale. So about the mixed use in Glendale, we really need that mixed use to be for businesses and residences. And I just noticed that our mixed use is rural, no, is urban, where it should be rural, because we're rural there. And we're, we all, the properties surrounding this lot is rural residential, rural low density, and residential estate. So we ask, please, planning department, could you guys make the mixed use? And you guys, you guys, you guys, make it urban. No, make it rural and not urban, because the difference is, this huge lot then can be completely covered with impermeable surfaces and just disgusting, where really we need it to stay a rural feel, where we can have small businesses and services and housing, which can happen under lovely mixed use rural. Okay? Is there a, would there be a, hopefully there'll be a possibility that you guys could change that, make that change. Please, please. Okay, what do I have to do? Should I call somebody?
Thank you.
Can we do that? Thank you.
All right. Hit the nail on the head, call someone. 839, anyway.
Okay, Colin Fisk again. The new mixed use, mixed use zones are the only zones that will explicitly be intended to encourage pedestrian oriented development. And the general plan policies exist which require, in fact, reduced parking standards in these areas. And I was encouraged to see support for that. However, the default parking requirements remain the same as for car oriented development everywhere else. And I don't think that that makes much sense. I hope that you heard some of the facts I presented earlier connecting parking supply with climate issues. But in addition to that, I would say this, it's literally impossible to develop a small mixed use lot under the default parking standards. And for larger lots, the standards would make it impossible for the development to be pedestrian oriented, which is the intent of the zone. So I'm gonna walk through just a hypothetical example. So suppose you have an owner of a small lot in a mixed use zone that wants to build a mixed use development. The minimum lot size in those zones is 2,000 square feet. The minimum width is 25 feet, so we call it a 25 by 80 foot lot. And let's say they want to build a two or three story building with retail on the bottom, a couple of one bedroom apartments on the top, which is exactly what we're, the kind of thing we're looking for in a mixed use zone. The code requires one parking space for each of those apartments, plus a minimum of four for the retail, plus one for each employee. So if we call it a mom and pop operation with only two employees, that's eight parking spaces required. They need to be at least eight feet by 18 feet each. You also need a driveway to access the parking spaces, which has to be at least 18 feet wide, needs to access all the spaces, so we'll conservatively say that has to be at least 32 feet long. You now have 1,152 square feet of space for parking, 576 for the driveway, that's 1,728 square feet on a 2,000 square foot lot, 272 square feet for your building, which is basically impossible. And we haven't even talked about the 15 foot rear setback and other constraints. So even if it were possible to develop a lot like that, the parking would be taking up more than 85% of the lot. And you would be putting, you could put three times as much mixed use development on the site with a 50% reduction in requirements. Taking up all that land with parking also means that buildings are much further apart than they need to be, as was mentioned earlier, which makes walking less viable, which defeats the whole purpose of the zone. So please, I would encourage you to make the reduced parking requirements the default and not the exception, and apply them to all the uses in the mixed use zones, not just the residential. And finally- And finally, Tom Wheeler asked me to say that he apologizes for having to leave, and he encourages you to pass the text amendments with the changes I just mentioned. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is that good? Does that work?
Perfect. Thanks, Claire.
Hey, me hi. I'm Claire McAdams. Some of you've heard me here before. Today, I'm here wearing the hat of the Forest Landowners of California. We represent family that is non-industrial forest landowners. Because some of our board members live in what's called the southern sub-district, that is the Santa Cruz area, they have seen zoning rules used to cut down and cut down and cut down the ability to harvest timber in that county, to the point where it's almost impossible now, there are very few people still doing it. As forest landowners, we don't want to see that happen. My, I'll try, you've heard so many words today. I know you're tired, and I'm tired too. My message is simply, TPZ is not broken, don't try to fix it, truly. The, it is maybe not well-known across the general public that in many counties in California, in order to get TPZ, it's not free. Owners have to do a lot of restrictions, and there are costs to actually apply for it and prove that you're eligible for it. It is, it is a privilege, it is not a given. And yet, it's the best tool that we have to protect small forest lands, those that are where the owners can't afford to come up with a conservation easement, that kind of thing. So while I recognize the intent of the TE zoning proposal, it would, we've lived this long without it, for this few parcels, I can't see that it's worth taking the risk that you're going to end up, not now, but over time, after maybe several owners per parcel later, where owners chip away at their forests if they're TE and they're not TPZ. TPZ just gives clarity and solidity to forest land, and as you know, it takes decades to raise that, to harvest that crop. The other thing I wanted to say, different hat, I live in Glendale, and when I, when I hear the, the, studying, working for a word here, what I'm not hearing, what I'm trying to say is what I'm not hearing in the protections for the zoning is protection from industrial noise, which we tend to get from the time that-
Thanks, Claire.
Comes, sun comes up.
Sorry.
Thank you.
Thanks, Claire. Jay, how much does Jack weigh? He's got to be up about 15 pounds by now, right?
No, not 15. He's right around 14. Thanks for asking. So Jay Russ, and a member of the Humboldt County Resource Lands Working Group, and I appreciate this, you supervisors for already bringing that to the attention. And it sounds like, from what Mr. Richardson said, that the concern I was going to bring up is the contiguous two-acre building sites, we feel like that's too constraining for the complexity of the lots or the parcels. That doesn't always fit for folks. We don't want to see our options more constrained on how we use our ag lands. I don't recall when note four was developed in the general plan process. It seems like that probably should have generated some pretty robust discussion. Otherwise, I'd like to say, forest landowners are a part of the Humboldt Resource Lands Working Group, and we concur with all of their comments as well, so.
Which part didn't you see, the discussion that should have been? I'm sorry.
What was your question?
Was that the envelope? All right. Okay. All right. Okay.
Anyway, thank you.
Thanks. And I do know you went to all the meetings before.
I did.
Yes, you did. Mark?
Mark Greenerson, I'm not talking about timber, I'm talking about wetlands. There's a lot of changes that have been made to the general plan, the original adopted, and now some of the ordinance, implementation ordinances that are coming in, that aren't jiving very well. You've got three different sections, and I'm talking about timberland a little bit, but the TPZ, TE, ag, and residential. The wetlands restrictions, the way it's written, should be written the same in all three sections. So any one of those sections would refer to the others, so there's no doubt about what the ruling is. The 50-100 foot has been kind of the norm for a lot of years. We're now going 200 feet plus, and the plus is a big question mark, because somebody's going to have to determine what that plus is. That's going to take biologists, engineers, whatever it happens to be. But the main thing is in the streamside management areas, that have been, again, very cut and dried for a lot of years, and now there's discrepancies in the different segments of the plan. The one big thing that I'm looking at is that the implementation ordinances are not exactly following what was adopted by your board. The EIR and the housing element, when you start looking at the implementation of a 200-foot-plus setback from wet areas, you're starting to deal with a lot of parcels, we've built all the easy parcels in Humboldt County. We have restrictive parcels that have issues now. You start getting these wetlands issues of this 200 feet plus, you're going to take out half your housing inventory. Nobody's looked at that in the EIR at this point. So I would encourage that to be, that's one of the things that could be a litigate-type situation if it isn't addressed before this is adopted. Burn-down ordinance of some kind to go with this wetlands policies. Right now, if you built a house 10 years ago, you set back 50 feet from a wetland area, and you got your building permit, and you built it, and that house burns down this week, under what is being proposed right now, you've got to find a vegetation line, you've got to find a drip line, you're going to go 200 feet past that, all of a sudden, your lot was only 100 feet to begin with. So now you've got a real issue. You may not be able to build that barn house, whatever it happens to be, back again. Needs to be looked at before you end up in a lot of court issues over it. Thank you.
Thanks, Mark.
Actually, I'm excited to come up now, because I'm hungry. Good afternoon, my, most of you know me as Allison Jackson. I submitted a letter, and I would just like to go through a few points. I don't want to repeat everything in my letter, you've read it. Under SEQA, zoning amendments are a new project. Now, clearly, these were contemplated in the EIR, generally, they're going to have zoning amendments, when the general plan was approved. The question before you truly on a legal basis, because I'm not speaking on a political basis, I'm just looking at statutes and looking at what's been presented, and that is whether or not the EIR for the general plan has what relevancy it has to the text amendments that are approved. Now, that's just not what my comments are, that's actually what our California Supreme Court says. What is the relevance of the earlier environmental document, since this is an extension? Now, when I reviewed attachment one, page two, to the, to the staff report, it speaks about SEQA and 15162. The synopsis it has with respect to page two in this section, that's not the statute, that's not the wording of the statute, that's simply a synopsis of it. I have put the statute in my letter because I believe there are sections under subsection three, A, B, C, and D, which weren't touched in there, which have absolute bearing on the legalities of, or what I think are the inadequacies of relying upon the earlier EIR when you're doing the text amendments. Simply stated, none of these text amendments as articulated in the report, the impacts, some of which weren't studied at all. For instance, TE wasn't studied at all, some of the impacts, in fact, what was discussed by you members of the board, both on the ninth and today, about impacts, those are the impacts that haven't been studied from these proposed text amendments, and they have to be. Now, the comments that you've heard already from the gallery here, those same text amendments have not been studied. This is, let me just say, SEQA's not a problem, it is not an enemy. What it is, it's a tool for you to make informed decisions based on looking at the impacts, and when you skip over that with respect to the, these text amendments, then you're doing yourself and the public a disservice, and I urge you to put this on pause, bring the maps in-
Thank you.
-and do it completely.
Thank you.
Sure.
Kent Swatzky, excuse me, Mike Wilson asked a question earlier, who does Allison in the Harland Law Firm represent? I think she represents the public interest. She represents me, as far as I'm concerned, I'm happy to be owning that, I have no problem doing that. I have a major problem with this process. Right now, I could come before you, and one of you could say, I'd like to add an amendment in here, that Kent Swatzky can do anything he wants, especially if it irritated Mike Wilson. I would not accept that, because I think we really need to stay with what the planning commission did, even though that would be obviously in my best interest. We have gone through a process. This staff has had probably 20, I don't know how many different bites to make these text amendment changes prior. It should have happened at the planning commission level. The fact that it's happening now, in my opinion, says something. It says that we need to go back as soon as we're done, passing what the planning commission said, that's what I'm asking. My recommendation is take what the planning commission said, and we'll come back and we'll do a general plan amendment. I'd be happy to sit down maybe with Supervisor Madrone, Virginia Bass, Tom Wheeler, Epic, and myself, and see what we had in common that we could bring forward. Happy to spend the time. I think we could do some really good work together, but we really need to just stay with what we've done so far. That's the uncomplicated way to move forward. We need to move forward, we need to do the community plans, we don't want to take any unnecessary chance of tying this up in litigation for a long time period when we can move forward, and we can still go ahead and do this later. That's my recommendation. I'm hungry too, you're hungry, but I really, I really recommend that you vote no on this as presented. I recommend that somebody up here say, we'd like to move forward with the recommendations as brought forward by the planning commission, and then let's move on to the next phase.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Joyce King from McKinleville. Thank you for the opportunity to comment. We know that fragmentation and destruction of forest cover is one of the top drivers of climate change and loss of biodiversity. The principal permitting of residences on timberlands significantly increases this fragmentation and damage to vegetation, soil, water, invasive species, et cetera. The new state mandate for secondary units could double these impacts, and I understand that the responsible state legislators did not foresee this consequence on timberlands. So I was wondering if you would consider investigating the possibility of an exemption from the state, which would allow you to make secondary residences in timberlands a conditional rather than principal use. It seems to me that it would be easier to work, to look at that now, rather than close the door on it later, after people have perceived it as a right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Brittany Wallen, and I'm here on behalf of Humboldt Association of Realtors regarding the general plan implementation inconsistency measures. I have a letter I'm going to read from the Humboldt Association of Realtors. Dear Board of Supervisors, the Humboldt Association of Realtors is here today to help protect private property rights and look out for the best interests of land and property owners in this county. The following are of most concern to our association. A, creating a brand-new timber-exclusive zone that was never addressed in the EIR, and thus, and thus, it impact, its impacts never considered. Impacts such as reduced future housing opportunities, failure to consider climate change, and economically forcing owners into TPZ, which will result in reduced county tax receipts, changes to traffic flows, noise, and other public concerns. Changing the agricultural exclusive density minimum from 20 acres to 60 acres, the impact from this reduced housing opportunity, both primary and secondary dwellings, is in conflict with the existing general plan, as well as the supported EIR. Creating new mixed-use, one and mixed-use two zones that were never addressed in the EIR or their impacts considered. Impacts such as parking, traffic flow, safety, noise, neighborhood transformation, and other public concerns. Definitions that were utilized in the supporting EIR have been changed to an extent and manner that impacts visualized by the EIR are no longer valid or in, or in keeping with the analysis inherent in the EIR. We ask that you please consider our comments and concerns while considering many of the changes with the general plan implementation and consistency measures. We thank you for your time and for listening to our concerns. Thank you.
Thanks, Brittany.
Tina Christensen, speaking for HAR in regards to a couple of the things, I did have an opportunity to reach out and talk to our text, a couple of the, three of the planning commissioners, and ask them about the TE. And the reason that they did not, their reason for not voting for it was because they felt it was a more restrictive zone than TPZ, and it did not allow the property owners the same benefits, you know, for lower taxes and stuff like that. So that was the reason that, and also, the forest review committee did not vote for the TE. And Jim Abels substantiated that. So one of the other things that I would like to ask again, how many acres of land do you have in the incorporated that are zone unclassified?
Through the chair, there's-
What's, oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, you're right.
Yeah, okay.
They're taking notes.
Yeah, because my understanding is with the national forest and all those, it's 800,000 acres. You've, and then I heard at the meeting at the library that it was 80,000 acres, and that was the zoning for the national and state parks and that. And now I hear it's 4,000 acres, and you only have to send out 312 notices, well, you know, but then again, I heard it was, you're going to send out thousands of notices because you have to notify everybody. If it's only 312 that are going to be impacted, then I'm failing to understand how that is such an expense, because that's what I've heard just right here. Also, I think that, you know, there's a lot of inconsistencies in what you're asking, and I think that a lot of these things were not vetted in the general plan process, and so, thank you.
Thank you.
I urge you to really pay attention to the comments that have been made about the failure of these new ordinances to come, to have been reviewed in the EIR, and also any inconsistencies- with the general plan. The TE designation should not be applied to any property that doesn't qualify for TPZ if it doesn't get those same economic benefits of low taxes. If a parcel doesn't qualify to be TPZ, it should not be placed under TPZ restrictions through your zoning. And people, even though you are now discussing, which I appreciate, giving those landowners knowledge and full understanding of the differences between TE and TPZ, if their land doesn't qualify for TPZ, then you shouldn't be putting that type of restrictions on their land unless you're going to compensate them with the same tax rate that would go along with the TPZ. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, and thank you for your perseverance. I'm Kevin Dreyer. I am a Realtor, but I'm going to just speak on some of the concerns that I have personally. Regarding the two-acre building envelopes in the TPZ and the AE, I think that that's a problem because of what Mr. Russ said. It, it's a one-size-fits-all situation. It might be perfect for a perfectly flat bottoms piece of AE. But a lot of the AE's own properties out there in the hills is very difficult terrain. There may be not two building sites in that same two acres. Maybe it's three acres. And maybe that needs to be able to be two acres that's divisible into different areas of the property or something like that, because you could have a, a building bench here, then your other building bench is down your road over here, and it doesn't fit in the two acres. Also, the two-acre building envelopes were not part of the public workshops. That never came up in any of the public workshops as part of these zoning text amendments. TPZ, the convertible area is three acres, three-acre conversion. That's typically where you would put your house and your second unit and any other structures. And since that's three acres, I would think that any building envelope on the other resource lands should also be three acres. Let's see. Recreational uses that are listed under TE and TPZ don't include equestrian uses, mountain biking. It has a very short list of recreational uses, and it just limits it to that. And I think it should say such as, and maybe add some mountain biking, or horseback riding, or other types of recreational uses. It includes swimming and boating, which is interesting for TPZ zone lands. The other thing is, TPZ has a minimum zoning of 40 acres. I would think that the TE zone, if, and if it's developed, if, if you guys decide to do it, should also be a 40-acre minimum lot size. And then the PRD, it's a, it's a great idea. I understood it, that that was going to be an optional development, and it sounds like, and I may be wrong, but it sounds like this is an overlay that's going to be mapped onto certain parcels, as opposed to being available to anyone in that zoning that wants to do a PRD, or that it's going to require that dense, you know, that clustering.
Thanks, Kevin.
Wish I had three minutes for each zoning.
I wish you did too, but I'm glad you don't. Do you want to address some of the questions, or do you want us to ask them of you?
Nope. Thank you. We would love to go through the comments that have been made. So, going from the very top, some questions were raised about whether or not the text amendments address permanent uses, and what about substandard parcels? And if somebody basically has a legal parcel, even if it's a substandard in size, that is considered a legal parcel for purposes of development. If somebody wants to conduct an activity on that parcel that is principally permitted, they are entitled to do so. If it's something that requires a conditional use permit, then a conditional use permit would be required. The way the zoning works is we do not require different standards for substandard parcels. Did hear the comment about the mixed-use being rural in Glendale. I think the distinction there is because that portion of Glendale does have water and sewer, and that's one of the defining differences. We will take another look at that. We did hear the comments about the mixed-use zones are the only ones that are currently encouraging pedestrian-oriented development, and there are policies in the general plan that encourage pedestrian-oriented development and encourage alternative forms of transportation. These zoning text amendments are not the end of the implementation. This is really the first phase, and we will continue to work at bringing things back to address that. Did understand the comment about the small lot development and for small existing parcels, particularly along commercial strips, that is something that we struggle with, and, and frankly, we do look for ways to allow development of those with, without requiring all the parking. Saying reduced parking should be the default, I understand the concept, but on the other hand, many areas don't have parking, and so to not require any parking would create public health and safety concerns. There seems to be confusion that TE is intended as a substitute for TPZ. It is not the substitute for TPZ. TPZ has a different set of requirements. It's really an alternative to the AE for areas that are timberland, both in land use designation and as defined by the Forest Practices Act.
Can I ask where it came from? Are other counties using it abundantly, or did we just, are we just a leader in the world? I'm, I'm just trying to figure out where it came up and why, why, I mean, it was asked earlier, like Claire, TPZ seems to have worked for so long, why don't we just give them the option of being TPZ or AE?
Well, that, that is an option that's before the board, clearly an option. I think that from the staff perspective, when we were doing the analysis before the public outreach, before we got to the Planning Commission, it seemed like there are a lot of policies and, and policies oriented protection, protecting timberland within the general plan. So how best to implement that? And, and is, would it be better to try to impose policies from the outside into a land use designation, into a zoning that are separate? Or would it be better to create an integrated zoning designation as an alternative, basically, to the AE? Because as I mentioned, TPZ is not, it's not a decision of whether or not TPZ. TPZ has its own process, has its own stuff going on, and we will be offering TPZ as an alternative to property owners.
So, nobody else is using TE? We get the, we get to say that I started zoning. Is anybody else using it? I'm just, so we can say, boy, this, that was genius, or not?
Have not researched that to, to, I can't.
In the world of planning, have you ever heard of it before, besides what we're discussing here for the last two months?
No.
Okay. All right.
So, there, comments were made about the building envelope, and obviously, the building envelope is not on the table. That is something that will have a life of its own to either come back with something that we believe the, represents a broader consensus of the community or does not. The discussion on wetlands is really not tied in to what's before you today. The board has already adopted the modification of the streamside management area, and, and there are some different wetland issues from a land use policy planning standpoint that we may want to address differently in the future, but I didn't see the correlation to what's before the board today.
Supervisor Bass?
So, it may not be before us today, but we've, there's a concern, obviously. Where will that be addressed? Where, I mean, the no, no rebuild it for a burn or whatever. I mean, obviously, I can see people having concerns.
Streamside management area and other wet areas ordinance, the board has already adopted.
Well, I know, but are, are there really inconsistencies that you, you are, I mean, maybe it should be something we could look at of why someone believes that they are, because he, obviously, but maybe it's not during this process, you're saying?
Yep. So, the comment that the zoning is a new project is correct, but one of the premises of SEQA is to minimize the amount of work and redundancy that needs to be done. And so that's where the reference to SEQA Guideline Section 15162 is really important, is that where there's a previously certified EIR, or adept, adopted negative declaration or mitigated negative declaration, it can be utilized unless it can be clearly demonstrated by facts on the record that there are changed circumstances, or that there are new impacts that have been identified, or that there are circumstances which couldn't have been known at the time that are, are now present. And, and there are not facts on the record that would militate against adoption of, of any of, of these ordinance amendments. The comment was made that the board should stay with the Planning Commission, with what the Planning Commission did. This has been discussed before. The, the, the legal standard is that the board is obligated, must, consider the recommendation of the Planning Commission. But you are not obligated to only do what the Planning Commission recommended. As long as the Planning Commission did give consideration to items that are brought forward to you, you have freedom there to give consideration to those. We believe that the fragmentation of the forest land, the comment there, that's part of what's attempting to be addressed with the minimum parcel size within the TE, the approving of single-family dwellings with second units, that really is a decision that was made as part of the general plan. And, and so this is not something new that's being instituted. Wanted to identify that the total number of acres in the reference to thousands of notices. So, I, I believe that we did identify that there were a total of 800,000 acres that are U, and that that is within all land use designations that are zoned U. So there are a lot of properties that are going to get rezoned. And so, when I was cautioning the board about the cost, you know, Michael reached over and whispered in my ear, he's like, is that really all the parcels? Because that's a lot. And it's, it, yes, it's a lot. We're not just talking about notifying the folks that have a land use designation of timberland. We're going to notify everybody. And that will be thousands of parcels, and that will be, you know, a lot of time and a lot of money, but we clearly hear the board's direction to do that. And so that, that will be done. And so we don't mean to be confusing about it. We were talking about a specific application of 312 parcels for 1,000 acres, but that is a small component of the overall rezoning that we're discussing.
I want to note that we also had someone from the public who was concerned about being notified about changes to their neighboring properties, because they were in, I just want, so this, you know, we can, we can talk about notifying every single parcel owner in, as the individual, but then, you know, most, well, not most, but a lot of people are just as concerned about what's going to happen next door. And so this could get complicated and, and, and deep very fast.
Well, and I would, I would suggest that primarily, the primary principal holders are to be notified, and then somehow, we need to do a public outreach to let people know that they can go to site A or B and make our site somewhat compatible to look to see if your, your neighbor's getting rezoned. And I, I guess we could get that out, because I mean, I don't, if that's, you know, in this day and age of, you know, multimedia, it seems to me we could contact all the other people on the, on the boarding properties.
There was comments relative to consistency with the general plan and failure to review things in the EIR. And I, I think what we've tried to do today is present the clear correlation between the general plan policies and the zoning texts that are being proposed. And part of that rationale there is that if it's clearly identified in the general plan, and there's a clear corollary to what we're doing for this zoning, then the EIR did contemplate the very things that we're proposing today. For instance, if there is a general plan designation of mixed-use urban, so town center, and the general plan calls for that, the general plan evaluated the impact of creating that land use designation. Then, as part of the policy of the general plan, it said, create the mixed-use zone and apply the mixed-use zone. That is completely consistent with what the general plan, general plan EIR.
Supervisor Fiddle?
Yes, so Director Ford, that was in the letter from the Humboldt Area Realtors, and the first one they mentioned actually was not EMU, it was the TE, and they said it was never addressed in the EIR.
So, with respect to the TE, I would simply say that what the TE is, is we've got a timberland land use designation. And so now we've got a corollary zone, which is TE for the zoning district. We've got a land use designation and a zoning district. And the zoning district, the permitted uses, come out of the table in the general plan. So the uses permitted in the TE come out of the general plan. The, the standards, the, the minimum parcel size, it was not addressed in the, the general plan, but that has been something that has been a subject of conversation at the Planning Commission level and here to come up with the 60 acres.
I mean, so, the, the task in implementing the general plan was to come up with zones to address the unclassified areas. And as you correct, as you pointed out, the only one that was compatible with timberlands was AE. However, TE is not just a name. It has certain qual, you know, recommendations, requirements. I think that's where the concern is, you know, putting those requirements that didn't exist before on that property. And if it were to go to TPZ, you can't make people go to TPZ because it's voluntary. So that's where the, there, that's where the real issue is, I think, for a lot of people, is not so much that you gave it this designation, but that this designation now has requirements that didn't exist before.
And, and that is a fair statement, if I could respond. But I would also say that the general plan is the one that implemented those requirements. And so the TE is basically taking and implementing the requirements that were contained within the general plan.
Supervisor Wilson?
Thought he was, oh, no, I think, I think that was, Mr. Ford answered the question, which is that, especially in the unclassifieds, it's going to change. That's the, the, the general plan's requiring it too, so.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I totally understand where you're coming from, Supervisor Fennel, you know, wanting to protect people's interests. I really get that. What I like about TE is that if somebody currently has land designation of T or timberland, they now would have, if we approve this, a choice of being AE or being TE. And they're not going to be forced into one or the other, per se. So that choice is there. And I have run into many timberland owners who have been, fallen in love with their property, but they have to sell. And in the selling, they want to make sure it doesn't become a cannabis grow. And one way for that property owner to have an option to protect the property for future forest growth and all those things is to put it in a TE, because it doesn't allow cannabis production on there. So it's not something being forced upon anybody. It simply provides an option, and I appreciate it that it's on the table, and part of the table, 4G, I believe, is the table, yeah. So it's really just an option. It's, it's, it's not a threat. It's not something being forced upon anybody. Again, these are text amendments. We'll deal with the zoning map stuff later. Again, these are text amendments. We'll deal with the zoning map stuff later.
I just, if I could, we would not be the first to do a timber-type zoning. Butte County has a timber mountain zone called TM. The purpose of TM zone is to preserve Butte County's valuable timber resources and to protect both economic and environmental value of these lands. Standards for TM zones are intended to support growing harvesting timber wood pulp. So the, I'm just saying, we would, we're not, we're not the first, is all I'm saying. And this was, I'm sure there's others, this is all I'm.
Supervisor Fennel? Well, it's a different, TM, TE, anyway. Supervisor Fennel?
Yeah, and then I heard Claire McAdam talking about the concern also from the forest landowners about, about TE. It's so, this is, this is the part where people who will be affected are very concerned. And the only way that I could possibly live with that would be to have it codified that they, they call the shots. In other words, TPZ is, is voluntary and TE should be too. And otherwise, a fallback would be AE.
I want to point out that Claire wrote us a letter that said that cannabis would be allowed on TE. And she was incorrect on there.
I know. The only way that cannabis would be allowed.
Claire's letter also from the, from the Forest Land Owners Association. And, and I will say that her biggest concern that she was expressing was that timberlands would be fragment, you know, fragmented, that timberland uses would be, would be impacted negatively. So I would say that, you know, that the point of TE is, is actually in the interest of what she was expressing. I'm not sure that maybe she was as informed as, as needed in terms of, in terms of the content of the letter that we did receive because it had some factual inaccuracies with regards to that. So I want to make sure that while you're talking to, you know, about the comments from, from that organization and from this resident in Glendale, is that some of those things were inaccurate. And so I want to make sure that we're not, you know, basing our decisions on inaccurate information coming from, from a letter from this organization.
I'm talking about the comments that were made before us today. So, I think, again, the issue is, with great, you know, relieving the concern of people, what you're saying basically, Director Ford, is that there could be three potential zoning in those particular timberlands that are unclassified right now, TE, TPZ, or AE. And that everybody will get a letter letting them know of the potential zoning change and have the opportunity to have whichever zoning they prefer. I guess, you know, looking at how these things can go and, and catch people unaware, what I'd like to know is, what will be the process? And would they have to prove something in order to do that? Or can they just pick it out of a hat and say, I, I prefer, I prefer, you know? Is there anything that will say that you ask them to prove to back up their request?
Can I add a tag on to that too? What's the default if someone doesn't reply at all? I just, that was, if you can add, if I may add that to your question.
So normally, we do things that are factually based. So if a property would be entirely within timberland, it is all trees. And the facts are that it is essentially timberland. And so at, at that point, creating the zoning district of TE would give a strong inference to having either TE or TPZ. It really is something where the board, as you legislate and as you decide what the appropriate map would be, is that if somebody comes in and says, we want AE. So at that point, we would bring the AE forward to the planning commission and say, the facts really point in this direction, but this is what the property owner wants.
So generally speaking, an AE designation would probably be appropriate where there were part, some open, open areas and some trees?
Well, if there's some open areas and some trees, I, that, that may be a little different. Because there's frankly oftentimes where there is forest land and, and grazing land that is kind of interspersed, that is zoned AE. And, and that's really not much different. I think the thing that, if I heard John correctly, correct me if I'm wrong, but it was like 90% of the area that we're talking about in this 4,000 acres is, is, would qualify as timberland under the definition of the Forest Practices Act.
Just to add to that, the background of these maps is the, and I can't remember what the acronym stands for, CAL FIRE FRAP. So this is, this is land cover. And so the dark green are things, is conifer, white wood, and mix. So those are things that would clearly fall under the definition of timberlands under the Public Resources Code. The lighter green is what would be grazing land or ag land.
Supervisor Madron?
Yeah, in practice, having worked with landowners all over Humboldt, in particular, southern Humboldt, northern Humboldt, I have run into many parcels that are, have mixed zoning, where they have a lot of timberland, but then a 10-acre prairie within the 40-acre area. And typically, but not in every case, typically those lands have two zonings. And they've got AE on the prairie land, and they've got TPZ typically on the forest land. So that's a pretty consistent thing, although not entirely covering all parcels. But that already exists and, and nobody's talking about changing that. And landowners appreciate that mixed zoning for various reasons. Because of the different principally permitted things that happen in those two, two zones.
Well, yeah, I mean, and honestly, I mean, I've already been talking with people who are going through projects and had unclassified and know what the proposed zoning is going to be and actually question it. And they, and they, they may have more than one, they may have several potentials. So we can't always assume that what staff picked is actually suitable for that area. And that's where the mapping will come in.
Landowner requests.
Pretty, pretty safe bet that 40 acres of timber and 10 acres of prairie started out as 10 acres of forest and 80 acres prairie, and we had prairie creep. I mean, that's, I mean, every, I'm amazed, I've been around here for, I have a long time. And some of the places that I'm walking today, that I walk when I'm out, is, are a lot more trees than prairies. My prairies are gone where I used to sit on the edges of.
Absolutely.
So, I mean, there's, there's, there's conifer creep. So, I, and I can tell you, the TE still has me completely concerned. And I'm just going to tell you, I just, I've been looking at this, you know, implementing, if we can implement, implementing the, the letter from the Humboldt County Resource Lands Working Group, who's been involved with this since day one and includes 80% of the lands and private lands, anyway. And that's what we're dealing with here. I, I know it's all to be treated equal, but the, the people that are paying the taxes and, and working the land and doing everything else, and the legacy ranches and things like that, I, hopefully we can address because otherwise I'm, I'm really not on board with the TE yet.
Chair?
Supervisor Fennel?
When I asked earlier what were the sizes of those parcels, Michael gave one answer and then John said he was going to look through his book. Did you find an answer for me? Okay.
Maybe if we take a lunch break.
Three, three, 312 and 4,000 acres is about 12 and a half acres of parcels.
That's what I was thinking. There's one big one over there. It might be in your district.
I do want to note that, you know, that, that this group, the Humboldt County Resource Lands Working Group, did not come out against the TE in here. They seemed to be pretty neutral. They just wanted to make sure that the, the option was available and they would be informed. So there was not, this was not a, a negative point. Before, are you, you're, John, are you done? Mr. Ford, are you done with all the responses yet? Are you still going through those? Can we get through those?
Yeah, there's probably one more that I should, well, a couple more I should respond to. Mentioned that the two-acre building envelope is not within the proposed ordinance at all. With respect to building envelopes within the three-acre conversions, that's not within the ordinance currently at all. Yeah, no, that was in, I'm sorry, that was in TPZ that I was talking about. What? The request to take the TE back to 40 acres, that was something that was increased to 60 as part of the board discussion to try to address the planning commission concerns. And the PRD won't be arbitrarily applied. That is something that somebody will come in and ask for. And then we would work with the property owner to implement that.
And I want to, two things that Mr. Dreyer brought up. One was, you know, his concern with regards to the flexibility or not of, or the definition of the two-acre envelope, which is part of what we were trying to address before, was really to bring that consistency. And now it's pretty loose. And it will be up to staff to have that interpretation. And there will be, it'll be very, it'll be a very interesting process in the current context until we get some definition of those performance standards. Otherwise, the staff will be asked to basically implement the, the provisions of the general plan with regards to residential development. And remember, this is principally permitting residential development for non-timber or ag uses, right? It's different if it's, if it's associated with those uses. But if it's just for, for residential, what we're trying to do again is to protect timberlands and ag lands for future use. And, and, and this is the point of what we're trying to do. Until we get those performance standards, it'll be up to staff to be able to do that, which will not be an easy process. And so I encourage us to get back to that as soon as possible to get those definitions of what the two acres means and all of this other stuff. The other part that he had mentioned, and I thought was, he's not the only request that I got with regards to this, was the expansion of the recreational uses on timber lands, both the TPZ and the TE, to add horseback riding and mountain biking. And I think that that is completely reasonable to that list. I think that's, and, so I just want to put, make sure that that get, if we're going to be moving forward with something today, I want to make sure that those, that those two uses are added to the list of recreational uses on.
And the green sticker, people are going to wonder if you want to allow motorcycles.
Not now. Because everything else on the list is non-motorized, so.
Mr. Chair?
So, if I.
Supervisor Fennel and Madron?
Just looking at my notes here. It was also stated that the forestry review committee did not support TE. Do we know why they didn't?
I don't have an answer for that. So, just to be clear, it's not that they were opposed to it, they didn't support it. They didn't take it up, they didn't take an action on it, I believe, is the outcome of that. There wasn't a negative or a positive, it was a neutral.
Who are we talking about now?
The forestry advisory committee. I believe it was a neutral. They, they, at any rate, you know, I understand the concerns that being expressed. I mean, frankly, I'd like to see MU, both urban and rural, have the parking reductions principally permitted unless there's evidence that there would be impacts and reverse it. But I can live with the 50% part. I think it's a heavy lift. I don't think it takes us as far as we need to, especially talking about climate all morning, you know, and stuff. But I can live with it. And that's a compromise that I'm willing to make because I think that's what has to happen up here and with my colleagues, is we have to find that sweet spot where we can move forward. I also really like what Kevin brought up about, you know, two-acre envelope or, you know, maybe it's one-acre piece of envelope here and another one acre on another place. Because knowing the lands of Humboldt really well, that's really true. That sometimes you don't have two acres altogether that are suitable to do that. So, I mean, I could see those kinds of things. But again, we're going to deal with the building envelope after it comes back to the planning commission and then back to us in the future. I also have a lot of heartburn about putting second units as principally permitted on TPZ or TE or AE. But I can live with it as it is right now. And I think we're, you know, the recommendation that I have made a motion for has efforts going back to the planning commission to talk about fire hazards and fire safe regulations and things like that, where some additional thoughts might come from the planning commission back to us to consider that. So those give me a lot of heartburn, but, you know, I can, I can live with these things. I think we're going to continue to tweak stuff as we go. And so I'm making a lot of compromises here today in the motion that I've made. And I appreciate that's true for all of us. I think we're all trying to find that place of agreement to get this done so we can move on with zoning mapping. And in particular, get the community planning processes going where those communities are now waiting and waiting. And we need to get back to that and keep moving forward.
Supervisor Bass?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And yeah, I have, just throw something out there. But also I hadn't thrown out the request that, I don't know about the rest of you, but when I haven't eaten, you know, but there's a certain point in the day where your thought process is getting a little bit kind of bogged down. And when people in the audience are actually like offering to send the food up to you. Thank you, it was really nice offer, but I'm good. I think I've got some in my office and my jelly.
What is it?
The jelly beans just don't work anymore. Don't want me to have any more of those. So I would request that, you know, I suspect this deserves some more conversation still.
Can you eat and have, can you come back at 3 o'clock?
Yeah, but I did want to make a comment before we go because in the spirit of the compromise, which, you know, you took my can of worms. But, you know, quite frankly, I personally am comfortable with the TE. I'm, I'm comfortable. But I recognize that a couple of my other counterparts may not be as comfortable. And I can't speak for both, and this is something we could talk about later. What I'm curious and want to know from staff is if for some reason we pulled back on that one, what would be the process to get it back? How long would it take? It just feels like there's so many conversations of what did or didn't happen, what people really thought it was or wasn't. There's a lot of misunderstandings, and I think a lot had been cleared up. Like I said, I'm comfortable with it. But I also recognize my district doesn't have a lot of affected land. So I have to kind of look at a few others, just wondering, what would it be to bring, if, if we did ask that? And I'm not saying that we should do it. I just want to throw it out as a way to try to move forward on something. But saying I actually support the concept, so. Through the chair, may I ask?
Yes.
So, depending on what you're asking us to do in terms of bringing it back, if it's getting carved out of the ordinance, if it's going back to the planning commission and then back to the board, you know, that would take probably 45 to 60 days.
Would it require things like an additional, you know, environmental document or something like? It's, it's just to be going back and clarification. And I don't know what that would change, if anything. I just wanted to throw out saying, if for some reason to try to move the rest on, if that is potentially an option. And after we eat, we can actually think clearly because right now.
I would like to point out that we're doing all this before we do the mapping. So we're not going to, I mean, the whole point of this exercise in terms of these zoning amendments is to do before the mapping. So it would delay the mapping by whatever this process would take.
And I understand that. I think what I'm trying to do is, for the people who have the concerns that somehow they're going to get pushed into something that's not appropriate for them, how do we get their comfort level? And perhaps you can come back with an example. Because someone's not going to pay attention to what gets sent to them. Someone's not going to do it until they. out there, and like I said, my brain is kind of getting starved of, it needs some oxygen and food.
And I'd just say, in the context, again, this is only being applied to unclassifieds, and they're going to change. So, if they're not paying attention, it doesn't matter whether we decide to do TE or not, they're going to change out of unclassified. So, they're not, you know, if they're, and that's going to change for them, and if they're not paying attention, it's not going to make, I mean, their attention level is not going to change necessarily with whether there's one choice or another coming at them, so.
I think she's fully agreed with that, and I think she's stated, I think, and my concern is, I go back to the, the original meeting on 618, and staff recommendations and, and how these were addressed, and I, I'd love to know in my head why we need the third option, the TE option, when all the unclassifieds, we've always talked about having to take the unclassified somewhere into AE or TPZ. That's what was discussed in the general plan, that was discussed all the way through. We still have those unclassified things that were eight years ago. So I'm wondering, what, now that we've, in the last eight weeks have brought TE into the, into the mix, why that would add so much to the flavor of the people that don't care or haven't been paying attention anyway? That's, and that's my concern, and, and my, and my quandary. With that, we'll be back at 3 o'clock.
That discussion-
What was it, anyway?
Anyway, all right. Director Ford, we're back in session.
So, when we left for the break, there was discussion relative to what to do with the TE zone, and whether or not that's something that should be taken and reworked and brought back, or whether or not there is another potential solution to that.
So, so I think, you know, looking at the rationalization here, however, you know, to tie back into the general plan, it references FRG III, supply of productive forest lands, inadequate and stable supply of forest lands, et cetera, et cetera. I think if you look at the general layout of the county, we have 45% of the, of the land, and maybe even more is forest land, is timber production land. So, my thought is that it's not really something we have a lack of, but we perhaps want to protect lands that are definitely geared towards productive forestry. And so, what I was hoping we might compromise on, in the spirit of compromise, is to call out parcels greater than, large timberlands greater than 160 acres for TE zoning. Is that something that we could do in this, Director Ford?
So, you know, it could be possible, in terms of the applicability of the TE zone, to insert language into that to say that is intended to provide standards and restrictions for the preservation of timberlands in large holdings, currently 160 acres or greater.
Supervisor Wilson?
In this discussion, I mean, for, for me, you know, it really is about viability of production. And I know that, I mean, I'm seeing properties, even in Jacoby Creek, you know, managed at five and seven and 10 acres for timber. I mean, that's a thing. I mean, and that's, I think, the 60 acres would be something I would, might consider because it would, because it's basically the minimum zoning of it as it is currently. But I still don't understand, like, those properties that are smaller than that, I guess, really wouldn't, well, I mean, I just think that would be, because it's 60 acres in the, in the way that it's written now. So I don't know why, why we would be looking at larger than that. So, and Supervisor Madron might have an opinion about this, if you, Mr. Madron. So the question on the, the question on the table is-
Estelle, go ahead and tell them what you-
Go ahead.
It was hers, I'll let her explain it.
So, as, you know, as you had mentioned earlier, Supervisor Madron, we'd like to, you know, none of us get everything we want, but in the spirit of compromise, I think, if you look at the rationalization in the, in the language for TE, it basically says to, and that to, to produce an adequate and stable supply of forest lands whose economic and ecosystem systems are- So, my feeling is that we already have a significant amount of forest land in timber production, 45%. This is a very small portion of it. And so my suggestion was, could we make it for parcels that were over 160 acres? Because then you hit those industrial timberlands which are really, shouldn't, shouldn't be unclassified, but they are for some reason. And so you're really getting the lands that are actually being managed for timber.
I appreciate the effort at compromise, thank you. I would support 40 acres or larger, because I've actually had numerous people from your district who have come up to me, and have said, "I'm so bothered by what's happened in the cannabis industry, and I want to sell my property because all this stuff's come in around me, but I don't want it to go into cannabis production, and I would like to protect it for forest land and all the benefits it provides." So, to many degrees, what I'm trying to do is be responsive to those comments I've heard from many, many landowners over the years, out in the Matola and in this, in the Eel. So 40 acres, I mean, if it's five, 10, whatever, I can see that, but I suspect the bulk of what we're talking about here is 40 acres or larger. But there are a significant number of 40s and 60s and 80s and 120s. So, I guess we're kind of trying to find the sweet spot there.
40 makes no sense at all, if you're saying it's a 60 acre minimum, just saying.
Well, yeah, but what we're talking about is existing, you know, we're not changing people's existing parcel sizes. If they're already in place, they're grandfathered in, grandmothered in. So that's all, you know, we're not going to take away any parcels that have already been developed in AE or TE or anything that are below the minimum parcel size. It simply restricts future division to something smaller than that, but it doesn't take away existing rights, is my understanding.
And I'm going to throw out, you know-
But thank you for-
Supervisor Wilson?
Sweet spot.
Yeah, no, I mean, we're, you know-
We're getting close, I think.
We're getting closer. I just think, you know, when you're talking about compromise, I mean, the, the list of things that we started with that have been chipped away at the expense of preservation of our ag and timber values has been long since we started this three meetings ago. And so, from that perspective, I think the position of trying to protect timber jobs, trying to protect timberlands, trying to protect ag resources and ag jobs, we've compromised a lot already. I mean, that's, I think that's part of the thing. And I think this TE zoning offers an opportunity. I think 40 acres, as Supervisor Madron has proposed, I think is, is reasonable. I also think that, you know, we still haven't even gotten to the part where, you know, we're, we're all hung up on TE, but there's still, there's still this parking issue that's a little outstanding, that's outstanding, that we also need to just get through, and we, I think we can do it in a few minutes here.
Well, that was part of me trying to compromise too, and then I learned that it was outside of the process, and that's why it's coming later. But I think that the bottom line is that, you know-
Can you explain the outside of the process?
I mean, this is not supposed to be to make it so somebody could sell their land and somebody didn't grow cannabis on it.
No.
It's supposed to be to add to the timberland, so I-
Those things go together. They actually go together.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. No, I, I think there was a confused look at when, when you mentioned outside, something outside the process for the parking thing. So I was just trying to read.
That's actually for us today. Parking is here today, and, and I actually would like-
Supervisor.
Through the chair, thank you, sir. Trying to behave. I actually wanted to add a, an amendment to my motion, which would, we talked about earlier, and there seemed to be agreement, to add the parking restrict, parking reductions option to the MU rural as well. Again, there's a very high bar that has to be crossed to reduce parking restrictions for MU urban or MU rural, and that is, you've got to have substantial evidence. It goes on and on about all the things you have to prove that won't create impacts to the neighborhood, all those kinds of things. So, that would be a minor addition or amendment to my previous motion. And in addition, I would like to add the other suggestion, which was mountain biking and horseback riding to the principal uses on, I believe that would be what, TPZ, TE, and AE?
Recreational.
Or is it, under the recreational uses, yes.
Correct.
That also seemed to be non-controversial, so I would make those two amendments the, is that clear? Okay. And as a second, or?
I will agree with those. But I do want to see if we can hammer down on this TE thing, just because of, you know, it would be-
Sure.
Wrap it up. It would be nice to do. So, back to Estelle, are, is, is there, for you, a big difference between the 40 acres and the 180 acres you were, 160 acres you were talking about, and what, what is it that-
Acres.
We're trying to, well, I mean, in, in terms of, in terms of function, I mean-
Little humor's good.
Well, I think we, we're pretty good at the humor around here.
Well, you were at 60.
We're all good at that part.
You were at 60 originally, a minute ago.
Yeah, I mean, I, but I mean, I can understand why the 40, I mean, because it, again, I'm going back to what are, what are functional pieces of timber property, what is a, you know, what, what do people actually make money doing? And then what, what are, you know, cohesive, so sometimes larger tracts of timber that are managed are smaller properties, and they're like, you know, they're a bunch of 40s. And so if you have a three 40s contiguous, in, you know, or four 40s, then to not have that eligible for TE, because they're four 40s contiguous, would not really be the thing. And so maybe-
I need a microphone, please.
Contiguous? I mean, so if I, I think I would be willing to talk about, like, maybe like 80 acres contiguous as the smallest, as the smallest thing, and I don't know what you're, you're thinking.
Are you thinking with people that are, are you thinking different property owners that are operating under a joint timber management plan?
Right, yeah, they can.
Is that what you're saying?
I, I don't, I don't, I mean, I'm just kind of-
That's what happens in-
Or you could say in sync of ownership.
Yeah, because I, because I think the people, the 40s, if somebody has, if there's four guys with 40s and they're operating under a joint timber management plan, they have a pretty good idea. I'm pretty sure their property's going to be zoned, and if they're operating under a JTMP, I'm pretty sure they're going to ask it to be TPZ.
That is the only way you could do 40 acre parcels in TPZ is through a joint timber management plan.
Agreed. But I'm just saying, that we're-
We could propose the same thing with TE, allow 40 acre minimums, but you need to have a joint timber management plan with 160 acres of people. Gets back to your 160. So, just trying to find a way to give people the options that they've been asking for without forcing anything on anybody.
And I'm, okay, I'm, I'm still, and I apologize, in the spirit of compromise, I just don't, I don't, as it was asked by one speaker, where has TPZ failed?
It hasn't.
And, and so I'm saying, as, as we look at all these parcels, what is, what is the fear of looking at the tiny black spots up there, depending where they're at, that we notify them that, you know, they're either going to be TPZ or AE? If we, if we take them to TE, or if we tell them they're going to go TE, or they decide TE, what's the easiest avenue to go when they realize they want to be in TPZ? And I'm, I'm just saying, what's the nexus to go?
So, part of it would be just to make sure that they are informed, and then give them the ability to request that. And, and then I would like to just offer a bit of information also from the general plan for the board, and this is out of FR, Forest Resources Standard Number Four, and it's timberland subdivisions. And it says subdivisions of land designation, designated as timberland, that create parcels less than 160 acres may be permitted if the project meets the following criteria. And I can go through all, there's four criteria there, but one of them is that anything less than 160 acres requires a JTMP.
Right. And we're making the TPZ, excuse me, through the chair. But the thing about TPZ is there's a lot of expenses upfront, as Claire and others have said, to move it in TPZ. It takes some time, and it takes a significant investment to be able to move it into there, to protect that forest land, whereas TE would not require that investment. It doesn't give you the tax break, but they could always have that option to do that if they chose to do so. So the 160 acres minimum, but down to 40 acres with a JTPA in TE, which would mimic TPZ, it looks like maybe we have an agreement there?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, it seems a little-
Sorry.
Sorry.
Joint timber management plan.
It seems, yeah, don't stop it yet, because there's more. It just seems that it's a little clunky for a zoning, but if it could be worded, I would defer to the director.
So the, the concept here is, is that-
Anything over 160, definitely, 60, 100, let's say 160 and up, is de facto TE, unless they go through the process that we've outlined.
So, part of the thing, I thought, if, if I understood your request for an amendment correctly, it would be that to change the definition of the TE, to state that the primary objective of rezoning this property is for parcels that are in excess of 160 acres.
Right. Exactly.
Okay. And then, so it sounded like there was a nuance there, which would then address future subdivision of the parcels, which functionally we, we do have in the general plan currently. And the way it's currently proposed is 60 acres, and so, in my understanding, that part of the compromise here would be, that would be reduced to 40 acres, understanding that they'd need to do a JTMP.
Yes. I could live with that. I mean, I think it meets the purpose of trying to protect our forest lands, while giving people options.
Okay, and then I'm just going to ask, what does, when that was the FR, when all that was written, we didn't, TE was just a vision in somebody's mind, I'm not sure who. But what I'm saying is, if we take these lands and we took them to AE or TPZ, what costs, if we, if we put somebody in TPZ zoning, what cost do the property owner have to incur?
We don't have that choice, it's voluntary by the landowner.
That's, that's what I'm saying. So there could be no costs.
No, there's a cost to go into TPZ, but it's a voluntary action on the part of the landowner. We can't force them into TPZ.
I, I agree. I agree. That's what I'm saying. So that's, that's what we've always done before.
Yes, same thing.
So, so I'm just wondering-
Same thing, no change.
So, so functionally, what, what this does is that, as I understand, this concept is being worked out, is that the primary- worked out, is that the primary emphasis of this TE district would be applied to properties over a hundred, or one hundred and sixty acres and larger. People could request it, they could say, "We would rather be TE than AE when we send out the mailing," and, and so they could come in with that. But then, but for the, anybody under one hundred and sixty acres, if they came in and said, "Yeah, we're all timberland, but we want to be AE anyway," that's what we would bring forward to the Planning Commission and the Board. In terms of the modifications to the TE ordinance, we would modify then the applicability up there to talk about in large holdings of a hundred, currently one hundred and sixty acres or greater. And then we would change the minimum lot area from sixty acres back to forty acres. The JTMP is already a requirement of the general plan in order to subdivide.
And this is only going to apply to those three hundred and twelve?
No, less than that.
Now less than that, and we could get a list of the parcel sizes.
This isn't gonna open a door for it to come back later on and include some of the other eight hundred thousand acres of unclassified?
It's a number less than three twelve.
It's a number less than three twelve.
Less than four thousand acres.
Is that all written down somewhere?
Right here in the archive.
It's, it's actually in your findings.
And I have a question just about the parcel size, I'm going back to the parcel size versus the contiguous ownership, or the, you know, is, I guess if you still have areas that are still forty acres, and you have four forties, which is one hundred and sixty, but they're all separate parcels, I mean, it does concern me, because it is still, you know, a very viable per, you know, timber production zone, that, you know, I'm trying, the point is to try and protect that, right? And how do we make that, you know, how does, this doesn't seem to do that. This seems to only protect parcels that are one hundred and sixty acres or bigger. And so, is there a nuance by which we can...
Through the chair?
Please.
I believe the nuance is that a JTMP, by definition, requires contiguous land holdings to be able to have a joint timber management plan. I believe that's been codified in the Board of Forestry rules, so that you can't just have a forty here, a forty there, and a forty here, and a forty there, because how do you do joint timber management in that arena? So I believe that is covered in state law already, I couldn't say that a hundred percent, but I'm pretty certain, from years of working with forest practice rules, that that's the intention of that, and I suspect it's codified in law.
If Supervisor Madron's comfortable with the language, then I'll support it.
All right. We're getting there.
And, and for a private property owner to have TPZ, isn't it, is there still an eighty acre minimum on somebody having their property TPZ?
It's one sixty.
The TPZ, I believe, is actually one sixty, yes.
Unless you have a JTMP.
I understand.
Sorry.
When I turn to you and ask questions, I'm asking you. When I turn to him, I want...
It's good, we're working out protocols here.
In your ordinance, and this is not changing, seven dot four dot one dot three minimum parcel size, it says one hundred and sixty acres or forty acres if the provisions of Government Code, Section Five, One 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 Nine dot five are met, and that's the JTMP and all the requirements to go along with that.
So, Mr. Chair, through the chair? So with that description of those changes to TE, I would include those in my amendment, and it's in the archive, they can, Ryan can check for that, I'm not gonna try and repeat the pieces that John put, but it sounded like John had it pretty clear as to how that would work. In addition, the amendment would include allowing for the parking reduction process in MU rural, and we would add mountain biking and horseback riding to the principal uses on TPZ and TE. For the recreational element. Those would be the amendments, and...
And I just have one thing, which is, again, we've done a lot of compromise here, but again, we are principally permitting residential development on our, on all of our resource lands in Humboldt County, which is fragmentation and sprawl, and, you know, we're gonna have to come, part of this thing is to come back and try and figure out some parameters and some performance standards, so that we actually do protect the values of those resource lands from this, what is a conflicting use, or it can be, and certainly it will become more conflicting the closer we get to our urban core and our urban areas, when the, the resource part of the parcel is valued much, much less than the residential use, and that's gonna have some big, can have some big impacts, and are some of our best redwood-growing timberlands are at risk, in our, in the current context, we have some of our best agricultural lands are at risk in their, you know, if we don't come up with good performance standards, so I would like that process to start as soon as possible. I'd like it to come back to us, so that we can protect those values, not just for the economics of that, not just for the cultural values of that, not just for the, the view sheds and the, and our landscapes, but for really, you know, what is sort of the long-term soul of Humboldt County.
And that's why I'm glad, excuse me, through the chair, that's why I'm glad that this is included in item number five in the staff recommendation to go to the Planning Commission, have those discussions around fire safe regs, fire hazards, building envelopes, combining zones, et cetera, and then come back, and we'll have another fruitful discussion.
These long days are the best.
I probably won't support, because I'm still gonna stand behind, we have the Forest Resource Committee, and we have the Planning Commission, who hasn't approved this, or didn't actually get much of a confusing look at it, I heard one person say, I heard another person say, that they knew exactly what they were voting on, so that convolution and not having any of them here to verify, just the ones I've talked to, it's, has got me in a problem, and I'm, I am enlightened by realizing that, you know, you're worried about the timber, the timber jobs and the resources, and getting to our resources and using our resources, but as we do that, we've got to learn not to restrict them, their access to actually doing that fruition, so. With that, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
No. With that, we're adjourned, thank you guys for the...
Thank you, staff.